I call the regular meeting of the Pennington County Commission to order. Point out for our guests that the agendas, copies of the agendas are in the back of the room. If you're wanting to speak on an item, there's speaker request forms in the back also. Please fill those out, turn those in to Holly, sitting up here on your right. And we'll start with a moment of silent reflection and the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Laster.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Laster. Next item we have is the review and approve the agenda. I've got a motion by Commissioner Laster, second by Commissioner LaCroy, to approve. Is there any public comment? Any commission comment? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Recognition of new employees, and I, there's probably a, just actually getting my computer up, there's probably a list of them also here. There's not, okay. So, we did have an opportunity this morning to visit with a number of new employees to Pennington County and various departments. We just appreciate the fact that we have people that are interested in becoming part of the team at Pennington County. We thank them for joining forces with us. We always have a few openings someplace, and we currently do. We have openings from the sheriff's office through many of the other departments. So, for anyone that's seriously looking for solid employment, ask that they make contact with our HR department. Thank you. The next item we have is recognition of Dustin Willett. Dustin, would you come, please? So, you've made a big achievement.
I did, sir. Thank you.
Tell us about it.
Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager, was awarded, the actual certificate will be at a conference later this year, so I don't have a piece of paper in my hand, but earned the International Association of Emergency Managers, I A E M, has a certified emergency manager certification. And I, the review board that met a couple of months ago approved my application and my packet and my letters, and it was about 10 years' worth of professional development that got put forth in about a 60, 75-page application packet. And then I took the, I sat for the written exam late last year, so I knew I'd passed that and had that out of the way, but certainly the written exam component as well. Anyway, we always stress professional development in our office, and those investments in people continue to pay dividends for the folks we serve. So, couldn't have done it without the support of my staff, the support of my family, the support of elected officials, and my users board. So, heartfelt thank you to you for allowing me to achieve that certification, and I'm proud of it. And I look forward to leveraging the knowledge I gained through that process and the professional network that I developed through that process to, again, just leave things a little bit better than they were when I took them on. So, thank you.
Dustin, and you need to be, it's, this is not something that's just handed out. You have to work for it and earn it. It's like gaining professional agreements someplace else also where you do all, you have to put all the work together to prove to them that you've done the work and then take the test too. So, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Chairman.
Certainly a benefit to both our county and to City of Rapid City. Commissioner Haddcock.
So, I'd like to read some of this. The Certification Commission during the July 22 review meeting to receive the Certified Emergency Management credential. This is the highest honor of professional achievement available for the association, which has in its membership more than 6,000 emergency managers representing professionals whose goals are saving lives and protecting property and the environment during emergencies and disasters. Emergency management certification program was developed over the last several years by I A E M with funding from federal emergency management agencies, FEMA, and the guidance from an advisory board which includes professionals from a variety of disciplines and representatives of key groups with a stake in emergency management. As a C E M, Dustin Willett demonstrated a highest level of competence and ethical fitness for emergency managers. Your organization is commended for having a professional of this caliber on staff. Bottom line is, I agree and thank you for your service. And Dustin, you've always went above and beyond, and I appreciate you very much, and I think this commission and our staff here at Pennington County and our employees and your employees always have enjoyed working with you. So, you're always pleasant to work with, and you're always coming. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you so much.
And congratulations.
Appreciate it, Dustin. Thank you.
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, Holly Hinnies.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hinnies, Commission Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners chooses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of August 16, 2022. Number eight is to acknowledge the 2022 polling place list as the official polling locations for the general election. Number nine is approval of the letter of support for the Black Hills National Forest to acquire 160 acres of privately owned land through a land and water conservation fund proposal. Number 10 is approval of the letter of support for the South Dakota Department of Transportation for a bridge investment grant for two bridges along I-90 over Bull Creek. Number 11 is approval of the 2023 Local Emergency Management Performance Grant sub-agreement submitted by Emergency Management. Number 12 is approval of the South Dakota Game, Fish and Parks General Services Contract for snow removal and fall mowing at the Hilltop Parking Lot for the 2022-2023 season as submitted by Highway. Number 13 is approval of the South Dakota Game, Fish and Parks General Services Contract for snow removal and fall mowing on Whitetail Loop Road for the 2022-2023 season as submitted by the Highway Department. And finally, number 14 is to declare a surplus for the purpose of disposal outdated and inoperable equipment. 2008 autoclear x-ray machine, asset number 5745, a 2001 Hyman x-ray machine, HiScan, asset number 6167, and a CEI metal detector, asset number 5384, as submitted by the sheriff's office.
Any members of the public that wish to have any items from 7 through 14 removed from the consent agenda for discussion? Any members of the commission wanting any removed?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Item number nine, please.
Which one?
Number nine.
Number nine. Any others? I take a motion to approve 7, 8, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14.
Move to approve.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item nine, Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to reflect on this, that this is a private individual who's helping bring national forest together. His property is surrounded by the national forest, and in his trust, he's going to give it to the national forest, which will help expand the Shanks Trail system in the Black Hills and so forth. And so, I think this is a pretty unique and special gift in recognition of helping the forest service out. So, I just wanted to pull it for clarification, but in support of it.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy. Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
I got a motion to approve item number nine and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 15. Greg, is Greg here? Greg is here. Come on forward, Greg.
Good morning.
How are you today?
Well, thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Well, I appreciate that. I hope you've all received, had a chance, at least a look at the letter on the appointment that Holly would have received from me, and I'm glad to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I know that we have two of the current members on your mental health board that are up for reappointment. They've served one three-year term, and the recommendation is, is to continue them on for another three years.
That's great.
And then for lack of applicants, we'd like to continue the other three that serve on there for another nine months while we search for more applicants for.
That's what we're requesting this morning, yes.
Okay, okay.
Good morning, sir.
So, Elizabeth Allison and Nicole Heenan both went on just three years ago, and both are willing to accept reappointment, as I understand it.
That's correct.
To continue. And I don't know if people realize how much work this board does and how much time it takes to do it. We appreciate your efforts in it, Greg, of leading this for a long, long time at this point in time. So, can I get a motion to reappoint Ms. Allison and Ms. Heenan?
Mr. Chair.
Got a, yes. Commissioner Ross.
Move to appoint Ms. Elizabeth Allison and Ms. Nicole Heenan to a second, three-year term on the Board of Mental Illness and Board of Review.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to reappoint. Is there any discussion from the public?
I'll second the motion.
Further discussion from the commission?
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Second motion we need then is to reappoint three other members. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I move to appoint Ms. Patricia Myers, Larry Beasley, and Ms. Terry Phelps to a nine-month temporary term on the Board of Mental Illness and Board of Review.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on that. Any further discussion? Any public discretion on this? Back to the commission. Hearing no more. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Greg, appreciate you coming. Appreciate your work on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number 16. You're not John, but we'll accept you, Ron. Ron Jeffries.
You get the shorter, less attractive version of John Kaiser today.
There you go, okay.
So, Ron Jeffries, General Manager of Central State Fair. The items that we brought before you today are part of the vision funds that were granted by the city to Central State Fair to do improvements on the Sulee Building. And we had a bid that went out. Upper Deck Architects helped us with the bid, put it together. Jerry Eisenbrowne was the project manager. The three bids that were received was Matt Construction at $1,35,200, Black Hills Exteriors at $963,970, and Seco Construction at $816,775. Recommendation from our project managers and our building committee is that we proceed with the Seco construction pending your approval.
So moved.
Questions? Okay, we got a motion to approve and a second.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
Ron, could you just give us an overview of the scope of work would be on this project?
Sure. The Sulee Building's going under renovations right now as we speak practically. The new flooring in it, it'll get additional lighting, it'll get a new facade on the outside with some additional insulation, new electrical. Will remove a lot of the decommissioned telephone lines and wiring that still exist in the building throughout. I think the building was put up in about the 50s, I think, and we've still got a lot of hardware that doesn't need to be there. Some of it looks original, quite honestly. But we'll upgrade that, we'll get in our own sound system to put in it, and we'll give up winter storage. You know, people have used that building for winter storage of boats and campers, et cetera. That's how we've used it to generate revenue in the past. And now it'll become a rental facility, and we've got several different youth sporting events that are coming in to take up days for practice. Rapid City and the community is woefully short of practice space for youth sports. So, I think that'll help fill one of those niches.
Very good. Any other questions, Ron?
Nope. Thank you.
And just a reminder that this is the city's vision fund that we're, so no county taxpayer dollars here.
Right.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Item 17, Cindy Muller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. Before you, we have the renewal of the hunting preserve license for Dakota Honey Hole LLC, which is located down by New Underwood. We would ask approval of that renewal.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd move for approval of the new hunting preserve alcohol beverage license to Dakota Honey Hole LLC, and release the license upon payment of appropriate property taxes.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any public comment? Hearing none, back to the commission. Any further comments by the commission? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can't run away, you know?
No.
We'll have you on the agenda later. Items from the treasure. Morning, Annette.
Commissioners, good morning. Annette Brandt, Pennington County Treasurer's Office. I have presented to you the request for the uncollectible mobile homes for 2021. The sheriff's office was given 475 collections for the county for delinquent taxes, and they were able to collect all of them, but the ones that you show listed there, total amount is $1,570.90 that we're requesting you to deem uncollectible so that we can pull them off of the tax rolls and not have them go to warrant again next year. So moved.
Thank you. We got a motion and a second to, let's see, there's how many here? Half a dozen?
There's 10.
10 all total?
Right.
Okay. And the total amount is $1,570.90 is uncollectible?
Yes.
Any public comment? Back to the commission. Any further comment? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? opposed? Motion carried.
And once again, the treasurer's office would just like to commend the Pennington County Sheriff's Department, the Civil Division, for their work on the, and their efforts on the collections. By far, the driving force of getting all those, obviously, those collected. We also collect them in the treasurer's office, but they get the tough ones done, so we appreciate them very much. Thank you.
Well, for the number that you started with, and the number you ended up with as uncollectible is amazing, I think.
Yes.
So, they did a great job.
Yep, they sure did. So, thank you.
Thank you. Item 19, Mike Cool. Mike is not here yet. Would the commission be willing to move that down the list until Mr. Cool shows up?
I'd move to table.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to table that item for a while. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 20, Joe Miller.
Good morning, Commission. Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. First item up in front of you here is an amendment to 2020 local bridge improvement grant funding agreements. Essentially, I guess what's going on here is the state has some extra funds that they're going to match, put in an additional match to this agreement. So, sort of the county putting in 18.05%, the county's now going to be responsible for 5.34%, and then the state or, and the feds will be responsible for 94.66% is essentially what's going on. The nice thing with these agreements is, as we know, everything is skyrocketing in prices, in price, with these agreements, it's a percentage match. So, even though the dollar amount goes up, our percentage stays the same. So, we don't have to cover any sort of overrun or anything like that, like we would with the South Dakota State Bridge Improvement Grants. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for Joe.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
You know, I really appreciate this coming forward. I mean, I think that's gonna, is this gonna bring a few more bridges that we're gonna work on a little bit faster, or are we still on the same pace?
So, these ones were actually bridges that we applied for in 2020. The construction season for these, they're slated for 2024. So, with it being federal project, there's a lot, I think this consultant had, I think they're designing all of the Western River structures, which there's like 30-some structures, so they're in the design phase still. We've already had a type, size, and location meeting on these three bridges, two on Paulson and one on Heather Road. So, they're working through the design currently. So, while it will free up a little bit more money in a future budget year, we're still kind of on the same pace.
Yeah, the reason why I ask is, is it looks like we're really gonna be saving money, but with the way that some of the cost is exorbitant, we're still at that 18% probably of where the dollars that we're gonna have to.
Correct.
That's the point. I was kinda, it looks like we're gonna gain, but really, we're probably gonna end up staying about the same with the.
Correct.
If we hadn't gotten. Yeah.
Any other questions for Joe? Is there a motion?
Chairman.
Commissioner Haddcock.
Motion is requested to approve Amendment 1 to the South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Replacement Funding Agreement number 717469 for structure 52-896-490.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Hearing none, back to the commission. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, next up is item B, same type of program or funding agreements, just a year later. We applied, they had the same funding opportunities available in 2021. We applied for these in early 2021 and were awarded.
Holly was trying to get your attention.
There's two more motions they need to make. You got two more bridges.
That's what I thought.
No, I'm sorry.
Do you want me to read the other two, sir?
I took them all at once. I apologize.
Chairman.
Pardon me?
Would you like me to read the other two motions?
Sure.
Okay. So, the second motion is requested to approve Amendment 1 to the South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Replacement Funding Agreement number 717470 for structure 52952-341.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second.
Next one.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Third motion is requested to approve Amendment 1 to the South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Replacement Funding Agreement number 717471 for structure 52-953-340.
Second.
Second and a second. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, item B.
I apologize again. Item B is same type of funding, just a year later. We applied for these ones in early 2021. They were awarded in May of 2021. We just recently got the agreements as they went through the state legal. They sent these out, I believe, a couple, two, three weeks ago. So, this agreement is an 18.05% match. These bridges are currently slated for 2025 construction, so. That, I'll stand for any questions?
And that's for both of these, next two motions?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions for Joe? Any public comment? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair. I'd move to approve South Dakota Department Transportation Bridge Replacement Funding Agreement for structure 52-317-313, project number BRO-B805276, PCN-08N2.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion two.
Motion two, I would move to approve South Dakota Department Transportation Bridge Replacement Funding Agreement for structures 52-575383, project number BRO-B805277, PCN-08N3.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C.
Item C is another round of the South Dakota VW rebate agreement program. We were awarded this rebate for the second year in a row. So, this year's award was 35%. Last year's award was 50%. The dollar amounts actually come out to be about the same, just with the inflation of our, of our bid prices. The bid price on this truck was $152,900 this year. Compared to last year, it was $111,860. So, last year, we were awarded $55,522, and this year, we're being awarded $53,515. Unsure if there will be another round or if there's any money left for another round in this. Basically, there was a trust set up by VW with the emissions deal that went on, and that's where all the money is coming from for this. So, we're grateful to have another award, and essentially, our truck this year costs as much as it did last year, so with this rebates. But that'll stand for any questions.
Commissioner Haddcock.
So, how long has this program been going on? Just the last couple of years or?
I believe three years. So, I believe we missed the first year because we were not aware of it, and then we've capitalized on it the last two years.
Good job, Joe. That's a good way, when you said be constructive of how you do things, this is a good way to help the county as well as get some rebates for some of your equipment you need. So, good job, Joe, and your team.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I just have a quick question. Thanks for giving a little more detail on this. This was part of the settlement from VW, is what you were saying. Have you had any extra costs with repairs from switching? I mean, you normally probably buy a Chevy or Ford, but a Volkswagen being German, is there any, has there been any additional costs so far to keep up on maintenance?
Not that I'm aware of. So, and these are, we're buying our Freightliner trucks, so these are our big trucks that we're getting these rebates on, so.
Okay. That's all.
Any further questions? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item D. Sorry. Item D, Sheridan Lake Road Speed Limit. This is the, hopefully, the final resolution that we'll put in front of you, spent in front of you the last couple of years, just to set a temporary speed limit on Sheridan Lake Road. But as many of you probably know, the road is complete or nearly complete. They're putting down some erosion mat today and the rest of the week. So, basically, everything on the roadway is complete. They did the final striping last Friday, and so they're just continuing on touch-up items, and the road will be complete. So, this resolution puts the road back, or puts the speed limit back to the designed speed of 50 miles an hour, so.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Laster.
Move to approve Resolution 2022-09-06-1 to change the speed limit on Sheridan Lake Road from the Spring Canyon Trail west to South Dakota Highway 385 for a distance of 10.5 miles to 15 miles per hour.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Back to the commission. So, I've driven it several times in the last few days. It's really a nice road to drive. Just caution people, as it starts to get dark, the deer are plentiful crossing it.
Yes, they are.
They're liking that, the new oak grass, I think, in the ditches that's been seeded, They're liking that, uh, the new oak grass, I think, in the ditches that's been seeded, which is really coming along well. I'm surprised how well that grass is coming.
I think it was a combination of, of good timing for them. You know, they, they put it down right before we got them a couple of rainstorms, and it's really sprouted up. I would, I wasn't expecting it to come up the way it has, so.
No, amazing, just in a couple, three days, the difference in, uh, the growth on it.
Absolutely.
So, it's really looking good. So, um, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E.
Item E, uh, Mr. Chair, if I may, prior to going to Item E, I just want to give a quick update on South Rochford Road. I gave Commissioner Ross Connect, uh, an update last, what was that, Thursday when we were up there? Um, so the environmental assessment has been recertified, so, uh, we're waiting on final plans to be uploaded to the state. So then we can get, uh, the portfolio over to the Forest Service for, uh, a letter of consent from them for the right-of-way. Um, and after that, we can proceed to bid letting. So we've, we've crossed one major hurdle. We've got one more left to do. Um, and then we can go to, to bid letting, and we're hopeful for December sixth or December sixteenth, I believe, are the dates, um, for bid letting for our South Rochford Road project.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Ross Connect.
So Joe, I know it's probably hard to remember, but how far back does this project go? Fifteen years, twenty years?
Two thousand four.
Two thousand four.
So, well, eighteen years is how long it's been going on. That's, the original grant was awarded in, I believe, sometime in two thousand four.
Well, it's gonna be nice to see it finally happen.
Yeah, we'll get one big project off our list and put another one back on, so.
So Commissioner Ross Connect, I also want to thank you for, uh, your work on this. Uh, I know that you've done quite a bit of work, uh, making context on this also. So appreciate that very much.
All right. Item E, uh, this is authorization to advertise and let Portland cement concrete repair on Liberty Boulevard. Uh, so Liberty Boulevard, excuse me, is the county's only portion of road that is actually a Portland cement or a concrete road. Um, this, the project's been needed for probably three or four years. I don't know how many people drive it on a daily basis, but, um, it's, uh, it's getting to be to where it needs to be repaired and it's in dire straits. So we, excuse me, Josh, our project manager, went out to Rapid City, uh, bid and looked at some of their replacement cost, uh, or bid prices this year. So their, their tear out for tearing out the concrete is seventy bucks a square yard. Um, to replace it is about a hundred and twenty dollars a square yard. Um, so you throw in, we needed twenty-six hundred square yards is what we estimate, which is about half million dollars. Um, throw in all the extras. There was a bunch of stuff on the, the Rapid City bid document that doesn't necessarily pertain to us, but some, you know, so average or not, we probably estimate this project to be about six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, what we plan to do is break that out into two budget cycles, twenty-three and twenty-four. So do either the southbound lane first and then the northbound lane or vice versa. So it'd be a two-year type project. Uh, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
So Joe, I think I learned something on this that I didn't realize reading this. Uh, apparently, uh, some cement manufacturers, uh, not all the times does that cement from one manufacturer to another match up?
As far as?
Well, I saw this was originally Portland cement too.
Correct. So Portland cement is just a type of cement.
Okay.
Um, I don't believe, going back to college there, I don't know if there's another type of cement out there. I guess, Sean?
Yeah, so. Okay, okay, okay. I thought what I was reading was saying that since it originally was Portland cement, probably need to go that route in the future, but.
Yeah, you won't, you know, I've traveled all over the country and used all, you know, typically it's Portland cement that you use.
Okay, okay.
I think they were probably the original manufacturers of it, and that's why it's just continued to be called Portland cement.
Okay.
An assumption. I don't know that for fact, but.
Super. Is there a motion?
Move to authorize the Highway Department to advertise to let bids for the P C C two thousand twenty-two Portland cement concrete repair for Liberty Boulevard.
And a second?
Second.
Got a motion?
Yeah.
Got a motion and a second? Any public comment? Seeing none. Back to the commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Items from Commission Manager, Holly Hennies.
All right, Commissioners, what you have in front of you today is a request to update the county resolution as it applies to the discretionary formula. Um, in the legislature this last year, they made several changes to the statutes, and it went from a five-year term now to a seven-year term. And so I updated the county's resolution for your consideration applying a seven-year term. Uh, the board needs to make a decision on what the assessable percentage is that you would like applied for each of those years. Um, we are recommending that you use the state's mandatory maximum limits as they have set. And it's my understanding that if you do that, the school levy does not need to be, uh, re-levied back to other taxpayers to make them whole. So with any questions, Director Rittberger is here, um, if you have any specific questions. Uh, but I just have, uh, prepared the resolution to apply just to the affordable housing units that the board voted, voted to apply it to back in two thousand one.
Okay. Uh, question on Holly. So these are the mandatory maximum limits set by the state?
Correct.
But then we could set them at a lower rate if that was our choice?
Absolutely. The board could choose to set it lower than what the state has identified. However, that's where the, the school levy will apply.
So under the current plan that we have, under the five-year versus seven-year that we're, that we're going to, uh, under the five-year, what is the percentage that we have there?
The board applies twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, and a hundred.
Okay, twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, and a hundred. And for the seven-year, then this would be twenty-five for the first, twenty-five for the second, fifty for the third, fifty for the fourth, seventy-five for the fifth, seventy-five for the sixth, and then a hundred for the seventh.
Correct.
Questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lacroix.
I think this has probably come from, uh, the Affordable Home Studies that they've done with, with these numbers. From a person who, just recently, I was looking at a property and trying to make affordable housing, and it turned to make ten units and looking at the costs and so forth involved with trying to do it, and having the numbers ran, I, I, I couldn't do it with the numbers. I mean, uh, to try to keep affordable housing into the thousand-dollar range for like a ten-apartment deal, it would cost one point five million, and that's how you include what the taxes and insurance would be on those properties. So I think this is where they're going, the state's coming with, with these numbers. That, you know, the two, going to seven years and spreading it out a little bit is, is to try to be able to come with the cost of trying to do affordable housing anymore. We have to do some of these breaks. And so, you know, the seven-year, what we have in front of us with the twenty-five, twenty-five, fifty, fifty, seventy-five, seventy-five, and a hundred, I'm approval, I'm in support of this as of right now. I think if we look at it, if the commission wants to at a later date take a stronger look at it, we could. But I think, uh, the, the reason they gave us these numbers is because they've done the study.
Commissioner Adcock.
So we're doing this for commercial affordable housing residential redevelopment for neighborhoods? Are we just saying that this commission is doing this for affordable housing?
It's, currently it's just for the affordable housing, is it not, Holly?
Correct.
Four or more new units, monthly rental rate at or below the calculated rent for South Dakota sixty percent area median income for just those structures only. So it says if a county or city wants a discretionary for commercial residential affordable housing or residential within a redevelopment neighborhood, the following mandatory requirements are now in play. The board passed a discretionary formula for any of those three types is now the seven-year formula. So we could do this for all of those?
Could.
And they still have to apply for it. It's not something that's just on micro given.
So Shannon, just a question. Do we have anybody that applies for these by chance through the state or?
For affordable housing?
For any of these, or do we have to pass that as a board? Or do we have anything that's used for, um, basically a discretionary formula at this time in the county?
I do. The Painted County currently only has one discretionary formula. It's affordable housing, and I don't know if we have a property that qualifies yet. I know that there's one being built that will qualify. If, if we've got one now, it's one. Um, and that's the only discretionary formula we have. There, the law allows discretionary formulas for all of those other types of properties, but Painted County hasn't adopted those.
So what do you think about adopting? I, I think it's, it's a good plan to adopt them for commercial and residential within a redevelopment neighborhood instead of just affordable housing at this time. I mean, we're trying to, you know, up our game in economic development in, um, Pennington County. Um, just food for thought instead of just doing it for affordable housing.
So Shannon, would you explain how that encompasses everything rather than can't isolate areas?
Yes. So with the exception of redevelopment neighborhood, which I don't think, uh, that we have a redevelopment neighborhood in Painted County, so that wouldn't apply anyways. There is a discretionary formula allowed in state statute for non-residential ag, commercial, commercial industrial or ag, commercial residential, development lots, industrial, industrial and commercial, and residential within a development neighborhood. We only have the affordable housing. If Painted County adopts a discretionary formula for any of the others, it will apply to all of the properties built that qualifies that property type. We've talked about discretionary for commercial properties in the past, and, and that was the downside to that is it's a tax incentive to incentivize building, uh, something like that. But it applies to every property everywhere that's built in the county.
And you see a downfall?
It's a huge tax shift to the rest of the taxpayers in the county.
Mr. Chair.
But what, what is, it's not a positive for, um?
It's a positive for the, the properties that get the tax break. It's a negative to everybody else that makes up the difference.
How about the economic development part of it? Just kind of like TIFs. TIFs is not a, a great thing in one sense, but in the long run, what does it really help when those TIFs? Because this is a seven-year. It's better than a fifteen or a twenty-year TIF, if I'm correct. So what would I rather do? Would I do a TIF for, for fifteen years or thirty years, or would I give a tax break to it, something that's economic that makes a difference? At twenty-five percent, does that make sense? Um, as a commercial property, an economic development, or do I give a discretionary formula? I would rather, and maybe we need to think about it. Um, it seems like the discretionary formula is more incentive for the county instead of keep giving TIFs.
Well, I think it says, Shannon explained, the problem is, is that you can't, you can't isolate except for the redevelopment areas. And so it applies, applies for anybody in the county.
Right.
And so, uh, you have, you have a lot of expensive homes being built at present time. So if you put it on new residential, uh, you could have a lot of, uh, uh, several hundred thousand dollar homes that would qualify, uh, for this.
So is new residential commercial?
No. If you're talking strictly commercial, uh, no. But, um, I think as Commissioner Ross Connect and I, working with Shannon last year and brought back to this commission, the suggestion that we not do it on commercial is that, uh, quite frankly, we didn't need to entice additional business coming into Pennington County bec, that way, uh, because of the amount that we had coming in and the lack of employees, uh, provided for those that were coming in.
Okay. And affordable housing is something different, and I think we've overloaded in affordable housing. To me, um, to the point where it's been overused as well, so.
But it isn't.
Do we have to adopt something one way or another, Holly? Do we have to adopt affordable housing discretionary?
No, absolutely. If the board wishes to remove that, you can certainly do that. Um, I would need to double check if we need to, um, withdraw the resolution. It's my understanding that the one that would be in place would no longer be valid, um, if the board chooses not to, uh, update the resolution. So no, the board does not have to apply a discretionary formula to any of the allowed properties if it so chooses.
So the only ones that apply to now are, uh, they gotta be a minimum of a fourplex or larger, correct, Shannon?
Yes, and it has to be the one that the rent is sixty percent or below the state's annual meeting, medium income.
Right.
Yes, and, and that's the, that's the discretionary formula Pennington County currently has. The reason this is before you now is, is because the law changed. So you need to adjust your discretionary formula to match the state law. If you choose not to, as Holly says, the discretionary formula we currently have i, is of no effect because it doesn't match the current law. If you adopt this, you just match the current law.
So Chairman, can I, can I ask him?
Commissioner Adcock.
So how many are using this discretionary formula in Pennington County?
A, as I said, there might be one property. I know there's one being built that will qualify. Uh, so one or two.
Well, I guess that's why I'm saying we don't really need it at that point. At this, I, I don't think we need a discretionary formula. I think affordable housing, that term is being overused. They're calling it workforce affordable, and it's coming to the point where it's just, to me, is being overused in the wrong way. And discretionary formula for that, I'd, I'd do it for a commercial more than I do for affordable housing at this point. We also have Pennington County housing and other people that have taken over that, that term, if I'm correct, Ms. Holly, um, that are, um, doing well. And Pennington County, like we said, maybe one. Um, to me, it's not needed, so I'll be voting no.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner, yes, Shannon.
So, the, the qualifications for affordable housing are, are sort of strict. Uh, Holly, Holly read those. She can see better than me. I can't read the fine print.
My glasses.
But what it amounts to is those, those rent limits are low enough, I don't know as if we'd call them affordable housing. It still seems high, but it is low enough that the only properties that we see will qualify are those that are working through South Dakota Housing, uh, to build low-income housing. We don't get anybody like, uh, Commissioner Lacroix who wants to build, uh, something on his own, because as he said, this ain't enough to make it happen.
Right.
Uh, the only properties that are ever gonna qualify for this are already working with state and federal grants to build something.
Right. And they're, they're basically being subsidized. Those properties are already being subsidized by other areas that discretionary formulas, they're not needed through us. Meaning like South Dakota housing, the state authority housing, stuff like that. And then they also, again, uh, different entities are subsidizing the individuals as well in that sense. So it's not, I don't believe it's needed in Pennington County.
Commissioner Lacroix.
Thank, you know, I find this, being on the Y F S board for so many years, this just, you know, the, the sixty percent, uh, I'm trying to read what that is, ratio that they have for, for medium income is a big problem in, in our community. I mean, I mean, that borderline with wages going up and with that is, it, it's very tough for, for people to, they're always meeting, and they're over that medium income vice a little bit. Um, thanks, Shannon. I mean, you explained it well. I mean, no, no one person can't build these apartments like this. We've got, I think, a couple, one company coming into our area that's finally working with, and it does, it takes a collaboration of multiple agencies to, to make it work. And this is just a, a, another part of that, I believe, that's gonna help. So, you know, I, I support this as, as the six-year plan or seven years. And as you said, we only have one. We may only have two. You know, as far as talking, we've had this talk with Wall about, uh, this formula for industrial and so forth. I think that those discussions are great. We can have them after this one, but this was something we've already adopted and had, and had. and had in place for quite a while.
Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm done.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Oh, I'm gonna go ahead and move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve. Uh, is there any public comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lester.
So Shannon, just to kind of reiterate, what is the fallout if we move to this? What, what is the county opening itself up to? I just want to make sure I understand what you said before.
This is a, a tax break that's used to incentivize construction of properties like this. Anytime there's a tax break, the rest of the taxpayers make up for what this property doesn't pay in taxes. That's the fallout of any tax break.
So as, so as our budget increases and we need to make up, I'm just gonna say a, a million dollars in the budget through the, the revenue that we can, only a small portion of it's going to come from those new homes, and the rest of it will be shifted and to the ones that already have property, and they'll end up paying more, uh, based on the budget at that point in time. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure I understood that correctly.
And if I, but Mr. Chair, the formula that the board has in place right now essentially equates to two years of no taxes over a five-year period. This new formula equates to 2.25 years in no taxes over a seven-year break. And, and just so the board is aware, if you choose not to move forward with this affordable housing, anyone that's currently on the formula remains on the formula until the end of their five-year term. So you're not kicking anybody out of the program or the, the formula mid, mid-year, just so you're aware. If you choose that, you're not harming anyone.
And Mr. Chairman for further.
I think, I think the, uh, this, uh, before us today on the discretionary formula doesn't change anything that we're currently doing, with the exception of extending it from the five to seven years, which the legislature adopted this past year and put into effect. Uh, because prior to that, state statute only provided for five years on this discretionary formula, and now it provides for, for seven years. Uh, they were looking at trying to go to 10 years, and we, we really worked against that, uh, not wanting to extend it out for 10 years. And with the, with what we've adopted, it should only apply to, uh, those units of four units or more, uh, and they have to meet certain income requirements, individuals do. Contractors, developers do not gain anything from this. Um, the benefit is provided to those that are actually the tenants.
Chairman.
Commissioner Hackett.
So when discretionary formula, after they're done with the seven years, what always happens, and I'll keep saying this, they get these tax breaks, and then what happens is, um, I don't know if they hold their feet to the fire, but after, uh, 10 years or whatever, they get these tax breaks and then they end up selling them or, um, giving those 60% medium incomes, but I'm finding out, and then they kick them out and they sell them to bigger buyers. So, um, not in favor of this. What happens, and it comes over and over again, and if you look at the properties, they get incentives, they sell them, and those people that you, uh, helped in the first place, so, um, if this comes with the contract that they have to keep it subsidized, 60% medium income of the life of the property, I'm for it. But unfortunately, that's not what happens. So instead of inviting people to do this with tax breaks, and they come back, use the system, and then later on sell the properties for more than what they're worth. So, um, I've seen it in the city since I've been there, and, uh, I, I have voted on stuff for the city to do that, have done the same thing. So, um, affordable workforce, all this stuff that's going on, I like helping people, and I appreciate people helping with that 60% medium income, but they only help them for a while. They use the system, I'll keep saying, and through that seven-year or that break they get through affordable housing through the state or the county or the city, um, and mark my words, in the next 10 years, come back and check and see if they were sold for something else. That's why I don't believe that these properties, um, and giving incentives, because we haven't figured out yet. We keep calling affordable. Affordable used to be something different back when we were growing up. Now we've made up affordable in a way with a new discretionary formula. Then we worked a working class formula. I don't know what that has to do with affordable and working. I think we're kind of about the same. Then we came a subsidized. I thought subsidized was kind of the affordable part, and now, um, I'm confused.
Mr. Chair.
Now you get all these tax credits, tax breaks, and you, you're calling it affordable now. So you've taken out that 60% medium income at 200 to $300,000 houses on affordable. Now, I don't remember when I was a kid, but the $200,000 house were the people that had money, that had the working class. So I'll keep saying, um, where are we at here? And we keep doing these breaks for these affordable and these workforce and all this stuff. I'm into helping people. I'm into discretionary formulas. I'm into doing the right thing, but I keep getting the system and watching the system. And I've been in this politics for a long time, and I'll keep saying, getting used by the, the system and the people, not doing the right thing by the, the people they should, I see it every day.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
To me, this formula is helping the tenant, not the landlord. And if they want to sell the property in year seven, let them, because in year seven, it's going to be assessed at 100% of its assessed value. That's the key there. So I don't see where anybody's getting the benefit. To me, we're sitting there.
Kick them out.
Trying to find a solution for the people on low in, low income where they can live in this type of a property. It's not commercial. It's gotta be four units or more, and, uh, I'm totally in support of this.
Well, and I think another key part of it is, is currently we don't have anybody taking advantage of it.
Maybe one property, I'm, I'm not sure.
We may have for a portion of, of, of that property that I'm aware of, is being constructed, designed that way, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lester.
So Shannon, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this too. Right now, the way it currently is, the way it's laid out, the way it's worded and structured, it only applies to very limited properties. But what, if we change and go forward, then it's going to be opening up to a lot of new entities. Is that correct? It won't be so confined, or do we still get to keep it very, very confined?
The, the properties that, the, the qualification for properties is, hasn't changed in the state statute. It's just, it used to be five years, 20, 40, 60, 80. Now it's seven years at 25, 25, 50, 50 and on. That's the only thing that changed in state law. So the qualification for units with rent that's below the 60% median, all of that, that's the same as what it was before. So the statute, and, uh, if you take action as Holly recommended here, i- is not going to allow more properties to qualify. It's the same as would have before.
Unless people come in and they say they want to build something like this, then they could add volume of properties that would fit underneath this, and then of course, shifting that tax burden down to the people that are already paying.
I- if, uh, new property meets the qualifications, it'll, it'll apply to it.
So I think Commissioner, if, if somebody come in and they're planning on building 100 units, and they say, we plan on putting 25 of those units into the discretionary formula, we're going to build those for that purpose, uh, they can section out those 25 units and do that.
But they're not required to keep those 25 units, um, over that seven-year period. They could do it for the first two or three years, and then they could sell off the entity, and then whoever buys it doesn't have to follow that formula, and they can remove them, and then they can bring it up to full value. Is that correct?
Well, if they, if they change that, then they would have to bring, they'd have to pay the, the full value rather than, than, uh, complying with the discretionary formula, so. It doesn't really change, this doesn't change anything that we're really currently doing, except extending it from the five to the seven years, and the percentage just changed some. So what the state law does is it allows for more areas to be in the, uh, in the discretionary formula. We as a county have chose not to, to do those. We've only done the one area. Clear as mud now?
Yeah, clear as mud, but that's okay.
Any further discussion? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Uh, three to two. Passed. Item B.
Uh, item B, commissioners, is the opportunity for the board to take any positions if they so choose on any of the proposed resolutions that are moving forward for convention next week and peer. The resolution that Pennington County put forth to the Black Hills District move forward, um, to allow us to update the state law for the collection of mailing fees, uh, for license plates and decals. Um, that has morphed from one statute being changed up to nine different statutes, uh, that need to be changed, so we are working on that. It's kind of a work in progress. But I just wanted to put this forth in front of the board for you to take any positions if you so choose to do so today.
I don't think any of these have actually changed, except for the one that Holly's talking about that we're proposing for, through the treasurer's office, uh, from what you looked at back in probably July, June or July. Uh, is there any questions on them?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Might just point out, uh, supporting criteria for this particular resolution would be that, uh, mailing fees through the United States Postal Service have increased since the statute was last amended in 2009. The citizen requesting registering the vehicle should be responsible for paying, um, an amount that covers the actual cost of the mailing and supplies used. So, uh, with that being said, all we're trying to do, we're not trying to make money, we're just trying to not lose money.
Right.
Chairman.
And Commissioner Hackett.
Um, I think some of the policies that they're bringing forward on some of the ordinances, some on the wireless, um, on number 15, permanently resolve the wireless, uh, tell them communication taxation issued by your properly taxing wireless communication with distributed tax revenue such a manner that the counties will receive at least as much as they would have received in their previous central assessment process. That, that was pretty good. Um, support legislation that would allow counties to retain all sales tax revenue collected on county fairground operations on number 16.
Is she reading off S, are you reading off S D A C C?
On file, yep.
Second, the second part?
Yep.
Yeah. Are we on the second part? Sorry.
That's okay.
You're on the.
You're on the right.
On the right thing.
Yep.
And then number six, the, um, encourage South Dakota Legislature to examine the costs of problems of alcohol and drug abuse and implement tax or liquor and cannabis sales to assist counties with jails, law enforcement and detox cent- centers. That would be awesome, uh, for our law enforcement and our jails. I mean, we could use some help, uh, through those entities. Um, that would be pretty awesome. Um, S D C C, A C C supports additional mental health services in South Dakota. Um, I would ask that they would help us, um, in the county since we are, um, doing a lot of state services for mental health, and we're doing some amazing stuff through the sheriff's office and through our county, through health and human services to increase that. Um, I think it's become more and more, I've been watching a lot of the, if you watch South Dakota Public Broadcasting, they have a lot of stuff that they're doing in different schools around the country as well for kids with, uh, a lot of the things through COVID that have caught a lot of, uh, kids off guard and, and parents with, uh, mental health issues through COVID. So, um, a lot of stuff going on. Um, it also supports the number one, they endorse this change state law to find local government bodies, uh, government bodies, the authority to create and force ordinance that act immediately and deter against contamination of public groundwater resources. Um, we are dealing with a, uh, ordinance today on mining. Uh, we need to look at septic and stormwater protection. Um, we have a lot of city development coming into the county through drainage areas and, um, septic areas from campgrounds and other things. Um, the number one thing for contamination, uh, is not mining. It is stormwater, septic and some fertilization. So, um, I think we need to look a little bit harder than county if we're, uh, gonna look at groundwater in those areas at, uh, Clean Waters Act and, um, maybe introduce some of that, uh, of some of the stuff instead of just in mining areas. Stormwater, we know, uh, from the city, um, and landfill and stormwater for septic and different things, and fertilizers have been big contaminants of groundwater. So the county needs to look a little bit harder if we are looking into groundwater, not to do just one ordinance and, uh, put it, um, into that ordinance, uh, through the state. They have many state laws through, uh, groundwater, uh, through wells and different things that we can help through our, um, buffers and things that we have of people being by creeks and lakes in different areas and how far we allow them also to be that close to our groundwaters as well, so. Um, I think they're doing some really good things through policy and procedures through the ordinance and, and, um, they work very hard at S D A C C, um, to make a difference for our counties. Thank you, Holly, for all you do for bringing all this stuff up and looking into this for us, because you keep track of it for us every year, so I appreciate that, Ms. Holly.
Any further discussion? Questions, comments? Commissioner La Croix.
Sorry, I was a little confused on this. I was going back to the amended bylaws, because everything runs on one page for me, but, uh, you know, one of the things S D A C C does is also, I think Deb covered quite a bit of it, but also, you know, they encourage South Dakota legislators to examine the cost and problems of, of alcohol and drug abuse, uh, and they support the implement of, uh, the liquor tax and then what possible cannabis, uh, to be able to help treat the problems that these things create in our community. I mean, it's costing the taxpayers thousands of dollars, uh, to deal with these problems. And so S D A C C identifies that and recognizes that that's something we support. So, and I do, I do want to, Gary, you're S D's, A C C's vice president, right?
Right.
So he's been heavily involved in the S D A C C for quite a while and helps, and Holly, the work that you've been doing following legislature stuff to, I mean, having you to, uh, help us keep on track and keep, keep our eye on what's going on has been extremely helpful. Appreciate it for you guys' work.
Any further discussion on item B? Not, we'll go on to C, which is the, uh, S D A C C restated and amended bylaws.
I read this whole thing.
Well, part of, part of the, the bylaws hadn't been, um, redone since, I think it was 2009. And so there was a lot of time that was spent on going through the, uh, the bylaws, uh, to make them, uh, more practical to what is happening, uh, today as compared to when they were originally adopted. So I would say that most of it's probably considered fairly minor as you look at it, but there are some, some changes that certainly will impact, uh, Pennington County. Uh, for example, Pennington County gets a, a board member on the S D A C C because of our population. So does Minnaya County, so does Lincoln County now. Um, otherwise, the other members serve from districts, like our district is number 10, and we have 14 counties in our district, and that district has one member that's on that board also. And so one of the things that's going to change in the bylaws is that the, uh, officers will not have a vote, uh, on the, on the board if you're president or first vice president or second vice president. But what that does is that then opens it up so that the officers themselves are part of the association now, and so that opens up the position that I serve for Pennington County on it to somebody else from Pennington County to serve. And so, uh, it gives us, it, it doesn't give us any more votes. Uh, it's just a change, um, gives us more voices at this, at the present time, the way it sets. Uh, but we don't, we don't gain any votes on it. So that's one of the changes in the, uh, in the, in the bylaws. I don't think there's anything else that I can think of that's critical. A lot of it was just language change. was just language change, making it more readable, more understandable. Uh, we certainly have as part of it, Western Interstate Region Representative. Currently, that person is Randy Dybert from Lawrence County. We know that Randy was elected to the state senate. So in January, he'll need to be either by January or before, he'll need to be stepping off as, as this representative on the board. And, um, and so that opens up to, and primarily our interest on that, being the representative on that with the 15 states that are in that, it's a lot of the forestry area within the United States. And so it's good to have somebody that represents the force, uh, interests on that. And then the PIL funding is usually comes through the recommendation from the Western Interstate Region Representatives. And so, uh, that's another key, key component because that's payment lieu taxes for that Forest Service ground. It's located in, primarily in the Black Hills Counties. So. Try to answer. Any questions? Comments you have?
No, not at this, this time. I would, one question I'd have is I think, uh, the appoint, reappointment of the voting member that is chair's discretion, if I'm correct, when you appoint, because.
Right.
It, it's from our legislative, we, appointments from our regular meeting, or, uh, appointed, uh, liaison schedules and so forth. If I remember right, that's the chair's discretionary to do those. So we have that to look out. As far as the WIR, IR, that's going to be the SDACC.
That's right.
Decision on that. So that's, I think, to be a little bit more clear.
Yep. That's true. Yeah. So in order to be the WIR representative, you want to, uh, you need to run, uh, basically statewide from the SDACC. Typically, it's been somebody from Western South Dakota because a lot of things don't apply to, uh, Eastern South Dakota counties, but. Any further comments on? Thing done. Uh, we, uh, no motion is, is needed on it. We'll move on to.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lacroix.
I see Mr. Coles here. I want, I'd like to make a motion to pull off the table.
Item 19.
Item 19.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pull item 19 off the table? Mike Cool.
Been pulled off the table, Mike.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion heard.
Uh, Mike Cool, Director of Buildings and Grounds. Uh, my apologies for not being here earlier. Um, uh, I ran into some technology problems, meaning me, uh, relative to getting some, uh, information for this meeting. So, uh, I apologize for that. Buildings and Grounds is seeking, uh, to move forward with design of a replacement utility tunnel on a couple of sides of the, uh, 1922 courthouse. This is a tunnel that was originally created, uh, to, uh, route, uh, steam, steam pipes as well as roof drains, uh, roof drains, uh, and such around the perimeter of the building. The actual foundation walls and the exterior walls are actually inside of where this perimeter tunnel would be. Uh, and the foundation walls of the, uh, of the foundations for the courthouse themselves appear to be in good condition at this time. The, you, I apologize. Uh, I did, we did have some photographs that I was gonna have Kevin stick up on the, on the computer.
Ask if you had photographs. That would be good to see the photographs for the public as well, Mike. Those photographs worth a thousand, especially if you have to. We went down in those tunnels before and that tells you how bad those old tunnels are and those pipes are.
So, uh, these tunnels are, along with the courthouse, are a hundred years old as of this year. Uh, actually, they've been constructed before that, but, um, they are, they are failing. Um, they have buckled in, in some locations. Uh, the concern about this is that, uh, we, we still utilize them for utilities and stuff around the perimeter. Plus, it, it aids in keeping groundwater away from the courthouse foundation walls itself. Oh, uh, we do have, you know, there are, uh, some of these, what you're seeing right now are, are actually the abandoned steam lines that are, that are running through this area. These will be removed as part of the project. Um, but they may be actually what's holding the wall up right now. So.
I understand, Mike, where, what we're looking at on the left-hand side of that is the actual foundation wall?
Uh, on the, the, uh, on the right-hand side.
Right-hand side it is?
This side would be the foundation walls of the courthouse itself. They are, they appear to be in good condition. The outside walls are, are retaining the soil back from, uh, beyond that foundation wall. Uh, so everything on the, above the right-hand side, that's where, actually where your exterior walls that you see above.
Okay. So the tunnel is actually underneath. It's not off to the side of it.
It, it, it is off to the side, outside the perimeter of the, um, foundation wall. So the, um, so that width that you're seeing there is beyond the exterior walls of the building.
Okay.
These, these pictures are on the west elevation, so the west side of the courthouse.
So, and, uh, the structural engineer that we had through there, um, you know, uh, has expressed that the, not only is the wall on the outside failing, but also, uh, in locations, the, uh, cover over the top of it is, uh, is failing at some location. So, and where this is located is, uh, much of the, well, half of the, uh, these exterior walls or tunnel walls were lost when they built the jail, or excuse me, the courthouse annex. Those have become interior space. So the, the outside perimeter of those walls are gone now, but we still have piping running along the foundation walls where those were removed.
So what we're looking at is a hundred years old?
Yes.
Steam pipes were there initially?
Yep.
And they were used?
And, and these, literally in these pictures that you see some of this insulation on, uh, those are the old steam pipes.
And how long were they used? Were they taken out of service?
Uh, I believe they made a transition to, um, to hot water, um, in the, uh, end of the sixties, uh, maybe the, um.
Okay. So at least 40 years of using the steam, which is, uh, I, I was never in this, but I've been in the ones that ran from the state capitol. And, uh, those steam pipes, I mean, they put off an enormous amount of heat, moisture and so forth. So, they create damage.
Yeah. They, you know, they were the condition, certainly with, as you say, conditioned that space to be a very warm space in the winter, winter time. So.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
Mike, what's on the other side of the actual foundation wall? Is that filled with aggregate or is it an open void?
Uh, the, on the opposite side of the foundation walls would be our, uh, our working spaces that we have in the basement down, down there now. So, um.
So the way I see it, that other wall basically, if it wasn't there, it could have been the foundation wall itself that could be bubbling.
Yes. It's a, uh, that, that's the concern. Yeah. It, it potentially it could have been the foundation wall. Uh, also you'd have the, the challenges of water migrating up into that wall and how that might impact the brick and stuff of the courthouse itself, um, as it soaks up them, draws that water up. So that's a, one of our concerns as well.
Mr. Chair.
But you can, you can see there, there are things in, in there, basically anything that's on the, of, existing on the foundation wall has to remain. There are things on the other walls, uh, on, on the outside wall that, that does need to remain as well. Uh, but it will be transferred to the inner wall.
Okay. Commissioner Lacroix.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I appreciate you bringing this forward, Mike, because, and bringing, showing these pictures so the public can see what, what's actually happening. As Mr. Drew, I've been in some, some different areas like that. One property here in town was similar. They had water in it and so forth. And you see all the abandoned lines. And part of this bid that I looked at is just as you said, when they get, what your request is, you're gonna remove the old and everything's gonna be put on one wall so you have more access for the, for, for servicing what may be happening. Because you use these when you extend utilities, cable, whatever you need to do, that's the access for. So, um, I appreciate you bringing this forward with the pictures and so we could, we got a pretty good audience here today so they can see what we're, we're facing to, to work on.
A- as you point, as the, uh, Commissioner Lacroix points out, um, there are, this is one of our, our big locations where communications just come into the county complex. It's through these, um, comes often from the St. Joe's side and runs along the foundation wall. So a lot of the old, uh, the phone lines the county uses are routed through this area as well. I, I'm seeking to, uh, move forward with the design of this work at this, uh, time. Uh, this was a project, uh, recommended by the building committee, uh, earlier this year. Um, and, uh, we'd like to, to move it forward. Uh, the, the scheduling and timing of how we execute some of this stuff has been, uh, left to Buildings and Grounds. And this is, uh, when we, uh, in, in discussions with the design team, this is when they are becoming free to do some work for us. Very good. Overall, the, the request for fees is, there, there is an example of how you can see how, where the tunnel is actually located relative to the foundation line. So.
That's the wall that's failing.
How many feet is that?
This is roughly, it, it varies a lot. Um, it, it's roughly, um, five feet, um, in there. But when you got pipes on both sides, your walking area is less than two.
Yeah.
And then there's, there's cross pipes that go over there. So you gotta almost kneel and crawl under in several areas, especially on the south elevation. And then the, the lid, or actually the ground goes up. So at the north elevation, you can easily stand in it. On the south elevation, it's, you almost have to hunch over it. So, um, so.
So that, that's in order so that the floor, any moisture that comes in will run down along the perimeter where there's a sump pit.
Commissioner Edgar.
So what are you thinking the, um, design?
Uh, the, the design fees that have been proposed are $58,650. Uh, we're, uh, we'll understand better with, um, uh, once we get into design, how much it's gonna cost. We do, uh, expect it's gonna be a million plus, uh, to replace it. Uh, we, we think that we can probably come up with a, a way of re, uh, replacing it, maybe using some precast and, as components of it so we can make it relatively quick on how it's executed. But we'll determine, uh, further as we move through design.
So we do have a lot of projects that are going on in, in building committee at this time. Are we prioritizing based on have to and wants at this time?
Um, these are actually, th- these are projects that are based on utilizing accumulated building funds.
Okay.
Uh, um, that would be money that we have currently. Um, and, um, we, we don't know where, where the funds can necessarily for the execution, but this, uh, the, the money for paying for design right now would just come out of accumulated building. So, and where I'm seeking it, $80,000, uh, for design and any, that, that would include reimbursable costs and any design, uh, or, excuse me, any type of testing work that may be necessary as part of the process.
And basically it would be for next year, it would be a next year project, not this year because a cumulative building would have.
In terms of construction, that would be our, our hope is that we would be able to identify a funding source, uh, in the beginning of next year, early, or at the end of this year, uh, to cover that.
Wow.
And have a better understanding of the cost of the project.
Right. And it looks like more of, if the walls and ceilings of the structures are failing, that's more of a have to. It's not something that, you know what I mean?
We, we, we do feel that this should be a priority project.
That's what I'm saying. So, um, and, and I have been down in there and looked at the tunnels and we've looked at the pipes and stuff. So to me, since we've started that and some of the sewer and water lines and different stuff are, are a priority in the courthouse before all of, some of the other things that we are thinking of at this time anyway. So, um, I'm in favor of this.
Uh, this is as a recommendation from the building committee, uh, is a, uh, something that will require two meetings. So we're presenting it today and we'll be back at the next meeting to, uh, seek authorization to move forward.
So do we have to make a motion today, Mike?
You do not.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mike or Kevin? Not? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the information.
My apologies again.
No, that's fine. You will be bringing this back for our next meeting then for?
Yes, I will.
Thank you for the pictures.
Next item, item 22, Cindy. Cindy's right down front, huh? So we're looking at the budget again. We had this out there for several weeks at this point in time now. Uh, I see there are some suggested, uh, basically minor amendments.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Just some cleanup items, I guess you'd say, for, to get from the point of the approved provisional to hopefully an approved annual budget.
Okay, okay.
The first one, um, is the $4,800 increase in IT budget and the general fund operating transfer out budget, an increase in, in that amount by $75,900, which would be transferred to the fire administration budget. Um, that would also coincide with the revenue increase on their side. So it's just a, a moving of money from one fund to another. Um, and of course, before you have the budget summary, revenue summary, means of finance and estimated levies. Um, and with the changes in the general fund, we're looking at an estimated unassigned fund balance at the end of 2023 of 19.19%. So if the board would like to include those changes, I would request a motion.
I would, uh, first of all, I'd like to ask Brittany to come up. Brittany, you've got, uh, two positions in here. You've got an administrative assistant and an assistant planner. And, um, neither one are major dollars. Uh, and I don't disagree at all with the administrative assistant. Um, but explain to me what the, uh, it, it may be things have changed in the last few weeks that, I mean, I know that this was prepared several months ago at this point in time. So tell me of your need for that assistant planner.
Brittany Moll, our planning director. Actually, things have changed quite a bit since the submittal of this. Um, we've had some reorganization within our department. Um, at this time, I don't feel the assistant planner is necessary. Um, with the changes, we've allocated job duties to other planners. We've promoted or reclassified other planners. Uh, so at this time, that is probably not necessary. However, the administrative assistant would be, Jerry has been the administrative assistant when we had five people in the office. Now we're up to 10. So our staff levels have doubled. Um, the number of files that go through the office have doubled. So that person would be directly, um, to help her, our current administrative support.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
So Brittany, I was reading the department head report and your department indicated that activity was down 30% last period.
Right. So, um, there is some decrease in the number of building permits. Um, I did pull the building permit report here for 2022 for August. Uh, last year, at this time in August, we had 114 single-family homes. Um, at this time, or August of this year, we're at 90. So we're down a little bit. Um, the biggest problem is, is there's no lots to build on right now. So, uh, it's a vendor of some plating, um, through the city and things like that too. So, um, I do think interest rates and some other things have had some impact on that also.
Thank you, Brittany. Any other questions of Brittany before?
Brittany. So, um, are we ramping up for some of the marijuana laws and the things that are going on in your industry for planning department and, um, what's gonna happen in the future with that?
So right now, we only have one, um, application for a cultivation facility and they're about halfway through the process. Um, they're working on their development plan right now. And then. They're working on their development plan right now, and then they'll be in front of this board for their license. But as of right now, we only have one application for a cultivation facility.
And how about for inspectors or anything else that we need for the future for changing of our ordinance for, you know, construction and different things like that? Have we looked into what we're going to do for the future of that in your department?
We have. Actually, our assistant director, he did get his certification to be an official building official. So we are working towards that, yes.
Okay. I like how you're very frugal, but you are, you might be thirty percent down on building permits, but you're a hundred percent down on changing everything you do in your, in your department. So you guys work pretty hard for the number of people you have, and Dwayne, I can tell you, is always out in the field and answering tons and tons of phone calls. So to me, decreasing your staff in any way for me is, is after watching and going out and actually helping do some of the stuff that Dwayne does. Unfortunately, Brittany, you're very frugal, that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brittany.
Mr. Chair. Could we go back up to the section where we're looking at revising the budget to increase the IT operating transfer and the revenue that goes along with that operating transfer? We kind of skipped over that requested motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioner La Croix.
That would be some of the changes that you had to make, which would be to increase the twenty-three budget with ID departments forty-eight hundred, general fund operating transfer out of budget, and seventy-five thousand nine hundred to increase the fire fund operating transfer in revenue in an amount of seventy-five nine, right?
Yes, thank you.
That would be the motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second?
So Chairman.
Commissioner Haddka.
So what that's doing is taking the seventy-five hundred out of general fund and put it in fire fund.
That's what we're doing, yes, with the operating transfer. Thank you.
Any public comment? Any further discussion by the commission? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. The next, the next change that we were looking at is to reduce the LEPC fund budget by nine thousand dollars. As I was going through final numbers, I looked at the revenue and expenditures and they did not balance, so I contacted emergency management director Dustin Willett. He agreed the budget needed to be reduced by that nine thousand.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the second motion, which is to reduce the 2023 LEPC fund budget by nine thousand. Any public comment? Any further discussion by the commission? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. The final piece of the puzzle is to look at those requested FTE positions. As I had said earlier, all of those positions are within the budget at this point, and so if the board would like to approve all of them in one motion, they can, or if they'd like to address them one at a time, we can.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haddka.
What's the total amount of all the new FTEs added this year? Do you know?
Uh, maybe a hundred, I think, seventy-four. Total impact, I believe, was about five hundred thousand, and some of that was supported with grant revenue.
About how many total FTEs?
Well.
New?
How many total new?
Total new? Just, just ten?
Ten, yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
After, you know, after reviewing some of these, this year's been a pretty critical year. I mean, every department's kind of went over what's going on in their departments and the needs that they needed, and they've done some shifting around and doing job descriptions and so forth. You know, and, and over the last month, going through these and talking to some of the department heads, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with the requests that are listed here, but would minus the three-quarter FTE in the planning that Brittany had requested.
Can we just go through them individually and vote on them?
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I'd make the motion for one half-time, half-time FTE for emergency management, no impact to general fund.
Thank you. I have a motion, is there, and a second? Any further discussion on that? Any public discussion? This is for a half-time, is that correct?
Yep. Half, it says half-time FTE for emergency management. It goes along with the second motion that's going to happen.
So the total impact is how much?
To the general fund for the 2023 budget, there is no.
No impact.
No budget impact.
All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I'd make the motion for one half-time FTE for fire administration, impacted general fund forty-three thousand, fifteen thousand coming from remodeling, twenty-eight thousand personal costs.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? For fire administration? Any public comment? Back to the commission, any further comment? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I'd make a motion for one full-time FTE for planning and zoning, impacted general fund would be, that's going to be less, says it's.
Yeah, that's, that's the one that I think Brittany just indicated that. She didn't.
Yeah, it would just be the three-quarter time administrative assistant with the impact would be twenty-five thousand five eighty-eight.
Twenty-five, five eighty-eight?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
So my revised motion is for the three-quarter FTE, yeah, with the impact twenty-five, five eighty-eight.
Okay, we've got a motion.
Second from Deb.
Second. Public comment? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
You guys okay with me just reading all these?
Yep.
Okay.
I am.
Okay. Number four, three full-time FTEs for the sheriff's office.
Second.
No impact to general, the net impact to general fund eighty-two thousand seven eighty-six. Move for approval.
Is there a second? Public comment? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Number five, a full-time FTE for the care campus detox, impacted general fund seventy-four thousand eight ninety-eight. Move for approval.
Is there a second? I'll second. Public comment? Any further discussion by the commission? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Number six, one full-time FTE through the state's attorney's office, impact of general fund ninety-one thousand four fifty-two. Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Public comment? Being done, all those on the commission in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It's a four to one.
Which one was it? Was it the unfunded or the funded?
The impacted general fund for the state's attorney's office.
Ninety-one, four, five, two. That was the attorney.
That's the attorney, okay. That, I'm sorry, I was thinking, that would be a no for me, so it'd be a three to two.
Is that what?
It'd be a no for me, sorry.
So three to two, motion passed.
Okay. Number seven, one unfunded, full-time FTE for the state's attorney's office, no impact to general fund. I'd move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Public comment? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four to one?
Yep.
Motion carried.
Number eight, one unfunded, full-time FTE for the public defender's office, no impact to general fund. Move for approval.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second? Public comment? Back to the commission, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four to one, passed.
Final, so Cindy, on this final motion, we made one change, really.
Yes, and I will need to go back up to my desk and plug that in and bring down all new numbers for you.
Okay.
Do you do that for our meeting yet today, or?
I certainly can.
Okay, that'd be great.
So do we need to table?
Yeah, we'll table the balance of it until Cindy comes back.
Move to table balance of the 2023 annual budget.
I've got a motion, table.
Second.
And a second for the discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Next item is twenty-three. This is relative to the four-day compressed work week proposal that was adopted by this commission in July. Some consideration to potentially either rescind or amend that motion as discussions have continued, and I would, I would simply ask that if there's, yeah, there is, there's a number of people here to, that would like to visit with us on this. First one I would call up is Jeanette McIntyre.
Do you have to rescind first?
Jeanette McIntyre, I appreciate the reconsideration of this issue. I think since it was voted on and was discussed about going forward in November, there have been a lot of comments that have been made and maybe some understanding of some of the frustrations of businesses within the community that would find it very difficult if the offices were closed on Friday. So I appreciate the reconsideration, and I look forward to the commissioner's comments. Thank you.
Next one I have is Tonchi Weaver.
Good morning, commissioners. I have read through all of the surveys in your packet. It looks like you've done some due diligence, asking questions of your department heads and such. I will say that the focus seems to be on title companies, but as I discussed in previous appearance of this microphone, that the ramifications of being closed one day a week go far and wide. And, you know, I didn't hear anyone, or I didn't see any comments on, on the written, written comments that were concerning the vital records other than from the register of deeds also. They did mention that, that if they adopt the new schedule of later hours, there would be two hours a day that vital records would not be available then to them in peer, so it would kind of nullify the effect of those extra hours. I did read all of the comments, and it seems to me that the department heads are trying to work with their employees already, and that they are accommodating them whenever it is possible, and that the employees do actually appreciate that. I, I think that when you weigh the advantages and the disadvantages, that it's pretty clear that the biggest advantage is employee preference, and that the advantages are outweighed by the disadvantages. So I noticed that also they responded of how many of their employees would, you know, and most of the departments, especially emergency services, a lot of their employees would prefer or must work Monday through Friday because some things are just not, you know, you're just not able to adjust. When you're in emergency services, that's a twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five situation. And, and also, let's see, I've got some notes here. There was a rather creative approach, I think that was the planning department, that thought maybe they could do a half-day on Friday, but again, you know, that may or may not work for the public. And I think it's very important, and I appreciate too, I want to echo what Jeanette said, that this is, you know, this shows that you are responsive to the public that you serve because you are willing to revisit this question. And I encourage you to, you know, well, again, I encourage you to stick with the five days and make it so that the public can be served all five days. I think it was the building and grounds director that responded that did say that on the second floor, you would either have to have them all closed, you know, that it would be necessary, I guess, to have them all closed on Friday if one was going to be. So anyway, thank you very much, and I look forward to your remarks as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me come up and speak. Sam Benny, first American title here in Rapid City. We work with the register of deeds and the treasurer on a daily basis, as well as the director of equalization. Quite often, we get the records from the register of deeds, all the filed documents and stuff, and use those all the time. We're opposed to the four-day work week from the fact that we need access to all of the records, whether it's the treasurer, or the register of deeds, or the director of equalization. If you go, just some of the effects that could happen is, on a construction loan that a lender's doing for a customer, a mortgage has to be filed prior to the work of the contractor starting. And the reason for that is it's a priority issue. Lean status goes to the lender versus the contractor on the project, so it protects not only the banker, it protects the title company, and it also protects the customer. So that's one issue. If we can't close, if we close on Friday morning and we can't file those documents, but yet construction starts Friday afternoon or Saturday, then that contractor has priority over a mortgage, puts everybody at more risk. So that's one issue. You have a sale that could get delayed, you have a plant that's getting recorded by a developer. The developer has to get information from the director of equalization that goes to the treasurer on what taxes have to be paid for that plant to be filed. If the director's not available on a Friday, all of a sudden, that plant is going to get delayed until a Monday or Tuesday, depending on if there's a holiday in there to boot. When that plant gets delayed, that means the sale to a end customer gets delayed, and construction gets delayed on the new house. So there's another issue that you have. When the director of equalization has to give all the tax ID numbers for a plant that have to be paid, the treasurer then collects those taxes, then everybody can sign off on the plant at the county level. That isn't available on a Friday if you're closed on those days. We have an odd legal description, once in a while, we'll get a call up the title company to close the deal on a Friday. We haven't done anything on it, we rush through it, we do all our search, we do all that, but we have an issue with a legal description, we'll call Odra. And I will interject at this point, we've worked with Odra and Janet for years and years and years. I've been there twenty-eight years, and we've always had a great relationship, but we can call up Odra, have her look at a legal description that we think would be accepted by the county, and she'll either say yes or no. And from that point on, then we can move forward with the closing. We wouldn't be able to do that if you're closed on a Friday. We have information available for, or from the register of deeds, it's on Land Shark, all the documents that have been recorded. We can go in and look at Land Shark, but if you have an IT problem on a Friday, who's going to fix that for you so that we can actually go look? If we can go, now if that goes down, we can go to the county, we can come here and look at the records in hard, okay, copy form. If it's delayed, IT's down, they can't fix it, we can't go do that, so it could delay closings. So you've got buyers and sellers, contractors, all over the place that are So, you've got buyers and sellers, contractors, all over the place that are getting affected by this deal. The other one is, like, if we go to close a transaction on a Friday that, and most of these you have to understand is, we kind of know when things are going to close and we work on them ahead of time, but if we can't, we get a call on a Friday saying, "We're going to close today," we do it. But if they're delinquent in taxes and stuff, we cannot get ahold of the treasurer to verify how much is due on those taxes. Many times when we close on a transaction that has delinquent taxes, guess what? The seller doesn't have adequate funds to pay and there's other arrangements that have to be made. So, it's not like they have excess money I can hold. So, we can't verify taxes, we can't close, okay? That's not on every transaction, that's on delinquent transactions, because we can pick up what they're owing on normal, general taxes. I just feel that by closing on a Friday, it's a disservice to the taxpayer, it's a disservice to the title companies, but the title company service all of your taxpayers, doesn't matter if it's buyers, sellers, contractors, builders, all of them, and they're all affected by this move. And it may be a good move from the employee's standpoint that they want that, and I'm not against it, I love all the employees down here, our employees work well with them, but I am against four-day work week because it affects too many of your taxpayers and businesses that rely on the services of the county. I think there's other ways around it, whether you do a split shift and you work from six to four, or seven to four every day and another shift from nine to six. And, and everybody's going to hate me for saying this, but as the register of deeds did a few years ago, they raised the fee to file a document from ten dollars per first page and two dollars thereafter to thirty dollars for a document unless it got over fifty pages. Is there a way for you to work on state statute and bring in more revenue? Because in my opinion, Janet at the reg- or at the treasurer needs more help. Whether your other county offices do, I don't know because we don't work with them, but everybody sees the lines. There's got to be a way around this to give customer service, taxpayer service, to everybody in this county. So, summary, we're against it.
Any questions? Commissioner Ossing.
So, Sam, if this did get adopted, would you prefer Monday opposed to Friday, or does it make any difference?
I don't know that it makes a difference because it's more the timing. Like, we don't, we wished everybody just planned everything out two weeks ahead of time and we knew what they were going to do, but we don't. We get a call from a lender on a Friday or Monday or Tuesday. I don't know if that makes a big difference, but it could. I haven't thought through that, Ron. I just thought through the fact that I wish you were five days. But Friday is the biggest day. Everybody closes on Friday. Your first-time homebuyer is renting an apartment, wants to move into a house on the first of the month, okay? Friday closes to the first month because they want to move in on a weekend. Those people are then moving, so a lot of our closings are double. People want to move on the weekend, so Fridays are your busiest day.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
So, Sam, part of, you know, I've closed on many properties and usually what happens to me is the banker sets up the closing dates, which, whichever is available.
Yeah.
Whatever you give them, they're going to take. So, that's my experience on that. I built a house, I've also, you know, I had my builder, never start on the same day he signs, never.
Yeah.
So, that's just my experience. So, I, so when I hear that we're going to stop building because something ain't done, I'm a little wary of taking that wholeheartedly because I know a lot of, I'm, I'm in the construction industry, things just, you start doing the paperwork, you don't start until everything's lined up. And so, when I hear that, I'm going to go, "Ah, that doesn't quite happen all the time." But you may have had those experiences, but I don't know how many.
Lots of them, sorry, lots of them. I, I would venture to guess that twenty percent of the construction loans in this town, that contractor's chomping at the bit to go start building the minute the closing's done. They don't understand all of the ramifications of risk because they have none, okay? Nothing against that builder, they have no risk. The title company and the lender and the borrower have the risk when somebody starts early, before a mortgage is filed.
Erin.
Commissioner Hock.
Mr. Benny, I did talk to one of your employees, I didn't call you. I actually do her hair. She said to call you and I said, "Well, if, if the person that's doing the work as well and has to run around and, and do basically what your company does, I'm getting it from the horse's mouth as well." So, I'll ask you the same thing then. Why aren't the other companies that are tax or title companies, why are, why are they not in here? Why, why just you? I mean, don't they do the same work? Aren't they delayed the same? Isn't the construction and the title work and all that? I mean, I appreciate that you are, I appreciate your voice in here and that, you know, you do need and you do want that Friday to be open. But tell me why you're different or what is the difference between the other two that are okay with, you know, that, that four-day work week?
Part of the reason is, I'm not political. You guys have probably never seen me in here before, ever. I don't, I, I trust you to do your job and do a great job. This just affects too many people that I felt I had to get up here and say something. The other thing is, I didn't even know about this meeting because I don't watch that kind of stuff until this morning, okay? Had no idea this was going on. I have a meeting tomorrow morning with a group of realtors that'll be a hundred strong to visit about this issue right here. I didn't realize you had it on your agenda until this morning. There is a new title company coming to town and he is here. Whether he signed up to talk or not, I don't know, but Greg Litten is here to talk about that. Greg Wick, I tried to text him this morning to let him know that the meeting was going on and I haven't been able to get ahold of him, so.
I think, I think the other two do know, and if I'm correct, and maybe Audra or Janet or somebody else can speak for that. I don't, I didn't see them send us emails or anything on it, so maybe they don't know, but I didn't understand why, you know, if there's three title companies, why is it only affecting one? And maybe it's not, maybe it's affecting the others, they just didn't.
Yeah.
Say anything, Sam, but no one thing. I do appreciate your voice up here and we take that in consideration because you are part of the public and we are affecting your business otherwise.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can I join you at the podium?
Sure, Audra.
Thank you, Audra.
Audra Casseal, register of deeds. So, the other two title companies have their concerns, but they said they would work with us in conjunction with this. And there are things that the title companies could do to make this work for their businesses. And actually, Jefferson County, Colorado, went to a four-day work week two years ago. And they're five times the size of Pennington County and they make it work. So, they're ten to twelve days behind in recordings in Colorado and I'm current, I'm three days behind right now, so.
Well, Audra, what, what were their concerns? I mean, Mr. Benny has some good concerns.
Yeah.
Can you, can you relate that on, he's delayed three days on the sale, the plats and the filings? I mean, that's, does that delay cash flows? Is that delaying, you know, you see what I'm saying? That makes a difference for a person's business.
It does make a difference and I can't answer to the business side of the aspects of it.
Right.
But a plat isn't delayed because of my office. A plat is more delayed because of the whole plating process and there's something the owner, the surveyor, hasn't done correctly to appease the, the planning office, the city planning office, and we pay the taxes, the surveyor doesn't have something right, so it comes to me to be checked. I check it, they got to go back and fix it. It's really, the recording end of it isn't what delays a plat.
So, you said you checked with the other county. It's a bigger county. What was their biggest issues that they had to work through?
She's told me they had no issues. That's what she told me.
Okay, then that, that, to me, that draws a red flag because if you have no issues, you know you have issues. How did you work through the four-day work week and what were those issues? And then, then it helps you and actually me to decide, okay, what's going to, how do we work it out and how do we find solution to help Mr. Benny or the title companies and our register of deeds people?
So, she was the office manager, so maybe if I called back and talked to the actual recorder, I would get a different answer.
Right.
So.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. I guess I'm looking for answers to help people with their businesses as well as to help our employees and our, our department heads to make good decision of how we make a good solution in the end.
Absolutely, and I understand that and I'm here to help with all of that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Audra.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Can I make a comment?
Thank you.
One thing about, you know, Audra is correct, there's lots of things that delay a plat, but the last thing that's going to happen is it's going to get recorded at the county. That's what we're talking about today with the lack of a deal, a lack of closing or closing on Friday. But also, the public has issues. You know, it isn't just title companies because we're serving our customer. So, in the end run, if this goes through, are we going to work with the register of deeds and treasurer? We have to. Doesn't matter. You guys have set that tone, we have to go work with them. Does it put us all at more risk, including your taxpayers? Yes, it does. That's what I'm here to tell you. It isn't that it works fine for that county office, they love it. You know, they get to work four days a week, but it does affect your public. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sam.
Mike LaFier. LaFier?
I had to read my handwriting, it would come off, Mike.
Is it Mitch?
It's Mitch.
I couldn't find a C in there, but.
It's harder somewhere.
He's also an entertainer, I'm just curious.
If you want to read my notes, you're welcome to, but they're not, they're about as worthless as the handwriting you got in front of you. I'm Mitch LaFiora, I'm also with First American Title. I think Sam already addressed our concerns and our industry concerns. I think it's for you, you guys have, I can't speak for the other companies in town or anywhere else. I think those are what you guys are supposed to, you know, that's for you to decide and to think through and figure out whether or not what we're talking about does create problems. I think in the end, the big issue for you guys is, number one, you're a pickle because you, it's, we've kind of got down the road already and I understand the difficulty to revisit something, so it doesn't, it's not easy, I get that. But I think in the end, what you're trying to figure out is what makes sense for your community and what makes sense for your, how things should work. We're really talking about access to the services. And you guys have to decide whether or not the pluses or minuses, how they work out. In my opinion, going to fi- going to four days, you do provide a little more access hours-wise during the four days, but I think you're giving up a day. And I think it is going to affect your business community, it's going to affect your public. And I think that's the decision you ultimately have to make and whether or not to revisit it, after you've, you know, kind of gone down the road and how difficult that is, you still have to, that, that's the ultimate decision you have to make. I don't know, and maybe I'm like Sam, I live in a small world, I don't pay much, as much attention as I should to, to some things, but I don't recall seeing a lot of discussion about this topic before we went down this road, especially with how the community and the public felt about it. So, I guess one of the things I would ask this group to consider is whether it would be worthwhile to get more feedback from the community and from the public before you make this significant a decision. Because I think, I don't think it's gotten that much publicity. I mean, I'm, I'm surprised a little bit and, and maybe I'm wrong and like I said, maybe I live in a shoulder world, but I think that to that extent, it might be worth considering revisiting the issue again and, and getting some more input from the community. Not, I mean, we're obviously, obviously have an interest in it. Sam's expressed it, I think those are legitimate concerns. Can we work through them? Yes, we, if we have to, we can. But I think they're legitimate concerns and I think they do create problems for our customers, for your taxpayers. So, in the end, yeah, it's going to be, it's hard to revisit something, but if it turns out that it becomes a pain, it's going to be harder to revisit it later than, than now. So, I, I appreciate your consideration. Got any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Any questions for Mitch?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ossing.
Um, a question, but, you know, we have to ask ourselves, why are we talking about four-day work weeks? And I guess it goes back a month or so, but there was a presentation put in front of us from Human Resources and it's my understanding that we just didn't have people wanting to work for the county. And the people that were working for the county, they, they didn't appear happy. And so, what we're trying to do is walk that fine line, like, what can we do and, and look at both sides? Or that's my position anyhow.
Oh, I understand that.
So, we're going to hear from a lot of employees too and that makes it very tough on us commissioners trying to find that balance where we can make both sides happy. But I've always been a five-day work week myself. I mean, that's just the way I've been. But if we have to make some adjustments to keep this administration building going, we might have to go that route too, so, but I'm open-minded.
No, I understand your, your concern. I, but I would say, when you're going down that path and looking at that issue, you might also have to consider what you do and how you, how it impacts what you're trying to do with your employees, how it may affect the business community and what they may end up having to deal with in terms of their employees. It's a, it's a big picture thing and I'm just, I'm not saying it's easy for any of us, it's a difficult proposition, but it has, but your decisions will have ramifications for how businesses have to deal with their employees and how they have to treat them and, and it, everything can snowball, it's all tied together. And there are going to be issues one way or the other.
Mr. Chair.
So, I, I get what you're coming from.
Commissioner LaCroy.
No, Mitch, I really appreciate your candor up here. I mean, you're being honest and open, you know, the commission has really reviewed this and, and you know, we're creatures, you just mentioned, creatures I have, but we, we take the same path home every day, we go to work same path. So, there's always going to, not everybody's going to hear what's happening until all of a sudden someone says, "Hey, did you know?" And, but your understanding of what's happening is right on, you know, it is, what we do is going to affect the public. Some of it's going to be for the better, some's going to offer more hours outside of the work week so they can come in and do their business and, and like you on Friday and some of the title companies, you guys are going to have to adjust, you know?
Yes.
And, and who, who knows, you know, when this got brought back up and I found out about it like on Thursday, you know, I've been asking around about the shifts and I, I know it's going to be tough and it's changing the community, but we've been to several different communities where they have made the changes and we adopt. It takes us a while to accept that change, but we do, sometimes it's for the better. A lot of people think that we're doing this all for the employees, you know, that's part of it. Part of it is the workload. You know, that's why we change schedules is, is try to keep up with the workload to try to get the stuff done, you know? That's one of the things I looked at is, and as you, as, uh, I keep forgetting her name. Ms. Weaver spoke, sorry about that, not being a. Departments, each department's a little bit different, so they're making adjustments of schedules to work with everybody, you know, and because not all people can, but, but in order to get the workload done, that's my biggest concern is, is the workload. We're trying to do more with less and you can only do that for so long before you have to make some concessions. And to me, part of the concessions is, is doing this type of schedule so we can get some of the other work done. And quite frankly, they can get more done when nobody's interrupting them.
Yeah.
But I, I just wanted, you hit on that, the creature of habit type thing and we are and, and there's a lot of other companies, usually they got twenty thousand employees where they've made some different schedules and, and so forth, but yeah, we're trying something new. Me right now, trying to turn, turn back and trying to do something different after people have been looking and trying to redo their schedules is tough. Now, after it gets implemented and we wanted to try the nine-hour type thing and that, that seems to work, I think that's something we would be easier to transfer to, but I think I'm still, and I'm one that's worked four tens, I've worked rotating twelve-hour shifts, I've, I've done all of that, so I know what those are, but I, I just appreciate your candor when you come up. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. I, the only comment I would add at the end and I'll get out of your hair is, I would say this, specific to our industry, the one point that Sam made that's a legitimate concern is the issue with that, that, that delay. Yes, it can be worked around and you, but you're going to deal with more risk. I mean, you're going to have that priority issue with mortgages, mechanic liens, et cetera. You, it's just a fact. I mean, it's not, that, that can't be fixed by. You, uh, it's just a fact, I mean, it's not, that, that can't be fixed by anything else working around the hours and stuff, it's just the reality. Yeah, well, we live with it probably, but it's, it is a fact that we're going to, somebody's going to get stuck with a burden, either the title companies are going to say, you know, we don't want to take the risk, we're just going to delay a day, or, yeah, we're going to take the risk on, but that is an issue that's, that's, you know, if there was a way to accommodate that by having a couple hours where you could have access to record on Fridays or something, that you, that could be worked out, that would be super, that would be, that would kind of help fix that problem, because Sam's right, people like to close on Fridays, and that's the day, and a lot of the construction does happen on those days, and that's when you want to get your mortgage recorded, because, you know, but that's fine, I, I do appreciate your concerns, I know where you're coming from. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Annette Brandt.
Commissioners, Annette Brandt, Pennington County Treasurer's Office. We were concerned about what the public would think about the tens, um, and because we see the majority of them, we did do a public survey. That pile right there is just within a two week span, um, and the numbers do show that the, um, general public who's out there working, the eight to five jobs are having a hard time taking off time from their jobs to come down to do their business that they need to get done during our office hours. Um, they're shorthanded at their own work, and so they're not able to always get away, you know, their, their bosses letting them get away to come down to do that as well. So the taxpayers have been asking for this, um, change for a little while. Constituents in our community, um, who were polled from their visit with the treasurer's office as requested, answered in astounding numbers from the short 12 days that we requested staff to inquire. We can inquire more, but, um, there was 84% of the 1648 people polled were in support of extended hours with a day of closing, seeing the benefit of conducting their personal business outside of their own work schedules. We're not reducing hours of service here, we're keeping the same hours of availability, but shifting those hours to better serve the majority, um, without a cost to the community. So all of the departments have looked over their budget and realized that those switching to the 10 hour days would, yes, in fact, benefit the employees that were able to work around those schedules, but also benefit the community and not have to adjust any costs for 2023 budget that was submitted. Unfortunately, those polled in favor of this change are the same people that don't have or may not be, have the ability of showing up to a commission meeting for two or four hours to wait until it comes up on the agenda, um, to voice their opinion. The majority of those polled were glad that they could be part of the decision-making process by filling out poll cards provided to our departments by the commissioner's office. Um, it has been the semi-retired, full-time retired business owners that have requested, um, this be looked at as a change, most of whom fall among those that you're hearing from today in opposition of this change. They can come in without having to request time off from their employers, um, and do their own personal business. That's what's changed for the community as well. They're shorthanded, the other businesses that are out there, they're shorthanded, their staff are asking to, you know, they purchase a car, they need to come down and, and stand in line, and who knows how long that line is going to be. The county has implemented our web service that is growing in numbers. Fridays, I'm not sure how all the departments are doing it, but we still, in the treasurer's office, we answer those web, um, inquiries within a timely manner, so they still have access to the treasurer's information, um, without actually being able to come into the building and have access to us face to face. So it's just a shift in, um, how the inquiries are going to be coming through. All of the departments, as I'm, I believe anyway, the, the four main ones, the Planning and Zoning, Director of Equalization, Registered Deeds, and Treasurer's Office that are involved in, um, the title company works, all have that web access, so hopefully that is something that they would be able to utilize as well if this goes. Um, in closing, I just request that you, um, vote favorably and continue, at least so that we can try it, it's in the 2023 budget, there's no price adjustment that has to happen if we, um, if we look at it and continue an eight to five with the volume that we have, um, Monday through Friday, you're, you're going to be asked for more FTEs in 2024, that's just, it's just the nature of the amount of, um, transactions that are coming through the departments now with the growth in the community. So, um, with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, thank you.
You mentioned a good point there. We don't have the staffing ability to, um, have office hours seven to six, five days a week. We know that there are a number of offices that would require additional FTE if we were to say, we'll be open seven to six, five days a week, so that's a good point.
So Chairman.
Commissioner Hancock.
I guess, um, so you can't open five days a week with some working, um, different hours, some people having four day week, work weeks, um, Monday through Thursday, some having Tuesday through Friday. I'm not against four day work weeks for employees, I think it's, it's a good incentive, but I think you can still have a building open and work with department heads to understand that, um, it's also about public service. So there's got to be a, a certain solution in there with department heads to be able to open building and still be able to do the work hours and not have to increase the employees to a certain extent, where if I have to work with mine, some are going to want Mondays off and some are going to want Fridays off. So how do you work that? So if, if you have such an overload, um, some are going to be in the back on Mondays doing something else than they would on Fridays, because I see a lot of people burning out. I can't imagine sitting at a desk another couple hours a day, I guess I'm not a desk person, or doing, maybe the ones out on field might be a little bit different, but some of that, and it says for statistics, there's a lot of burnout from, from the four day work weeks as well. Um, so I don't know, um, I'm kind of torn between having five day open building and making sure the employees still get that opportunity if they want to work four day work weeks, and not having department heads saying, uh, you have to work four day work weeks because that's all we have.
Well, and, and right now, we, you have to work five day work weeks because that's all that we have, but, um, if we switch to this in our office, which is, our office is the only one I can speak of, but we would still have staff that work on Friday. The, a lot of the shift of our workload is now coming through the mail because they're not able to get off time, well, we have a lot of out of state as well, but we also have a lot of locals that mail in their stuff because they can't get off time to, to come and, and do their items as well. So those lines that you see out front, Monday through, you'd see them Monday through Thursday, we would have a full staff to be able to help them in hopes that it's a longer day, so it would be an hour more in the morning, an hour more in the, um, afternoon for us in our office. And then those that couldn't, um, couldn't do the four tens for whatever reason, school for their kids or daycare, there are reasons, um, they would be able to utilize, we would be able to utilize that time then to do the constituents that are mailing in their, um, items, and there's easily full-time days to be, you know, to, to do that as well, so.
Which would make sense, and then you could have registered deeds where it might be a little bit different, but you're saying you have, people are telling me you have to close the whole building because Janet has to have Fridays, which is good. Janet did a unique situation where she has to have people working on Friday, so there is someone working on Friday, but you already saw, the lines are, lines are long, but she's doing the same amount of hours all week, makes sense. But then you have register of deeds, deeds that's going to be different, you have equalization that's going to be different, you're going to have, so why do we have to close a building? Why can't we do something that is unique, that you still can work those hours and still put the building open five days a week? Does that make sense?
I.
And get the same amount of hours as we're saying, but make the public, um, understand that we, I, I don't know, that, that Friday or that Monday open?
So I think Commissioner, that what the treasurer's office plan would be is not to have the windows open on Friday, they have employees that are doing.
Right, and, and, and I get that because, but they, but they're doing the same amount of hours, does that have to be in register of deeds? Because you still have the attorney's office doing their stuff, you still have, uh, the sheriff's office has to do something unique, the HR, or the, uh, human resources, oh, human resources, Berry's Department has to do something unique. I mean, why are we having to shut the whole building because people are having to do something different to be efficient and effective? That's what we told them to do, and now we're going to shut a whole building to do that. Um, I'll just tell you from the general service of the public, walking in somewhere, uh, the first comments, even at a bingo hall, and they're, they're freaking out on the, the five day shut in the building, so I don't know, um, I, I like the idea of, of four day work weeks for those employees that need it, but I also understand that this is a public service building, um, made it for a reason, want to expand it for the future, um, we want to put more money into it, because, uh, number one, one minute we say we don't have enough employees, and we can't keep employees, and the next minute I hear we need to expand the building and spend more millions to make a bigger building. So tell me, tell me mixed messages, and, and then come back and say, four day week week, close the building on the fifth day. I'm getting confused about all the needs that we're trying to meet and the money we're spending in order to get there, so.
Well, and in, and all due respect, I guess that's why we polled the amount of people that we did coming through the line, and there's more, you know, there's more out there, those, those are the folks that you're not hearing from because they can't, you know, they're at their work right now, they're, they're with their employment right now too, so, um, our request is just to consider that as well, um, again, that, that was high on our list, as opposed to it being presented, um, for an employee benefit, um, it's also going to help the constituents as well, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I respect that, Ms.
Thank you.
Annette, thank you.
You certainly may.
Can I say something? Janet Saylor, County Treasurer. Commissioner Hancock, you and I have had many discussions about thinking outside the box, and this is what we're trying to do, we're trying, we're trying to think outside the box. I know you've had to adjust your business to, to make things work. The bottom line is eight to five doesn't work for, for the public, and Pennington County does not have the money to work us 10 hours a day, five days a week, we already know that.
Janet, I agree with what you're doing in your office.
You know, with the amount of mail that we are getting now, there is no way that we can, we can keep up at the pace we're going, and Annette is totally correct.
Right.
In the 2024 budget, we're going to be in here asking for more employees. The problem is you can't find employees. I mean, there's restaurants you try to go to now that used to be open at 11 o'clock, they're not open until four o'clock. Um, driver's licensing is open, what, four days a week now? We, we go out of our way for our title companies, and I, I don't think, no disrespect to Sam Benning, I think he will agree, uh, we allow them to drop their stuff off, we don't make them wait in line, we hold all their, their payments until our banks are all processed, so they don't have a problem getting money back for, for the individuals. Um, Platts are not done immediately, no matter when they come in, there, there's too much to do to them. Um, I'm not, I'm not saying this is the, the solve all for everything, but title companies can go in and get taxes online, they can even look at the delinquent taxes online. If this doesn't work, the commission has no choice but to go back to five days, eight hours a day. I've talked to my employees, some of them can't do it, and, and I respect that, but those employees want to keep their same hours, either eight to five or eight thirty to five thirty, which some of them work now, and I'm not opposed to that, I'm, I'm not opposed to working with them, however, you cannot let, in my office, you can't say, okay, half the staff's going to work Monday and half the staff's going to work Friday because of the lines, commissioners, you know that that's not going to work, we have to have a staff. So that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Shannon Rittberger.
Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. I sent an email, you really have my thoughts on it, and I'd just like to, uh, stress the 1,300 people that were polled that have jobs, that, um, they have to take time off to, to come here to do business with. I've had people ask me if my staff can meet them after five or before eight in the morning, and with the staff that we got and budget we got, we can't do that without paying overtime. Uh, I, I know most of my staff is all in favor of the four day work week, but I really think it's a benefit to the public to expand our hours and allow the public to come here and do the things they need to do without taking time off work. Thank you.
Chairman.
Commissioner Hancock.
So we talked about the staff and, and employees. When it gets to the point that we cannot hire in Pennington County, we have to shut the doors, kind of like people do with their businesses, and I totally understand that because we don't have enough staffing to do that. I think it's time to do a four day week work week. You know, and that's what you have to do, because you don't have a choice. There's a difference between not having a choice and doing it, uh, because, I don't know, um, I guess in business we have to do it because there's a choice, we have no choice. At this point, um, again, if we're doing expansion of buildings and we're thinking at this point, we're going to have more employees and more stuff and more things that we need to do in Pennington County to add to, it doesn't make sense to me to shut a building and then tell people later on that we need to build more buildings, more, more room, more stuff. How does that make sense? I, I'm trying to bring the whole picture together, it's not just about a four day work week and shutting a building, it has to do with a lot of different aspects of what that brings together of what we're doing for the future of Pennington County and asking the public for what we need and for our needs. So for me, I take the big picture and I put it together, and again, employees, I have always supported what you thought, always, and you know that to be a fact, but I also have to understand, um, all these pieces and parts that come together in the end. Um, you can't ask taxpayers one thing to support, and then the next minute say, we're going to have a four day work week, but guess what, we're going to expand buildings and we're going to do stuff, we're going to ask for more taxpayer dollars from you, even though we're going to have, offer more, less services to you, or maybe not even less services because our employees work very hard, just going to do it less time in four day work weeks. But guess what, we need some more money from you because we need more buildings, more stuff. Okay, um, you, you got to balance that, and you, and these commissioners, it's a hard job, I'm not beating on any of these commissioners, it's a hard job, but you got to think of the whole picture. It's har, it's hard for me to shut a building that's a public building, it's hard for me to shut my building five days a week, we work six, so, um, and I give services, so I, I'm torn between this because I want to do the right thing, I want to, I want the department heads to understand that, um, you're saying you are serving the general public, and if you are doing it four days a week from, what do you say, seven to six, you're getting the same amount of hours, but employees, you also, some people need to have those services on Fridays, that's what we're trying to tell you, I'm trying to tell you, they only have Fridays off. They're taking their time off during the week because they only have Fridays off, so they're, they also have jobs, it's not just you. So you got to think of other people as well, and that they use their services and they pay our, they pay our salaries, so.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Laster.
I was just going to add to that, I mean, many of y'all in here haven't heard me speak, some of y'all have heard me speak on this particular topic, and I'm a hundred percent in favor of department heads running their department the way they see fit. Um, I don't believe that we should micromanage that aspect of it. The piece that I've always had a concern with is shutting the bus, the administrative business down, the administrative building. The piece that I've always had a concern with is shutting the bus, the administrative business down, the administrative building down one day a week. Um, I don't mind a four day work week. I think it's possible. I think it's doable. I had to do the, I had to do something similar when I worked for government. I had to take a ten person staff, cut it down to seven people and still do all the services that I used to have to do with less people. But I still made it work, and I made it work where everybody had actually less time um that they had to be at the office. And so it worked out. There's a way to do it. Uh, I I think the same thing is possible here. Um, but while I I agree, um, many of the public want extended hours because they go to work at seven or they go to work at eight or they go to work at nine, and they'd like to be able to do county business before they go to work or when they get off, whichever one it works for them with an extended hours. But I don't know if many of them really want it to shut down a full day just to get an extra couple hours in the morning or extra couple hours in the evening. There's many of individuals that I know that work in the community that do get Fridays off, and they plan most of all their town running, especially whenever they live out in the rural side of Pennington County. And they plan a day to come in and usually it's a Friday, and they try to come in and do things. If the county building is no longer open on that day for them to do their business, they may then have to either A, adjust their business plan or uh adjust other things that may make them lose money in the in the in the business that they're working in. So I support a four day work week. I'm not going to mandate, I don't want to micromanage uh department heads, but I think it's doable to still do a four day work week and to be open five days a week so we can serve our community um like we have for the last several years. That's just my position on it. And so depending on what the motion is today, how we move forward, those are the things I'm going to consider. I I want to support, and I do support a four day work week, but also support that we have to be open for them, for the public.
Trevor Abernathy.
Good morning, Commissioners. Trevor Abernathy, Director of Equalization Office. I'm an appraiser there. Um, and just coming, I I just wanted to say a few things from an employee standpoint. Um, I'm assuming you got my email that I sent on Friday as well.
Thank you, Chairman.
Really, what what I saw with this uh coming change is that really what we were looking at is an alternative to increasing pay. That that's ultimately what it came down to because we're we're looking at uh staffing shortages and being in a position where I train the new appraisers in my office. I s, I've seen year after year where I put in and invest all this time and effort and then see that person leave for more money somewhere else. And I see that over and over and over, and it creates more work for me, uh for us as trainers. It creates more expense for the county because we're paying for that training. There's two people on the payroll during that time. Um, really, we're we're looking for a way to to maintain um a a good working environment that keeps people uh is is our ultimate goal. And this was uh one of those things where we were, like Janet said, thinking outside the box. Um, you know, some other thoughts that were out there, we're we're using some funds that were there um in in the budget because we were short-staffed to maybe give a bonus as an incentive and and helpful um for for the employees that are there. Um, that that didn't come through either. So so really, we were looking at an alternative between raises, which would ultimately probably mean uh increase in taxes, and some other benefit. Um, so what I remember when this came forward first was um the H R department brought it forward a as an idea after doing a survey of all the departments and and finding this is kind of a resonating theme of of what you would like to see. Um, some questions were brought up. Um, I I believe it was Commissioner Ross Connect with title companies even at the first meeting. And uh H R was asked to go back and get some more information, uh come back the following meeting and and uh explain what they found. So at that time, I know the auditor had talked with some um title companies and and H R had gotten some more information. His presentation there is, after that is is when it was voted in. So I I would just like to um, I I guess, stress that this is something that's already adopted at this point. Uh, we as employees are working with that. Uh, I've already made arrangements with my wife um to change her schedule to take kids to school. Um, I've been taking them to school for seven years. We've we've adjusted that. Um, I actually have something uh arranged to work on Fridays. Uh, so come in November eight to four, I'm going to be working, not here, but somewhere else uh to supplement income. So we we as employees are are really working with what you've decided on um and and planning on that. Um, I have uh vacation time planned with family next year that's based on this schedule. I've taken time off for my kids' birthdays next year that's based on this schedule. Um, so it's, it's really feels like um if it gets pulled out from under us, it's going to create some issues, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Trevor, would it be safe to assume that if a year ago, if we were fully staffed and we didn't have the retention problem and we didn't have employees getting trained and leaving, we wouldn't even be here the day talking about a four day work week?
Potentially.
Because it's my understanding that we can't find employees to work. We're out, we're totally understaffed throughout the whole county, and we have the situation where you're training people, paying two people to do one job, not just your department but other departments. That's why we're considering the four day work week because it's a solution.
For sure.
And I'm looking for another one if there's one out there.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Troy.
You know, Trevor, I I've read your emails that you've sent out and and quite frankly, the packet that I've I've went through a couple of different times and and the the this decision wasn't, department heads didn't take this hesitantly. They they looked at their employees, see what what was going to work. It was going to work for everybody, but there is work that can be done that inside the building with employees that can come in. I mean, even your department, people doing site visits and same way with uh uh planning. I mean, there is some that are doing those to work with their their folks. But I think you're absolutely right. We set this in motion. We we did some, we did the research and we asked the departments to come back and and canvass their their department. What can you do? And we did some trial areas in different departments to do it. And I'll just go back to we are a creature of habit. You know, we 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 used to seeing something a certain way, don't like to change. But I think it, we give it a, give it the year of chance. I think at least the minimum of the year of chance. It it's got to at least two to to really find the the good stats. But I think you as employees should know, your department heads, your leaders have your best interest in heart, so.
Thanks, Trevor.
Thank you.
Joe Dorn.
Joe Dorn, Department of Equalization. I'm the, becoming the Kama Specialist, and I don't have a lot to add to what Trevor said and what y'all have said. Um, but I appreciate that you are considering this and did bring it back. And I think that there are solutions, um whether it be people scheduling time on Friday, the public. I need to come in on Friday. They make a phone call and have someone meet them at the door and bring them in for that Friday. It's not like somebody's not going to be here. So I think that we should go forward with the decision that has been made. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. I know there's other employees here. Uh, so if there's other employees that would like to speak on this, you're more than welcome to come forward.
Mr. Chair, just before he speaks, could I get some clarification?
Yes.
This item was put on our agenda as a notice of intent to rescind or amend something previously adopted. So really, if there is no motion, it stays as it was originally set.
Correct.
If a commissioner wants to uh rescind the whole thing, they can make that motion and vote on it. If they want to amend it, they can make an amendment. If not, I just wanted to say there's three options.
Yep, yep.
Uh, Mike Iverson, Assistant Director of Pennington County I T. Um, I T is kind of fluid. You know, we have to work all the time anyway. If something breaks, we're in here. This weekend, I was in here on Monday. You know, stuff happens, we come and do it. So we're kind of flexible anyway. Um, so we don't have as much skin on the game as like Treasurers and as some other ones. Um, what I found really interesting, what really surprised me is in the July nineteenth, I want to say, meeting, there was a survey that was put in there where they had sixteen hundred and sixty-seven people that they polled in the county, and they had an eighty-four percent return rate of people who thought this was a good idea. They were split evenly, pretty close on whether it was a Monday or a Friday, but eighty-four percent of the public, that was interesting. Now, my stats class that I took in college um kicked in for some silly reason, so I was wondering, well, how much variance does it have in that? Roughly two and a half percent, a little less, actually. So if that poll was redone, about two and a half percent would be about the difference that they'd suggest. Now, that's kind of surprising because you can't get the public today to agree to eighty-five percent of much of anything, especially in a politics study. So I just thought that was kind of interesting that there's that big of a push. On a personal thing, I wish, you know, the county was open because it allowed me to do business after hours. Um, I'm actually a Meade County resident just across the line, so if they did, I wouldn't have to take a day off to go do that. I'd be able to just sneak out after work or before and go, so just my thought.
Thanks, Ray. Elaine. Elaine's a new employee.
I am a new employee, and hello to all of you. Um, first and foremost, um, I work for auditor Cindy. And I am truly, truly honored to be here, working for Pennington County. Um, I would really like to give you just a real brief overview. Um, I was the auditor in Butte County for seventeen years, and I'm very proud of that. We uh, we are definitely a county that doesn't, or Butte County is definitely a county that doesn't have much money. And you're always looking at ways to, same thing, try to keep a hold of our employees and um take care of the public because that is our job, is to be public service. Um, I was very, and I was very, very blessed because um after I left uh Butte County as auditor, I uh had the opportunity to go down and work at the Secretary of State's office. And uh that was an incredible experience for me. Uh, I got to watch the election process um from start to finish. And um I'm a person that is uh very, very passionate about our elections. And uh that's why Cindy hired me is because um her gal that's been with her for over twenty years is going to be retiring in March. And so um I'm training under her, and uh it is a lot different here in Pennington County versus Butte County. But so I I am working on that. But one of the things after Cindy had made me my job offer, um, I'm going to back up here just a second. When our current Secretary of State was not reelected at the Republican Convention, it really kind of made me wonder, um, gosh, do I really want to stay until the end of the year? Um, I'm getting to that age where I like to have, I like to know what's going on. I like to, for my own self, my own budget or whatever, just so I know what I'm doing. But um when Cindy called me and um offered me the position, I was just ecstatic because I felt like, wow, I'm really taking a step up here. I've been the Butte County auditor. I've went to the Secretary of State, and now hi, here I am with Pennington County. And I truly mean that I am honored to be here. After I had accepted the position, though, Cindy reached out to me and she asked me. She said, Elaine, I have to tell you, or I have to ask you something. She said, um, the commissioners have decided to go to four ten hour days. She said, is that going to affect how you, if you want to come work for Pennington County or not? And um I said, oh, my goodness, that just sounds absolutely wonderful to go to um a four day, a four day week, um, the ten hours a day. And um I guess I just speak on behalf of um the employees that are here in Pennington County, and I'm going to also speak on employees across the state that are in these state offices or in these county offices. It's hard. It's hard to uh, we do burn our um employees out. But um anyway, that's what I had to say, and I thank you very much for giving me the opportunity. And um again, I'm very honored to be working here in Pennington County.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Any others? Not a, uh, Mike, would you like to comment?
Uh, Mike Cool, Director of Buildings and Grounds. Uh, I guess in uh, I thought maybe I should step up and and maybe respond to uh Commissioner Hancock's uh comments in in some day. I guess I I don't necessarily see a direct correlation relative to space needs to to that, the way we staff. I understand that uh uh right now, it's a challenge that we could, we can't hire people right now, but it's also a challenge when you don't have space anymore to put people to to keep it uh up with required services. So I don't know that I I necessarily see the direct correlation to a um relative to uh why we may need additional space needs. And I I guess if you had further questions for me, I would try and respond to that.
Chairman.
Commissioner Hancock.
I guess I'm trying to figure out when um we have, people keep saying we don't have enough employees, we're, we we don't, we can't get enough staff. Um, we're down five, we're down four, but then we want to remodel and we can't. I mean, are we thinking of the future that all those people are going to be able to fill those positions? We're thinking uh opportunities are going to change because we're spending money to remodel so they have more space. But then they're telling us they don't need as much space because you can't hire as many people. So how does, why would we remodel? Why would we need more space if we can't hire enough people for the space? And then are are we just thinking, because we're thinking ten or twenty years down the line. But I think we're going to have to get more creative because I don't think it's going to get better for hiring employees. I don't, I don't see it expanding into a bigger workforce. I think it's going to diminish workforce. How does that make an effect on a building? I know if I don't have as much people in my building, in my office, in my space, why would I need a bigger space? Why would I need to expand that space?
Mr. Chair.
Excuse me, I'm still talking, please, if you could answer the question.
Um, well, in regard to, uh, what what we're up against now in in terms of remodeling is we're making uh um often, in order to accommodate separate spaces and stuff, we're making what I feel are poor choices in terms of cutting up space and making reduced areas that probably won't survive the test of time. So we're spending money potentially to do that. There just isn't the square footage necessary to do things. I think departments are all willing right now at this point in time to consider alternative ways to uh to do things. Uh, the the challenges that we face right now relative to staffing, I think they're willing to to look at different things in any way they uh they can in terms of uh spaces. But we've essentially, with with the exception of one uh, one space in the building, we've we've filled everything. Um, um, you know, our alternatives are, you know, gutting areas and trying to squeeze everything down even in into even tighter spaces um uh as as an option, but um.
Well, when you talk about, Mike, if I could, we filled everything, but I keep saying we're not filling any, everything anymore because we're not filling them because we can't fill the spaces. We can't fill those departments up anymore because people don't want to and and can't employ as many employees anymore. Employees sit in those spaces. So um if you can't fit the employees in the spaces, then you don't need more space. Um, I do know buildings and grounds need a space. We've needed that space for a while. That's a given since I've been here. We do need the courthouse remodeled. We do need, we do have needs for remodels, but I'm hearing we need more space. We need more buildings. We need more stuff to uh have accommodate the growing needs of departments because of expansion. Now, how can you tell me expansion in one minute and we need more space for these people? And the next minute, that's what I meant by it, you're telling me we don't have enough employees to fill the space. So I'll keep saying, if I have an office and I can't fill the office, I don't need to expand the space because I keep. Because I keep not being able to expand that space because I can't find employees to fill it. So that's what I mean by, if, if we keep saying even the, even the city, you have ninety less employees. Do we plan, and maybe I'm, I'm in the wrong area. Maybe we plan that something's gonna happen and we're gonna start filling the space in the next ten, five or ten years and I'm just out of, out of touch of what's gonna start filling up and, and the workforce is gonna change in the next two years. And those spaces are gonna be all full and we're ready to move forward. And that's what I meant by that, Mike, because um, like I said, space needs. I've been with you in the buildings and grounds for a long time. You have space needs. But now I'm finding that um, Janet needed space needs. So we, we fed, we made her needs. She's gonna need more. She has, she's the one that has lots of employees. Then we have State's Attorneys has more needs. Then we have, what happened to the guy that had the need in the first place? The guy that has, um, I'll just tell you all, he has people in the closets for his office. There's a space need there. So what do we? Let, let, that's what I'm talking about, Mike. I'm, I'm getting confused with all this expansion of buildings, but not enough employees to hire, that we have to do this. And now we went from a four-day work week and um, we're saying, we're not gonna use the building three days a week that we just spent how much money on? Cause and we don't even have enough employees to fill the building or to even make a five-day work week for most of them. If that's what you're saying, then we need to close one day a week. But we're not saying that today. So now y'all see why I'm confused. It comes in one big circle where you want me to make a decision on something on a four-day work week, but there's other stuff coming past, what's coming past a four-day work week. There's building decisions to make and other stuff besides a four-day work, work week that I have to make. It's gonna make sense for the future of Pennington County. And we're saying it's a great idea that we're gonna close a building for three days a week that costs us the money that it costs to build this. And we're already outgrowing this building, but we don't have enough employees to fill it or even come to work at Pennington County.
Okay, uh, Joe, do you mind, Mike?
Go ahead.
I think what Mike is trying to say and, and I kind of just picked Sandy's ear. I, I think all the department heads would say, uh, you know, I know Laura up in the State's Attorneys and I don't know about Public Defender, but the employees that we currently have fill the space that we have. So when we're fully staffed, we're going to be over full. Is kind of the consensus is what I'm getting.
Yes. I mean, i- i- if you need so many people in order to accomplish the work that the county has before, uh, we have to have someplace to place all those people. Now, and my understanding is that uh, that from what is out there is the expectations aren't, this isn't gonna continue indefinitely. Uh, at least I'm hoping that it, it won't uh, continue. Uh, we're just trying to pre- prepare for when, with the changing needs and how do we try and compensate for those changing needs. Uh, examples are uh, with, with um, uh, there, there's no way to add any, uh, as far as, I think we've crammed everybody that we can cram into uh, uh, the treasurer's office in terms of to, to address those needs. We are now taking for the State's Attorney's Office, uh, one of their, their tuned court and current, gonna put on a cubicles in it in order to address their additional staff needs. So there's a loss there yet of, of space. Those, those choices are being made. Uh, but in terms of um, the sheer amount of work is, I understand it and I think people are considering, uh, is there different ways to do business? Um, um, that this is what we're presented with right now. Um, as, as of what, you know, relative to the, the needs assessment work that we're doing, the thinking um, that there, in order to accommodate so much work, there has to be a, a person to accommodate that. And that's what we're trying to address relative to that planning.
So if you have space needs, then it seems like then you would work around the space needs with the schedule differentials in order to meet those space needs to kind of help that balance, right? You wouldn't just close a building. You work with the space needs, the ones that have space needs to work with that balance. So you wouldn't have as many people in the office at the same time. Meaning using, they might have to use shared offices or your shared spaces in a sense during those times. I don't know. I don't know, the department head would know more, but there's only so much spending that could keep going on that we're doing in Pennington County and still be able to, to move forward with everything that we want to do for employees, for buildings and everything else for budgets.
I, I think that we're all in agreement on that.
Commissioner La Croix.
I think we're getting confused with, and part of that's probably mine or Ron's part, you know, we, being on the building committee, we've asked you to reach out to the commissioners because we haven't had the facilities need study presented to the commission yet. So the public doesn't know, quite know what our needs are so far yet. But we've asked you to keep commissioners updating what's happening and, and so you've reached out to some, so they're seeing.
Yes.
Seeing that without the full study presentation, which is coming on the twentieth.
Yep.
And so that was part of ours to just try to keep you guys updated on what's happening. But I think it, we have been short on building spaces. I mean, making, taking control rooms, making them into offices for the attorney's offices and so forth. We've, we know what the cost is gonna be twenty to forty years from now. Do we have some shortages in our departments? Sure. I think we all do. You know, and we're looking at the growth, at the exponential growth that Rapid City is seeing and where we're gonna be at in twenty to forty years. And where we're at right now, we've got to make those adjustments. So I, I just wanted to clarify that, that, you know, that what you're seeing is, was the request of the, of us telling committee to take a look at you, but the full report's gonna come on the twentieth.
I'm gonna try to bring this to a close. Just a reminder that uh, this item is a notice of intent to rescind or amend something previously adopted. Uh, on July nineteenth, uh, this commission adopted a motion which reads move by La Croix and seconded by Ross Connect to approve implementing four-day work week for the county administration building being opened Monday through Thursday, seven AM to six PM starting November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, to continue to support remote and flexible work schedules for all county offices and departments and for the current holiday observance policy to remain in place and to review this in six months. The vote was the motion carried three to one with Commissioner Laster voting no. Commissioner Haggard was absent from that meeting. And so this request today was made by Commissioner Ross Connect and I'll ask Commissioner Ross Connect, uh, do you wish to move a motion to either rescind or amend?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I guess, can I make a statement here?
Yes, you can.
I agree with Sam. You know, we, we had eighteen hundred folks that were surveyed roughly. Uh, my question is, why did we not, uh, we got three newspapers, three newspapers that are legal newspapers for the county that we could have maybe stretched that scoping process a little bit, but that'd give me a better comfort level. If we included more of the general public that vote for us, and they, they might be eighty-four percent too, but I think we would hold the general public that uh, opportunity.
So Commissioner Ross Connect, do you wish to make a motion? You are, you requested this.
I would make a motion that we uh, do a more complete scoping process using the three newspapers that we have.
Has to rescind first.
There, there's a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
He has to rescind first, doesn't he?
I'd make a motion to rescind them.
Holly, how's that work?
Ross Connect made a motion to rescind. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to rescind. Um, the action that was taken on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Um, before we move forward, Holly, can I call on you to tell me? We set, we set a date of November fourteenth in there. What activities have either, either taken place or would need to take place? What kind of a timeframe are we talking here for rescinding this action?
There, there has been work put into creating the public education campaign that would go forth. Um, you've heard from employees today and department heads who have been working with their staff and making adjustments and daycares and schedules and so on and so forth. Um, we picked November fourteenth simply because it was after our October tax collection season and also got us through a general election on the beginning of November. So there isn't a specific necessarily, you, you can rescind at this point. Um, the reason we did it so early is that there are a lot of things that we need to be working on. We need to look at some of our policies. We need to amend and work on some of those. We need to order the door system for Public Defender and State's Attorney's Office. Um, so if the board wishes to do this, we would ask that you do it now so that we have a clear direction that you either are continuing to support this or you've decided not to and we need to end the work that we're currently doing. Um, another option the board has is if they wish to amend it and postpone the start date until January of twenty twenty-three, that's another option to give us some more time to look into specific concerns that the board has. So we know what you would like us to address. Um, hopefully that answers your question.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, I've got, I, I need to clarify something here for myself.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and I don't think this is gonna affect the motion. But I'm not, I'm not sure that Commissioner Haggard can second that motion. Uh, because she wasn't here at that meeting. I think it has to be somebody else to second the motion.
Jay.
I would second it if it needs to be seconded.
I think she's appealing my, my ruling. I think she's asking Jay if, for.
Travis can do it if that makes it easier. Gary, I'm good either way. If it can be me or Travis.
Travis was here and he voted on it. I think that.
He voted no on it.
I voted no.
Put no on it, but for this is, that would be for reconsideration. He wouldn't be able to make it. But as I understand it, for rescinding or amending, he could vote on that motion.
My understanding, Jay Alderman with State's Attorney's Office, my understanding is that to bring the motion, you had to be one of the members that voted on the prior one. So I've assumed that would also apply to a second. So if Commissioner Haggard was not even present that day, it would be up to the four of you to uh, bring the motion and, and second.
Okay. So Lassiter seconded it. I was sick that day.
Yeah.
So you, you were making the second?
I would second that, yes.
Okay.
And it's still to rescind?
Yes.
Would they both have to be from the approving side, the first and second, or just the first motion?
The first motion is.
Motion.
Just the first.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Lassiter.
No, you're fine. Um, my question is this, and obviously I voted against this when it came up. So here's my question and some more to the motion around this one. Um, you want to get, is, what's the intent of rescinding it right now? You started to say something about getting more information. So my question at this moment now is, are we rescinding it with the intent to get more information from the public? Is that kind of what I was understanding, what you were saying there, Commissioner Ross Connect? Is that what you were?
That's correct. And if we can do that with amendment like Holly was suggesting, I'm in favor of that as well.
Two different motions. So if you're gonna rescind, rescind takes us back to Monday through Friday, eight to five, no implementation. We're done. If you want to amend, you can change the start date of the original motion that you made to a different date and give further direction in a separate motion on what you would like us to research or break back for further consideration.
Then I will change my motion to amend with a la- a later start date and uh, do the publication that I suggested in the interim.
Since you have a second, I would, I would suggest you do a substitute motion.
So I would be making a substitute motion to amend.
We have to rescind first before he does any of that.
Yeah, let's vote on the rescission to bring it.
There's a motion and a second on the floor.
They need to withdraw the rescind.
I was gonna say, the, the motion maker, which is Commissioner Ross Connect, could withdraw his motion and ask the seconder if they're okay with that. Then you could bring a whole new motion.
So the, so the motion, Chairman, can I ask something?
Yeah.
So Bert, you guys all confused me. So we're, we're not even going into a motion. Doesn't he have to, don't we have to rescind the whole thing and start over?
That's what we're talking about right now.
Okay, so we still have to, we still have to make a motion to rescind, rescind it and then start talking about it. The motion was.
I have a, I have a motion from Commissioner Ross Connect and a second from Commissioner Laster to rescind.
Okay, so let's do that first, then talk about it.
That isn't the motion we have?
That's the motion that's currently on the floor.
Yes.
It would be my recommendation to withdraw that motion to rescind.
That's what he tried to do.
Because what Commissioner Ross Connect ultimately wants to do is a motion to amend something previously adopted. You don't have to rescind it and take it off the books completely. He wants to amend what you previously adopted with a new start date.
Okay.
Two separate motions.
Okay.
With, with the understanding that in the interim time, um, you have the publication, you get more feedback. And if you decide at that point that you want to rescind it entirely, you can.
Okay.
Or you can stick with the new implementation date. You can do it, you can do it any way you want it. You could rescind it today and still um, get some feedback from the public. You could take it off the books entirely and still get feedback from the public and put it back in place if the public was like, yeah, close on Fridays. So you can do it either. Do you understand what I'm saying?
So you stand by the motion you have. Your motion is to rescind at this point with a second.
Uh, so I got a question for Holly. So Holly, if we went forward with the, withdraw the uh, my motion to rescind and went with a motion to amend with the idea that we're gonna do further scoping through the three legal newspapers, is there one option that would be better than the other?
They, they get you all to the same end result, sir. I mean, if it's cleaner, if the board believes it's cleaner to just rescind it, you can do that. Absolutely.
We'll just go with that then.
With the rescind?
Right.
Okay. Uh, and I'm not, I'm not gonna support that motion because I, I firmly believe we need to go to the four-day work week myself. Uh, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner La Croix.
I, I'm, I too am not gonna support that. I think we got the wheels of motion. I do think the second part of the motion would have been more applicable as far as getting the notice out there. I, I think if this motion fails, that would be a good alternative motion to amend, to, to send out some publications, but still keep it on books so we can, could get some feedback. But I, I won't support, support the motion on the floor with all the information that we received. Um, I think it's uh, would, would create a lot of chaos myself.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lassiter.
Obviously, I second it because I'm, uh, and I've made my position clear. Uh, my main concern is being closed on a Friday or Monday. I think we should be open five days. Uh, I do think it's up to the department heads to be able to navigate through that. I mean, I don't want to micromanage what they do and on that side of it, but I do think it's, it's a viable and doable option that you can come up with a four-ten hour schedule if you would still like to do that for your staff so that uh, we can navigate through that. I would not say that this stops you from being able to come up with an alternative schedule. Um, just being the county administrative building still being open for five days a week.
I agree.
Mr. Haggard.
I agree. I think rescinding is good, um, not because we want to change anything, but in the sense of the four-day work week, I think more information is good, what Ron is talking about. And uh, we should move forward on the rescind and then figure out what we're doing next with it.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Um, speaking from the department head level, as probably one of the only department heads with small children and daycare still, um, daycare is difficult at best to find. You know, that was, I think, the, the second thing on the, the employees list of uh, you know, wants or needs that the county could provide. Um, my oldest is three, my youngest is two, so I got. My oldest is three, my youngest is two, so I got, you know, both of them are in daycare. And it took us six months to find a daycare for our first one. And just thank God that she had an opening when our second one was there. It would have been another six months looking for daycare, you know, especially with COVID. And there's a lot of childcare providers out there that are full and they're very difficult at best to find. You know, and, and going to change your daycare schedules, you know, and you, you heard from Trevor. I don't know how, however many other employees have already started to change their schedule, but it's difficult. You know, we all started, started that change with, with the vote. Obviously, this doesn't affect our department, right? We already do four tens just for the sheer size of our county and the, the ground that we have to cover. So I, I speak from, you know, that side of my, myself is the daycare, the, the changes that have already been, been made, those employees are looking forward to that, just like Trevor said, right? He also said that we don't pay enough, right? So he's looking to supplement his income. How many other employees have already started down that route? You, you've heard from one, how many aren't going to speak up, right? Because they don't like to come and speak on this platform. But I just wanted to throw that out there, that childcare is, is very, very difficult to find and good childcare is extremely difficult to find.
I'm going to call the question.
Questions been called. All those in favor of the motion, or all those in favor of calling the question indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All those in favor of the motion to rescind, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion was three to two, passed, rescinded.
So, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Being rescinded, does that bring it back up for discussion? For motion? It's still on our agenda?
We, we need direction.
Need direction.
Oh, sorry, Lloyd, go ahead.
So, I'm going to make the motion to start it January first. Move it to January first, four-day work week with the caveat that it'd be, what was, they wanted January second, 2023, be effective, the four-day work week with publications going out to three newspapers with the notice within forty-five days. I guess I'm looking for clarification on that part of, of the notification that Mr. Rosskineck was talking about.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Rosskineck.
I guess my thoughts there would be, we have to sit there and let the general public know the situation, how this got started and the benefits and the concern, you know, and anything that could be detrimental. So I think that notice is pretty, pretty important, how it's written and in the context of it. But I give people a chance to, at least we've reached out to the general public, the, the folks that vote for us, see what their thoughts are. But I think it's important that it's written in the sense that they understand what they're being asked. And if they want to respond back, we just have to figure out how we want that response to be.
Mr. Chairman.
I, I still have the floor. I had a question.
You do. Commissioner LaCroy is the floor.
So the motion would be start date January second with a notice going out into the papers and on our webpage of the implementation of a four-day, ten-week, or four, four-day, 10-hour work week with the schedules and a report given back with any input by November's first meeting. This is September, October.
That a motion?
Yes, that was a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Chairman.
Got a motion and a second. Commissioner Haddock.
So, Ron, you're going to have input. You're going to come back. You're going to have this motion. It's going to come forward. All these employees and people are waiting to see if this input is good or bad. Are you going to rescind again if that input comes back with the three newspapers that say, you shouldn't be doing this, Ron? Travis and Deb, we don't like this. We're going to come back and rescind it again? Because we just made a motion now to do the same thing with some more input. So what have we changed? What have we changed? So, Joe, we got you. So, here's my thoughts. Here's my bottom line. Department heads, you're smart enough to figure this out. You don't need us. I said it before, right? You don't need these motions. You need seventeen department heads. If you want to close your, your place, you want to close your department, do it. You're going to take the heat. You're going to take the hit. And when the general public comes to you and says, what are you doing? I need you open. And you take enough of those hits, you're going to keep it open. Or they're going to say, man, this worked out great. You're doing great. Because those department heads are going to come back and they're going to have a department meeting and five of them are going to say, guess what? This sucks. This is not working. We have trusted the department heads to figure this out. Now we're rescinding and we're figuring this out. It's the craziest thing I've ever seen. Seventeen department heads and we are figuring it out for them. Shut your building, shut your department. If you want to shut it, shut it. If you want to keep it open because five days a week worked for you? And if you can't do it, Janet, don't do it. But take the hit. Don't make it our issue. It's not, we don't have to shut the whole building. If you want to shut the whole building and you're all department heads, you decide at your meeting you want to shut the whole building down?
The law says that we don't have the authority to shut the building down. The authority sits with the commissioners. It's in state statute.
Okay, so you put on your, your things that you shut the building down because you decided with us that four-day work weeks worked for you and then you take the hit from the public. And I'll say, like Ron said, he's going to publicize it? That you guys decided as department heads, it's a great idea to do a four-day week, wait, work week instead of five?
And, and I'm, you know.
That's where, that's where I'm coming from.
That's fine, but don't, if, if you guys are not in favor of doing this, then pull it and have it over and done with. Don't keep dangling the carrot in front of the employees.
Well, that's my bottom line. This, this January second thing is a joke. Okay, because you're doing the same thing and you're messing with the employees and the, and the nonsense of three, having it come back again is nonsense. I rescinded it because I thought we were, I don't know. Maybe I thought the department heads were going to make a decision on, okay, we got this. We can do this. Not because I didn't want to do what the employees wanted to do. It's, it's.
Well, the department heads did bring us the recommendation.
Yeah, shut, shut the whole building. Okay.
Well, you don't like, you don't like what they recommended. But they did bring the recommendation to us.
I know, but I, I, I can't fathom that. I can't fathom, I, I just, for some reason, in my brain, I cannot fathom shutting this big a building. I can't even fathom shutting my building for five days a week. Maybe I am so old school, I can't get it. And I apologize to the public and to the employees. I can't fathom shutting a building this big five days a week and trying to do business.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor.
Mr. Chair.
Get a second.
I just want, I want to make a motion. I want to rescind.
You want to do what? I missed that.
Three days a week, sorry.
I want to adjust my motion and I need to know if the session is okay with that.
Okay. Who's second? I don't have it.
Rosskineck.
Ron Rosskineck, second.
My motion would read to move to January second implementation. Notice be given out in the newspapers and on, on, on the internet or webpage. But that's it. It goes into inflammation, not bring it back to commission. I wanted to make a friendly amendment, if you're okay with a friendly amendment to my motion.
Yes.
So you're making the motion to just implement it starting January second?
Yep.
Put it out in the paper, but that's it, it's done.
And then our webpage, county webpage.
And we have the right to rescind at any time. You know that, Lloyd, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by the commission? I'm going to go to Sam.
Is there any way you could just amend your motion to say that you're going to notify the public that you're thinking about making this change and you want their input? Come back after you have the November, or at the November meeting and set your date. If the public's for it, go with it instead of setting a date right now.
I think Janet is correct. You can't keep dangling it out there. You got, you got to make a decision. We've got employees that have already made decisions based on the action that was taken in July as to what's going to impact their lives in the future. I don't think you can, you can hang it out there any longer than that at this point in time.
That's why I made my friendly amendment.
You're just making it further down the road.
Yeah, you're just taking it down the road with the same comments. But anyway, thanks.
Joan.
Joan Martin, Commission Office, but here as a Pennington County employee. As a person who counted those eighteen hundred and some odd surveys that were given out to every person that came to the treasurer's office, and those are the people that are going to be the hardest to reach, the people that come in one time a year to renew their tags or once every five years when they buy a vehicle. Eighty-four point some odd percent said, yes, close on Fridays. The fifteen point something percent that said no are actually some people who said yes, but then had some weird comment that we couldn't say, yes, Monday, yes, Friday. Those went into the no piles to make it more than fair, I guess, to make it as clean and clear as yeses and nos. So if you said yes in some weird comment, you went into the no pile. As an employee, some of us have made some plans. A, a lot of people have made plans. My youngest has just graduated, so I haven't had to make daycare plans. But there's a lot of people who have made daycare plans, shuffled their schedules with their families to make this work. I just think we need to stick with the decision that we've made. And as far as title companies, is it change hard? Yeah, change is hard. Change is always hard. Are there going to be some bugs to work out? Of course there are. But those bugs can be worked out. You know what, you know what the hours are now for everyone, citizens, title companies, realtors, whomever. They know that we're going to be open from seven to six. They can start here at seven instead of wait till eight when they want to be out slinging a hammer. They can be here at seven. They can come in the wintertime, it's after dark. They can be here till six o'clock. There's some advantages to the public. This is not just an employee benefit. Is it an employee benefit? Yeah, it is. But it's not just an employee benefit. The county citizens, Pennington County citizens, citizens will have benefit as well. They'll have an hour earlier access four days a week, an hour later access four days a week. There are benefits to the citizens. Are there going to be bugs to work out? Yeah. If we go to solicit for more public votes on it, right there's the public votes. Eighteen hundred and some odd of actual Pennington County citizens that were inside of this building, either at the treasurer's office or at the planning department. You have your, you have your public input. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
One more thing.
Commissioner Haddock.
So if we are kicking the can down the road and just messing with employees is what it looks like to me at this point, just to get some public notification and would have never rescinded, would have moved it just like it was before. That's my bottom line. Because we're doing it January second. It's the most nonsense I've ever seen up here to rescind something, to have public, more public information. Information is good. To, to come back and say, we're doing the same thing. January second. It's nonsense.
Commissioners, I want to point something out. This is not an ordinance. This is just a, a commission decision. Eighteen hundred is a lot, but if this was an ordinance, it would be referable. And I could bring you a heck of a lot more than eighteen hundred signatures on petitions that might want to vote on this item. I would say that maybe there are some frequent flyers in there. There's probably a lot of frequent flyers that come to the treasurer's office that maybe signed a sheet more than once. It's definitely not scientific. But what is scientific and what is proper is the public voice in how they are served by their government. Because what we're really talking about here is access to our government. And I would encourage you to rescind the decision and, and let it be. And I, I do think that it's clear from the surveys that were filled out that the department heads are doing a pretty good job of accommodating their employees already. And that's just, I'm, I'm lobbying you on behalf of the public. The employees have been lobbying you all morning. So that, and I would also encourage you to think about this. Just because people aren't here doesn't mean they don't care. A lot of people don't have the, the will to speak up, but they, but they, you know, or the ability because they're busy elsewhere. I hear from people all the time, I'm, I'm behind you. Sometimes they're so far behind, I can't even see them. But you know how that goes. But, but you are here as a result of a survey as well, and that's called an election. And I think that if we really want to make a decision that will, will be mindful of the public's voice, the only way to do it is mail out, mail out something to every taxpayer or every address in the county and say, what is your opinion? Because that is the only way that, that the public per se is going to have a chance because this is not something they get to vote on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion on the floor and a second, which effectively defers the implementation to January second of the four-day work week. Are those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
So was it three to one or three to two?
Three to one, I don't. I think it's the same motion we had, so we're three to.
The three to one or?
Three to two, or three to, four to one.
Four to one? Okay.
Yep, I'm in favor.
Okay.
Move it forward.
Okay.
I guess January second? That's what it is, sir.
Commissioner LaCroy, will you make a motion to come back to budget?
Oh.
We take a five-minute break?
Can we finish up the budget? We got Cindy sitting here and then take it?
Yeah, move to take off the table, the budget, 2023 budget with its changes.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Cindy.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Cindy, this is the, what the, just, all you do is take out that one full-time employee, am I correct?
That is correct, yes.
And so I would make the motion to approve the resolution adopting 2023 annual budget in the amount of one hundred and fifteen million, eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-four on collectible taxes, four million, three hundred and seventy-five. Mislands revenue, fifty-seven million, six nineteen, six sixteen. Cash applied, eight million, eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-six, sixty-seven, and a tax levy in the amount of fifty-three million, six hundred and eighty-sixty-six. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adopt the 23 annual budget? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, back to the commission. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Do you got public comment or not? You got any?
Is there anybody here for public comment? I don't have any speaker request forms for it.
If, if not, I'd move to take a 10-minute break.
Got a motion in a second. Take a ten-minute break. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Call the meeting back to order. Next item we have is twenty-five, planning and zoning.
Mr. Chair, move to go into Board of Adjustments.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, wait.
Nope, wait till.
You have items, you have item twenty-four to address, items from the public.
We already did.
We did.
Yep, there was nobody.
I apologize.
No, you're fine. So did I get a second for going into the Board of Adjustment? In a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Right, Brittany Moll, our Planning Director. Item A is variance VA twenty-two dash eighteen to reduce the setback from twenty-five feet to eight feet. The owner is Woodstock Supply. The agent is Fergmore Engineering. The property is located off of South Interstate ninety service road, and the property is zoned heavy industrial district, and it is surrounded by the city limits of Box Elder and the city limits of Rapid City. We have a two-pronged approach when looking at variances. I will put them up on the screen and just read the answers. Does it injure the neighborhood? No, the requested setback is eight feet from the rear yard. The setback to the rear yard should have minimal impact on the neighborhood. Item two, does it conform to the neighborhood? Yes, the neighborhood consists of commercial and industrial businesses and buildings. The businesses are located in Rapid City and Box Elder Limits. Number three, does it conform to the general purpose of the zoning ordinance? No, the zoning ordinance for heavy industrial district requires a twenty-five-foot setback from the rear property line. The proposed structure will be eight feet from the property line. Number four is, does it conform to the comprehensive plan currently in place? No, the future land use is heavy industrial district, which requires a minimum twenty-five-foot side yard setback. Number five, does it harm the public safety, health, or general welfare of the community? No, the requested setback is eight feet from the rear yard. A setback to the rear yard should have minimal impact on the safety, health, and general welfare of the public. Prong two, whether special conditions exist to grant a variance? Does a special condition exist? Yes, the lot is split by railroad marking it difficult, or making it difficult for access to the property and any storage building on the back of the property. The lot is in irregular shape due to the intersection of the lot by the railroad. And if the special condition exists, does enforcing the ordinance create unnecessary hardship? Yes, the front of the building is utilized for parking and a reduction of the parking area could create a violation of the zoning ordinance for not providing adequate parking area for an industrial use on the property. And B, if a special circumstance exists, does granting the variance observe the ordinance spirit while doing substantial justice? Yes, maintaining the frontage area for parking will allow the business to maintain the number of parking spaces required for use in the district. So staff is recommending approval as there are special conditions on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Staff recommends one condition be included, and that is that the applicant submits a survey stamp by registered surveyor, which shows that the building is eight feet from the property line.
Move approval.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Commissioner Adcock, second by Commissioner Ross Connect to approve. Is any public comment? Back to the commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B.
Item B is subdivision regulations variance SV twenty-two dash zero eight to waive the requirements to construct a road to ordinance fourteen standards. The owner is Caputa Acres LLC, Milton Gut Connect. The surveyor and applicant is DC Scott Surveyors. The property is located approximately point three miles north of the intersection of East Highway forty-four and Wiseheart Road. This request was continued from the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two Board of Commissioners meeting in order for the commissioners to do a site visit to take a look at the road. So staff is still recommending denial as there were no special conditions on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of ordinance fourteen standards. However, if the Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves the request, staff does not recommend any conditions be included.
So as I reviewed the video from the last meeting, there was some discussion at that point in time of, since we're dealing with these section line roads on a fairly consistent basis as to whether or not we as a commission want to take a firm stand on whether all of them need to come to standard fourteen or whether we're going to continue as we are and looking at exceptions.
Megan, did you come up with any?
I think that's fair.
Megan Krueger, State's Attorney's Office. Sorry, I'm limping. I hurt my foot this weekend. So there is, my understanding is that the board had been asking about designating some of these roads, if they're not improved to our lower maintenance level. There is a specific statutory framework that has to be followed in order to do that. First, you have to give notice to the public. Statute doesn't specifically say what that notice is, but we decided that probably the best and most wide notice is just publication in the newspaper ten days before the meeting. And then there has to be a separate hearing held, which could have been done simultaneous to this, but at this point, it hasn't been noticed up. So if the board wanted it to be a separate, no maintenance or no, or minimum maintenance road, there would have to be a separate hearing. My recommendation would be to add a condition essentially saying that the applicant has to go through the correct statutory process in order to have that road designated as no or minimum maintenance, depending on how many houses are out there. I think if it's one or less homes, then it can be designated as no maintenance. If it's two to five, then that's ten. Ten, two to ten, that's minimum maintenance road, and anything more than ten would be, you know, one of our regular roads. So depending on what this board would like to do, if you want that condition that they have to come in to have it designated as a no maintenance road, they would have to have a separate hearing because it's required by statute. On further items of this nature, my recommendation would be to do it at the same time, so that way an applicant only has to come in one time, but because this is the first time that we've done it, it's a little bit disjointed, I suppose. Does that answer all of your guys' questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroix.
So I kind of understand what you're talking about. So what you're saying was we'd probably want to continue this or add a stipulation onto it to go through the process for no maintenance road?
Yeah, either way would work. You know, if you continued it, then you would just make the decision at a later date. If you decided that you were comfortable with making the decision at this time, then you would just add as a condition of the variance that they would have to come in and get that designation.
But we'd still have to have the requirements if we're not going to meet the standard. We'd have to come up with those and have that in part of the motion today.
Correct. Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Commissioner LaCroix, you're correct. My, it would be of my opinion that if you do allow this road to go in at eighteen feet, you know, like granted Wiseheart Road is eighteen feet, you know, currently, and then the new road going forth, if you guys allow him to put that road in not to ordinance fourteen, I think the resolution does need to come forward, and it does need to be designated as a no maintenance or a minimum maintenance road. It looks like it would probably fall under the minimum maintenance jurisdiction from Highway forty-four going north to its terminus, however long that distance may be.
Does that, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Oster.
Does it have to be the whole road or just from that little intersection north? I guess where he's putting it in, would it have to be designated no maintenance that whole road or just from that point that he's putting, moving forward?
To be honest with you, I think you could probably do it from that little intersection going north, but you know, it's, this is one of those roads that we're going to take a look at when we're doing our road resolution anyways. So instead of coming back with that's another resolution next year, when we get that study completed, you could just get it all done clearly right now.
Joe, you're not maintaining the first part of that road now, are you?
Currently, it is on our county jurisdiction. Correct. It is.
Okay. And there's people living, there's two residences there.
I believe there are two. I don't know if they're actual residents or if this one on the right is just an outbuilding or if it's an actual resident. Maybe Milton can answer that question? I don't know.
Come up, Milton.
So, I mean, it's definitely more than one, but it's less than ten, so it would fall under our ordinance fourteen as a minimum maintenance road.
Come ahead, Milton.
There's three.
Three residences there?
The one guy lives in his fifth wheel there, which I think he's got, he comes and goes, but yeah, there's the one on the right, there's people living there, and then the house on the left, but the one closest to Wiseheart, that's the one that he lives in, the fifth wheel there.
So the one on the right is actually probably a farming operation, I presume that?
I don't think they're farming, they just live there.
Is that what it originally was though, or not?
Yeah, that's before my time.
Okay, okay. So then on the left is where you're saying, it looks like either a new or remodeled house that's there?
No, not new, has been there some time.
They're doing, they're doing some work on it then?
Yeah, I think it's stopped.
Okay, okay. And then that's where you're saying the fifth wheel is?
The fifth wheel is, there's a lot that's closest to Wiseheart on the left there. Yeah.
Okay, okay.
There's a guy who lives in his fifth wheel here and then a house on this lot, is that what, is that correct?
Right, I believe so, yes.
So either way, it would fall under our minimum maintenance criteria. So you can do it either way. Again, it will come back in front of you probably early next year. It would be our recommendation at that time, most likely to be a minimum maintenance road.
Well, here, the issue I see with it is we've got a portion of a road there that's been in there for years, obviously serving those other residents. Whether they were ever granted a variance or whether the variance was even required, the road was just built back at that point in time. So problem is, is that if we said to Milton, no, we're not going to, we're not going to allow you to not do the ordinance fourteen, would we be stuck with doing the first part of the road to bringing that up to standard then?
I guess that's a matter of opinion. I don't know the answer to that question if we would absolutely have to, you know what I mean? That's a, that's a legal question.
Okay. Well, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me that you drive, you know, a third of a mile on a one that's not standard, and then you move on to a road that we've required it to be standards, meet the standards. So, Milton?
Couple of things, and this has been going on, I think there's some things being figured out, like this is kind of somewhat of a guinea pig for the new standards, old standards. And I think there was some miscommunication, I know there was on my part when I originally put in for the variance. And I think another miscommunication was the number of lots that we're selling. It's one lot, one ten-acre plot to one individual, and this is to gain access to his lot, that's what it is. So it's not a, what I perceive as a subdivision with a whole bunch of homes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, okay. So that, and just a couple of things here, it gets into this, you know, the criteria reviewed. If I make that twenty-four foot wide, it's going to turn into steeper ditches and steeper banks. So as far as public safety right now, it's as wide or wider than the road coming up to it. And that southeast side of it, that's a pretty steep bank there right away. So to start digging into that, to make the road line up, if you got to go twenty-four feet, that's going to get pretty steep and it's going to cause more erosion. What's there right now, and I know some of you have been out there, I don't know if everybody's been out there. What's there right now, I've been there basically since the first of June, and there's virtually no erosion. There's no drainage issues, so it's kind of where it's at right now, so. Yeah. I don't know if you've got any other questions I can answer or not.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroix.
You know, Milton, I think you've gotten every commissioner out there, and I look, but in our agenda, what you have down is seventeen foot with six-inch gravel with, I can't really read what those pitches are supposed to be on the sides.
My artwork?
Yeah. But I, I agree.
It's supposed to be like ditches.
Yeah, see, I totally, I agree with Gary with the lower part, and I don't think we should go any lower. I didn't measure what it is down the lower. You think it's seventeen or eighteen?
I think it's seventeen.
It's grown over.
It's eighteen foot. We measured it in a couple of different spots. It is eighteen foot.
This is what I have down is eighteen foot, and I really have no problem moving forward and keeping it at eighteen, but quite frankly, I didn't see the base course. I know what you're talking about, about the runoff, that's not what it's all about. It's about having a good base and having those pitches. So in the future, because it didn't really have no pitches in some areas, so it's, the road still needs work as far as I'm concerned. You know, I understand you're a hard-working guy and you see things a little bit differently than the rest of us, because, but that land out there is going to be access to another property out there, at least a couple, so the people buying it, you know, should have a decent road when they get into it, you know, and I totally get that there's, I was on the planning commission when you come forward and talked about it, but that's the whole idea is to have at least a good start for either county or us. I'm, I wouldn't approve the eighteen, but you'd have to do some more, I think, grading work on the sides.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
So I've been out there a couple times, Milton, we agreed, this grade gets kind of a little bit angry, I'll be angry, but I've probably been out there four or five times. So number one, twice with Joe. So we measured, and you're right, it's about eighteen foot. It's, the grass has grown over it at the front part of it. The gravel's not gravel, it needs to have some binder in it, and we discussed that with Mitch. That's pretty much just rock, it doesn't have the binding for the gravel in it, so it needs to have down in there. The eighteen foot with the, with the ditches, I thought was pretty fair. This is only going to access one lot. He does have lots around that area besides this, because he has a hundred and twenty acres, but he can access them off Dawkins Road. So this, what he means by one lot, and I don't know if I asked him enough information, I'm just going to say, and I was listening to him talk to Joe to get that information, and Scott, my husband, went out there as well, because I'm like, you're a contractor. If I'm wrong, tell me if I'm wrong, because Mitch was, I'll just be up straight in disagreement with me on the eighteen foot, and he said, this looks good enough, Deb. And I said, no, actually, Scott's like, you need some binder in that, that's just rock. So if Mitch knew what he knew today, he'd probably have done that lot a lot different, and he sold that lot a lot different, but he learned something today from going through this process about roads and how to do this. But again, I think Joe was being more unfair with the eighteen foot, and with the twenty-four, doesn't make sense at this point, and then with the motion being a minimum maintenance road, because it is two to ten people in that motion with eighteen-foot road with sides, with drainage signs. So I think that's more than fair. I think Mitch can work with that, and then in the future, like I said, this is going to access this lot, and then he's going to be able to access, he's got, was it two or three other accesses on the other hundred and twenty acres?
Two off of forty-four, there's two existing approaches. You could get in there from Caput, right from Caput itself, and then up on Dawkins Road.
He's got four other approaches, so.
There's other access to that land.
When people said he's going to take it all the way down, he's not. He's going to use it for this lot. Like I said, he's, he learned something here, but he also, I believe if you're going to do something, you should do it right as well. So that's my opinion.
Mr. Chair. So Joe, if I wanted to go with eighteen, what would be my motion?
So I, I'm going to take a stab at this, but Megan needs to listen. So I think the motion needs to be a motion to allow the exception request to build this now to ordinance fourteen, build it to eighteen-foot wide with two-foot ditches with a four-to-one in slope and a three-to-one back slope with it, and then direct the highway department to bring back a resolution to designate the road as a minimum maintenance road. And then with that designation, the applicant would be, the applicant should pay for the minimum maintenance signs that need to go up on that road because they're the ones asking for it.
Okay.
That would be my motion.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Carrie, you okay?
Yep.
I'll re-listen to that.
Mitch, do you have something to say?
Getting a three to one back slope is something that's gonna be pretty tough. You know, where, where it falls off there, I mean, that's natural drainage to.
You know, and, and our ordinance is, you know, the back slope can vary, right?
If the, if the back slope can vary, we should be all right.
You know, the, the main thing we're really concerned about is, is the in slope, so it's a recoverable slope for a vehicle. If they're traveling at, you know, all of our gravel roads, that road will be a fifty mile an hour road, I know it's only a half mile long, but the speed limit on all of our gravel roads are, are fifty miles an hour, so.
Well, it's not even a half a mile, is it?
No.
I think it's, it's like two tenths or twenty-five, yeah, it's like quarter mile up to that intersection, so it'll be another, it'll be probably right at about.
Okay, so a, a question for you, Joe.
Yes, sir.
On a minimum maintenance road, do you have to post a, a speed zone?
You don't have to post a speed limit sign, you just have to post a sign stating that this road is a minimum maintenance road. So that way the public is notified if they're on it, right? They know that it's not a fully maintained road like any other road would be.
Quite frankly, I don't want something on there encouraging somebody thinking they can drive fifty on it.
I know, that's what I was thinking. Most, most people, it goes back to, most people will drive how they feel comfortable, so they don't feel comfortable going fifty, they're, they're not going to.
So, if, if this motion passes, can you get a copy of that and give it to him so that he knows it?
As far as?
What the motion was, eighteen feet, the slope, so he.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second with that?
Second.
I think, probably a second.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I missed that, okay. So is there any further public comment on this? Back to the commission, any further discussion?
If you like the further down the road, there's some good rattlesnakes over there. Um, well, there was a green one and a brown one. Mitch decided to kill the green one and not the big brown one I saw. I was walking Mitch's dog while Joe and him were talking, and I saw a rattlesnake. So he started coming, I was like, what, about a hundred yards down the road on the kind of grassy road? And there was a big old head of a rattlesnake sticking out of the grass, and it sounded like rabbits, so I looked. So then we went back, and, um, Joe ran over a snake, and those guys were like, Dad, that snake wasn't that big. It was a head of it about that big, it was green, I said, no, the one I saw, it had a brown head. Anyway, a lot of rattlesnakes out this year, so be careful on that road if you go on that road.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to adjourn from the Board of Adjustments.
Motion is second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda.
The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on uncontroversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion invoked by the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item C is road naming for H and H Land Company Number Two LLC, Brian Hammerbeck is the agent, to name a sixty-six foot wide private access easement and portions of a sixty-six foot wide section line road to Dancing Wolf Road, and Planning Commission recommended approval. Item D is road naming for H and H Land Company Number Two LLC, Brian Hammerbeck is the agent, to name a sixty-six foot wide access easement, Cisco Lane, and Planning Commission recommended approval. Item E is road naming for H and H Land Company Number Two LLC, Brian Hammerbeck, to name a sixty-six foot wide access easement to Sox Place, and Planning Commission recommended approval. Item F is road naming for H and H Land Company Number Two LLC for Brian Hammerbeck, to name a sixty-six foot wide access easement to Costner Court, and Planning Commission recommended approval. And finally, road naming for H and H Land Company Number Two LLC for Brian Hammerbeck, to name a sixty-six foot wide access easement, Standing Fist Road, and Planning Commission recommended approval.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any members of the public who wish to have any of these items removed, so we can have a discussion on them? Seeing none, Commissioner Adcock, were you on the planning commission when these came through?
Yes, sir.
So, n- any opposition at that level?
No, just some weird names. They have to pick names.
That's Brian's issue.
They have to pick names, so nobody else has the names, otherwise it will cause confusion. So he had to pick some, as you already know, when people pick crazy names, they have to pick them because the other people already had.
So you were, you were wearing one sock that day?
That's why I named, that's why I asked them if they were gonna name one of them one sock and two sock, but they decided not to.
Okay, uh, seeing no public comment, back to the commission, any further discretion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Brian, I think he used his last name and not any problems with that. Okay, next item, contested hearings, Brittany.
Item H is public hearing of ordinance amendment oh eight twenty-two dash zero one to add section three twenty-one hard rock mining to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Planning Commission recommended approval of this ordinance amendment, this has been continued from the July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two Board of Commissioners meeting. Um, staff would respectfully request that this actually be continued following, um, the public testimony. Uh, we received a ton of information over the weekend, and then we have a ton of public testimony today. So we would like to, um, take into consideration anything that the board, um, hears today and make suggested changes and direct staff to make those changes, moving forward to a continued day.
This is second reading or first, sir?
Second.
I believe this is the first.
First reading?
I don't think we've approved a first reading.
Okay, so it'd be.
So you're right.
So this will be first. So, but, but I agree, I think that we hear testimony today, we, I, I think there's a lot of things yet to be resolved with this. So I think there's gonna be recommendations that probably go back to planning of trying to figure out how to create, wording to meet as close as we can to both sides. I know that Commissioner Ross Connect still believes that there's a opportunity for everybody to sit down and try to work through it, so that we aren't back and forth here on a lot of future dates. So, um, I know that I've received considerable, uh, email, and I presume the other commissioners have too. I have a whole stack of people who wish to testify. We just left this open, we could be here until evening. And I know that people don't like to be limited to time on it, but I don't, I don't know if we really have a choice but to at least limit the time. So I'm gonna suggest that we limit the time to three minutes for the testimony. Like I say, we've got a lot of them, uh, including on Zoom. Does anybody have an objection to that? The three minutes?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LeCroy.
I don't have an objection with that, but I'm considering maybe some people in the audience might want to coincide together and give, maybe donate their time to one speaker, like three of them, give them to one. If that's the case, I guess I'd ask for a hand raised in the audience, if we do that, take a five minute break, let them recoup. And if they have one speaker that wants to speak for ten, twelve minutes, we could do that.
I don't have a problem with that.
No, it's a good idea.
Okay.
I'd, I guess I'd ask the audience.
Ask what?
Do you guys?
Audience are okay with that?
What am I just going fifteen minutes aside and be out of here?
Uh, because the problem is, I don't know whose side some of these people are, so, uh, you would all have to know who that is from that standpoint.
I guess that would be a suggestion that there are sides, and I think we're all here in support of this. As the issue with.
Come on up.
You said way too much.
I won't, I won't, I won't take this away from your time, I'll just, you have a suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Commissioners, and, uh, I appreciate the, the suggestion about timing. My concern with that is, A, that I don't believe that there are necessarily sides that can be delineated when we recognize that everyone here actually wants a hard rock mining ordinance, and we may have different ideas about what we want to see in it, but it, it does create some confusion there. The other issue that I have is that, you know, with, with designating sort of one person to take on the testimony of, excuse me, several, is that, um, that there hasn't been any preparation time provided for that, and so I, I have some concern about that, so, thank you.
Okay.
The reason I suggested that is because a lot of times there are groups of five or six that come that have the same.
They need to say.
Yeah. We've been through this a few times.
Yes, Mr. Mann.
Just a, just a suggestion.
All right, you gotta come forward, I gotta get you on the microphone.
Just a suggestion, i- if you're gonna carry this over, why don't we put together a team from each side to meet with the county? And, and work out our differences, so that maybe we can be, bring something back to you that's a little more meaningful. My concern is that, that, that this discussion could go on for hours.
All right, that's great, but we aren't gonna pick the teams, so I think that's up to you guys.
We can, you give us a number and we'll pick, if you want three, three from us, we'll, we'll name three. If they wanna name three, you wanna?
I'm gonna look at planning and see if, planning, if, if that's a acceptable way of doing it.
And we can meet privately.
Right.
And work out disagreements, maybe we won't work anything out, but at least in a couple of weeks, three weeks, we can bring this back to you with some more meaningful information.
I'm, I'm all in favor of that.
And Mr. Chair, what I would suggest is, we as a commission take another ten minute break while you guys talk together.
That's fine.
Sound okay?
See if that's amendable to everyone.
Is the rest of the audience? Go.
Lilius?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody, Dr. Lilius Jardine. At least half of the people that I know of who are gonna testify for the ordinance and for tightening it are now gone. So, um, I don't, there won't be as long of a testimony as you're thinking there will be. And the other thing is that some of us have to leave for another engagement pretty quickly. So it won't be as long as you think it would be, and I would suggest that people have waited this long, maybe let them go forward and talk. And, um, then if you want to do something else, thanks for that, after that would be the time to look at it.
Okay, so at the conclusion of that, are you opposed to what Mr. Mann just suggested of setting down with the, basically the differences of opinion on it at this point in time and try to?
Yeah, but I want to, also, second one Rebecca said, but there's not like two sides, there's a variety of opinions. And so how you would represent that variety of opinions by having, uh, two sides pick three people each, I don't know. That's my big question on that.
Okay.
Chairman.
I don't know that either, Commissioner Adcock?
We had a hard rock, or gravel, whatever you call it, um, committee, and, uh, they didn't have to do tons of changes that way. When you had people that were, um, on Lilius's side, whatever, with all different kinds of things, and then the mining side, and then just the common person that didn't know a lot about either of it. They made a huge sense of everybody putting their input because you had to live by it, that was the, the regular citizen. There was the people that, um, very passionate about water protection and some other stuff, and, and then there was the other side. And everybody in that meeting, I think, learned a lot from each other. So it got a little bit heated once in a while, but most of the time it worked, it was very good about getting the bottom line and learning about that a lot of this stuff, Lilius, is already through the state and federal. And that all we would have to do on some of this is add a, a little bit of verbiage to it, and some of it, we're not gonna agree no matter what, maybe not the buffer, a couple of things. But most of the stuff I'm seeing is through state and federal already, that you guys are asking for on, on the other side, and that, that these guys on the, on the mining side, um, just like the other people, they're gonna have to give on some of it. So, um, I believe on the, on the last ordinance for gravel, ask Brittany, I don't know if Holly was there, Travis, were you in that?
Gravel, yes.
It worked very well, and they only had a few changes, so I would, I would ask that that would be tried on this instead of several meetings where people feel like they've been outed. They can, and, and it can be published online where you can read and add more comments to it as well, so.
I don't understand exactly what you're proposing, I missed something at the beginning.
Having a committee.
Hmm?
Having a committee.
A committee?
That's going through this ordinance and looking at where the, where the things are that are major issues that were dis, a lot of people are disagreeing, and then that three forces of it's agreed on, and the other six issues need to be aired out. And where that needs to be aired out, and where those, uh, issues that I'm looking at, that I keep seeing over and over again, are, are, to me, things that both sides still want.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's my, my.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LeCroy.
I think I confused things, but I think I'd rather go back to the two minute, or three minute, uh, time and let everybody speak and get through it, because we're.
Anybody object to it?
Yes.
Mr. Chair. I don't object to, but I, I, I find the most effective results is when both sides get together. Instead of sending that to me and then me sending them, I get rebuttal, and I'm not the expert, and so one way or another, maybe not today, but both sides are gonna have to sit down, and our planning and zoning department's gonna have to be with them, and we're gonna have to have a solution, because we can't do this forever. But I think both sides, if somebody, uh, makes a statement, the other side has a chance to rebuttal and go back and forth and tell others that, okay, when you leave, everybody's in agreement, and we can move on.
Clarification, instead of both sides being all sides.
Well, when I, okay, all sides.
All sides, there you go.
Excuse me.
Okay, uh, we have, on the Zoom, we have Nancy Hilding, Nancy?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, um, so would somebody tell me when I have thirty seconds left? Um, okay, Nancy Hilding, President Perry Hills Audubon Society. We support sending this back to the planning commission. We believe the state's attorney, deputy state's attorney, um, when she says not more stringent than federal state law, I mean, than state law, is citing the wrong reference, and it should be forty-five dash six B dash four, which gives counties with zoning, uh, the ability to have ordinances for conditional mining permit. That cannot be in conflict with and not inconsistent with state law rule. Not inconsistent is a double negative, so that means consistent. Okay, so how do zoning, uh, concerns, which are delegated to the counties, uh, gonna be consistent with state law and rule? They're gonna be consistent because the state law gives the counties the zoning authority. Um, so we are requesting that, um, this ordinance clearly states that this is a conditional use, uh, permit application. On page ten dash J review, you refer to it as a CUP, but on the first page, which is applicability, um, you say you're gonna have an approved mining permit, allow, um, you're gonna allow it with an approved mining permit in agriculture, forest service, and industrial. And it's not really clear if that's a conditional use or not, um, but if it's a conditional use permit, I would like it to clearly say that. We, we want you to have considerations like how Lawrence County does in their zoning ordinance on mining, which is two dash twenty point zero zero eight. If you, we believe that if you do this, um, you may have better ability to withstand challenges in a court if such should happen, because zoning clearly belongs to you, and you don't just have to Xerox the, uh, state law and enforce the state law, because zoning belongs to you. Um, all right, so, um, we want, um, All right, so we want the socioeconomic study put back in. The state's attorney's office said it was in conflict or not consistent or something. 45-6B-33.1 has the socioeconomic and the roads.
30 seconds remaining.
The roads in state law is in that section. Okay, we want about the buffer zones, we're not happy they're not large enough, but we also, you're talking about general agriculture here. We want buffer zones for contained, confined animals such as in corrals, barns, and kennels. We want buffer zones for exterior use space like gazebos, courtyards, working space outside in gardens. And we agree with the mining people that you should have an informational meeting like how Lawrence County does.
Thank you, Nancy.
And we don't think mining claims should automatically be approved. That's on page one. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas, Thomas Strand. Oh, Thomas Strand. Carol Hacey.
She had to go.
Pardon?
She had to go.
Carol Merwin.
I just did my.
To who?
He left.
Okay. And Dr. Jardine left?
He had to go, yeah.
Bruce Ellison.
He also has to leave.
Deborah Kelly.
I don't know a lot about what has already, you know, the ordinance, if there's been something already recommended or drawn up. You know, I came here today because I was encouraged to by a friend that knows that I'm always concerned about the environment and want, and feel really strongly about our clean water. I live on Rapid Creek and just feel really, you know, strongly about polluting it and polluting our waterways. So I don't know a lot about it, but I am concerned about it, and I guess I would echo what this, the woman before me said. I don't think that the mining claims should just be automatically approved. I think that, you know, we only, our water's precious, and it's, I just hope that a lot of consideration is put into any kind of movement in that direction. We in South Dakota have seen a lot of companies come in. I grew up in Spearfish and, you know, take minerals and take resources and then, and then leave, and leave messes. So I would just ask that it really be given serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina Parkhurst.
Hi, I'm Gina Parkhurst. I live in Rapid City. I had to run out and come back because our segment's three hours after I expected it to be. I know it's not your fault, you had a lot to deal with, but I have a suggestion. Maybe we could set up another separate meeting next time for just this matter. It is important, the mining ordinance, which I support, I very much support this mining ordinance. It's important because it's going to deal with water quality at some point, and I'm someone who suffered from birth defects caused by toxic water at Camp Lejeune. How many people have seen the ads, right? You know, Camp Lejeune is in the news right now. So anyway, I know it's a different situation we're dealing with here, but it just shows how important water quality is, especially to the unborn. And speaking of water, what happened to the groundwater quality monitoring segment of the ordinance? It seems like it's been shrunk back to its original size or even smaller. And I believe Rick Bell, who's an engineer here, is gonna be speaking to that in more detail, but I urge you to add that groundwater monitoring section, the section that he sent to you. He's an engineer with over 40 years' experience, and he's seen this type of thing before. So again, I support the ordinance, and thank you all for working on it for so long.
Thank you. Carla Marshall.
I am, I live in Rapid City. I'm a member of the Shine River Suite Tribe. I'm not here for tribal consultation. I just want to urge you to listen to the people that are submitting, that have their expertise here, that can, you know, give you a guidance on this. I am in support of the ordinance, but it needs to be strengthened to protect our water. Water is the most valuable thing that we have, and you all know that. You look at around the United States, people are going, they're losing water fast. It's gonna be day zero pretty soon if we don't pay attention to what we're doing now. Also, we have to take a hard look at, you know, this being treaty territory as well. We have to protect what is left here and what is here. So with that, and I also agree that we probably should, if you could have a evening meeting for us to come and speak, there was a lot of people here that wanted to speak, but, you know, because of the previous item agendas that you had, and I know those are important, but if, you know, there was one special meeting on this in the evening, and that was under the planning. So if you could perhaps do that, that would, that would be great to accommodate some of the ones that want to come in to speak also. I will be submitting my comment in a written form as well. I did submit to the Planning Commission and hope that carries over, but I'll submit again. Got some new information that I would like to also include, so. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate your, your.
Carla, the point you make is, I think, is exactly what we're driving at. If we can, instead of having 80 different feelings of what needs to be done on it, if we can consolidate those down to what is the real issues that we have here and have the various groups meet together and try to come up with some conclusion to better advise us, rather than us trying to take 80 different comments of what needs to be done and trying to boil that down to what really has meaning and what doesn't. It's much easier if you all sit down first and come to some conclusions on it of what's acceptable and what's not.
Okay.
And I know that Planning Office deals with that, struggles with that also, a lot of conflicting type of ideas that they want to have done, and different, different parties want to have done, so.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't think having a special meeting is out of the realm. We certainly could do that, but at the same time, not to just hear 80 or 100 people, you know, testifying on what they think, you know, needs to be in it, but something that's concise that we can really work with. So, thank you.
Perhaps if we, you know, consider a date in the future, then we can get our, you know, people together, our groups together, and really sit down and hammer this out, and then sit down, you know, all come back together. That would be awesome. That would be great.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
So Carol, it's my understanding the three items that seem to be coming up the most would be social economics.
Yeah.
We need to address that more. Water quality.
Yeah.
And setbacks.
Mm-hmm.
Because the way I read it, the setback now is at 50 feet, and I think it originally was 500 feet, so. And then I guess then we have to look at what authority does the county have over some of these different items. But this is, this is what I see the largest concerns being.
One of my suggestions in the, with planning, my comment was to, to really take a hard look at some of these companies that are applying as well, because there's, some of these companies do have EPA violations. Know that for a fact. So I would take a hard look at them.
Okay.
You know, these are multi-billion dollar corporations, and we don't, let's not mess with this.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Monique Musou. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Musou.
So, sorry?
Sir, that's okay. Get that out of the way right away before my time starts. I'm Monique Musou, I'm here. Ogallala Lakota. Nice to meet you all. I'm here on behalf of Mother Earth, and I'm here with my wife celebrating our seven-year anniversary of being wedded here in Pennington County as a same-sex couple. So thank you, guys, and the county commissioners, and everybody that, we're actually celebrating our seven years married, but we've been together for 16-plus years. So I'm not gonna take up your time. With that, I want you guys to understand we are two-spirit people who stand up for earthly destruction, and I'm very, very much in support of you all with this ordinance going into place. But I'd also like you guys to consider, and like Carla said, and she said it in the beginning, was the treaty rights. You know, and nobody wants to talk about, oh, there comes that Indian. Well, here, here I am. Here's the big Indian standing in front of you, and I'm asking you to go over those treaty rights, treaty obligations, treaties set and forth that should be discussed at this planning, that need to be solidified in every document within the Black Hills. I don't know if any of the other tribal chairmans have been notified, but something like this and you're a county, but you're a county on top of our already seated treaty line, right? And that's never discussed, and that's never respected. And I'm coming to you in a very, very educated, I'm highly educated, but I'm coming to you in a human way, where you know that the brown-skinned people have always protected and watched over and replenished and rejuvenated every aspect of Mother Earth. We know that mining, any kind of mining, even open pits for gravel is not good for our earth. So I just want to reiterate that, that these types of things need to be in place, and some type of subcommittee with the tribes has to be within the commissioners of the county. Because we are very, very strongly against any mining company coming in and taking gold. Stop it. That's gotta stop once and for all, because the lady from, that just spoke, that Camp Lejeune affected her, that's happening already, and you know it's, it's true. Our water quality has diminished. I myself am an engineer. I myself have worked in water quality, and I don't, I really don't approve of anything not addressing monitoring and stringent discussions and strict rules surrounding keeping that water quality in check. And EPA, don't do that. EPA just says, oh, who's giving me more money? So I hope and pray that we can get a meeting later on. I thank you very much, but I'm gonna be a part of this planning with Black Hills Clean Water Alliance. I really think that they need to be an integral force on anything happening in the Black Hills. Thank you. Hope you're.
Karen Thompson.
Thank you, commissioners, for hearing us and for this time. My name is Karen Thompson. I'm a university educator, and I'm a fourth generation South Dakotan. My roots and my love for this place feel deep and abiding. And still, no matter how deep or how long my family's been here, I recognize that I'm a guest on these lands. So I stand here in support of Lakota people and their homelands and their sovereignty and their treaties. And their cultural and spiritual life ways that are in jeopardy constantly. I don't understand what allows us, those of us who are white settlers, to continue to reap the benefits of tourism, the recreation, the joy of being in the Black Hills. And yet, we allow these, these lives to be compromised and desecrated. And so I support this ordinance as a start, but I said it needs to go further and be strengthened. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gene Roach. Gene Roach, not here. Daryl Junies. Larry Mann.
Good morning, or good afternoon, I guess. It has been here a long time. Larry Mann, my, I'm here today as a vice president of the South Dakota Mineral Industries Association. As you know, Mr. Chairman, I've been around this business a long time. In fact, most of the ordinance, or most of the statutes that are on the books right now regarding, regarding mining are, are issues that I dealt with through the legislature over the course of the last 35 years. You know, it's, what's interesting to me is that we're, we've kind of set our hair on fire about having an ordinance in place regulate mining. But the interesting thing is, I am, and I'm very familiar with all of the mining companies of the Black Hills, I am not aware of any economic ore body that's been identified. And even if one were identified today, it would take at least 10 years for them to go ahead and delineate an ore body. And then you have to decide whether it's an economic ore body. What's an economic ore body today? And gold is probably 2 million ounces. That's a couple billion dollars. So the other thing is that, to my knowledge, I can't remember the last new ore body that was discovered in the Black Hills. Every mining operation that exists today in western South Dakota is on historic land. Everything on Terry Peak, Rochard was the old standby, Agnico Eagle was the old gulf edge. I mean, none of us knew. So where is the, where is the emergency? And I had to kind of laugh to myself that I think that this board will probably turn over two or three times before you ever see an application for a mining permit. So I don't know how deep into the weeds you want to go with this. I support, we are not opposed to having reasonable regulation, never have been. The one thing that I would suggest is that better communication with the state and federal agencies would probably do more for you than the ordinances. Because the Board of Minerals and Environment, DANR, the Water Management Board, all of these people listen to you because you are elected officials representing your constituents. And they do give deference to the importance that you find within the community. I mean, I would even think about the possibility of naming a mining permit liaison officer from the, from the county, because you don't currently have the kinds of resources that it would take. Who's gonna, who is gonna review and enforce water quality? A 200-page water quality study? Who is going to review a socioeconomic study that may be 500 pages? Who's gonna pay for it? How long's it gonna take to do? How much staff do you have to increase? How many FTEs? How much more of a budget? I mean, those things are there. We don't oppose the ordinance as it exists today. We're willing to talk about some, some changes that might be helpful. So with that, that's all I gotta say.
Appreciate it. Quinn, Quinn Neff.
Thanks, Chairman Drews, commissioners. I don't have too much today, just, I was glad to hear, well, number one, that everybody in this room agrees that we need an ordinance, so we're off to a good start there. Number two, Nancy brought up one of the requests I mentioned at the very first meeting about just holding an informational meeting as part of the application process, just to bring everybody into the meeting, share information, what's the project about. So a couple topics there that I think we agree on. Having said that, I know the socioeconomic studies come up, that's something Lawrence County requires. I don't think we have an issue including that in the ordinance, as long as it's reasonable to state law and kind of along what Lawrence County follows, but not. and kind of along with Lawrence County follows, but not too extensive that it's impossible to complete or for the county to review it. Second, on that, you know, we do have small operators in Pennington County that, you know, might have one aquarium that's doing decorative stone mining, something like that. And so I think an exemption out of the socioeconomic when you're just dealing with a very small-scale operator would be something good to add to that. And then I think, as Ron mentioned, the buffer zones. And just to clarify, right now, it's fifty feet from lot line if there's no habitable dwellings. If there is a habitable dwelling, then the buffer right now is three hundred feet. And there's a waiver process that I think is important because there is communication between companies and neighbors, and allowing that to play out before getting government involved, I think is important. And so that waiver's in there now. We support that. We support the three-hundred-foot buffer. And so I just wanted to clarify, you know, we do support the buffer as long as it's from habitable dwelling, not just the general buffer. Other than that, you know, more than willing to sit down, I think, as you guys mentioned, learning from each other will be important on this and I think it comes down to that buffer zone requirement and the socioeconomic study as far as I can kind of read through the comments.
Are you opposed to, on that buffer zone? If there's not a dwelling, are you opposed to the fifty-foot that's been suggested?
Well, if there's, no, we are not opposed to the fifty-foot buffer from a lot line if there's no dwellings. But we would be opposed to just a general five-hundred-foot buffer, no matter what. That's what we would be opposed to, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Oskar.
So in my dialogue yesterday via emails was Kathy Johnson, Rebecca Turk, Bruce Ellison, and Liz Jardis. So would you and your group be willing to sit down with the ones that I just mentioned?
Yeah.
And say, this is what we'd like, and then they can sit down and say, well, we don't like it, but try to come to an agreement between two groups?
Well, I think there's, the only issue I see is, I think, I just mentioned, you know, two points where we see issues or can make concessions on those things or whatever you want to call it. But I think there's other requests that I've read through the comments that we're going to need some guidance from you guys on where is the county going to draw the line on putting things into the ordinance? If you're going to talk about groundwater monitoring and tribal consultation, now you're getting into federal and state. Well, and I don't have a lot of input for you on that, you know, that's kind of your guys' department with the state's attorneys, so. So as far as we're sticking to socioeconomic, the buffer requirements, those are something we can work through, but if we get into those other things that are covered by state and federal law, you know, that's going to cause some problems, maybe. Would there be any commissioner, or would it be a planning and zoning?
Well, I think we should have, you know, I'm not saying, I say both sides, but, you know, all sides, whatever. And I think planning and zoning's got to be part of it because they're the ones that are writing the ordinance. And then I think one or two commissioners should also be involved so that they can report to the other commissioners what came out of the meeting.
And I wouldn't be opposed to being that commissioner.
Yeah, I just feel like there-
Because it's in my district, I'd like to be part of that, too.
I just feel like, you know, if we sit down and meet, it'd be important to have either a commissioner, planning, zoning there to-
But we've had other meetings like this in the conference room, planning and zoning. There's plenty of chairs to accommodate twelve people.
So we could look at three to five?
An agenda, just try to go through it and come out shaking hands.
Yeah, no, I agree, communication's key on this.
I'd encourage less than better, or more, because-
And that's fine, but I just know more than that.
Yeah, or you have like-
Right, but there's a lot of people out there that are really, really smart and they got some and so I think we need to tap into that quality of-
But you can have their input, and what you do is you put all the people's input, and you have their representatives, and they represent them, and then you put all that input together in a common bond kind of thing. And it usually, it works usually pretty good for a solution unless people are just wanting their way. I think what you find out the most, and maybe it's just me personally, is through the state and federal rules and regulations, that's what you find out. Whether it's planning or zoning, or even some of, Michelle, that was our lawyer then, was already regulated and intensely regulated that people didn't know about. In that room that actually did some of the mining stuff, even the guy that was into the smaller mining company, he didn't know some of that stuff. For me, as a commissioner, I didn't know hardly any of it that was known through the state, so it's very informational for the general public when you're talking about water quality and stuff like that. I don't think a lot of people know that EPA and Environmental Protection Agency and different people and well-monitoring, there's a whole thing, I was reading on well-monitoring, that the county wanted to do, that for well, for water quality, we could do well-monitoring. And I encourage you to read the whole packet that was given to us on well-monitoring. This whole thing through the state and the federal is already on well-monitoring. And if you want to copy it, you can through Pennington County, but a lot of the stuff you would be just reiterating what the state and federal does. But I don't think we all, unless you know that, unless you've been in mining, or unless you're maybe an engineer and had to work on it, you don't know all that stuff. And the general public doesn't know how much information is actually out there on this. It's the craziest thing until you get into it, that there is a lot of protections since the Clean Waters Act. When was that enacted, nineteen?
Seventy-two?
Seventy-two. Then other general areas in water quality should be regulated through that, not just mining. But there's other areas, I believe, should be regulated through it. We're fighting a mining company in South Dakota, we have like one. We have other areas in environmental protections through stormwater, septic, and fertilizers. They're the biggest polluters of water. Anyway, just encouraging people to look up on, if you're fighting water quality, there's a whole lot of water quality going on just besides mining in South Dakota.
Thank you, Quinn.
Thank you, Quinn.
Rick Bell? Another gentleman, I'd like probably to be a part of that conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, all the chairman and other commissioners. I threw away what I was going to come up here and say because we kind of morphed into a lot of different discussions. I guess, you know, this thing has kind of been mismanaged by planning from the get-go. We've been into this like three years. There was originally a decision not to form a committee like what you're talking about and let planning figure out how this is going to be done. So that didn't happen. Now you're saying we're going to go back, and without some guidance from the commission, you know, can you have more stringent requirements or not? I mean, you got to get some, you know, some information into here. And then to respond to Commissioner Ross, Ron, Ross Koenig, briefly, I think you mentioned three big items, and I didn't hear Mr. Quinn talk about the the groundwater monitoring, although Commissioner Haddock did mention it a little bit. And, you know, what I'd like to say is I'm strongly in favor of having some additional groundwater monitoring requirements at the get-go. And I've talked to some mining people who have said, if we do the proper baseline study before a large-scale mining operation begins, it can actually protect us. In other words, if there's some naturally occurring heavy metal, arsenic, or lead, or whatever that exists on that site, it's better for the mining company to know that before they ever start their operation there. So it would behoove you to go beyond some of these federal and state requirements because they monitor, they monitor after there's a problem. And so what I'm suggesting is there is a way to do this at the get-go to really, you know, and within your ordinance specify the depth and the geographic location of those monitoring wells so you can triangulate and get the proper groundwater flow directions before any mining actually begins. So those are some of my comments. I'm willing to work with folks. And the other thing, just briefly to say, because I know Dr. Jardine had to leave, and I would like to say, I think there is some urgency to this. As opposed to what Mr. Mann said, you know, it takes ten years, whatever. There are mining companies, in particular, some lithium mining in the area, and I know Dr. Jardine, in her written testimony to you, had mentioned that that should be covered in this mining ordinance. And there's some stuff that might get started sooner than you think if we don't have some of these protections in place. So, you know, we've been at this for two and a half, three years. I don't know how long it's been since this thing has started. So I, you know, I would be willing to meet with folks, but we have to have some guidance from the commission on where the boundary lines are. If you're saying we can't, we can't do things more stringent, then, you know, that's not going to help us get this resolved, so.
Chairman?
Thank you. I'll stand by for questions. Thank you.
Mr. Bell, can I ask you something? So do you, you believe in basically groundwater protection?
Correct.
So do you monitor in stormwater protection? Do you monitor in septic areas? Do you believe in buffer zones with development that are next to creeks, lakes? I mean, why I'm saying that is, so we have contaminants from mining, and I keep hearing, this is why I'm saying this, because we keep talking about groundwater and mining, but we have one mining company in South Dakota. But we have all kinds of contaminants in our water from septic and storm sewer that have been over and over and over reoccurring and have done worse to our groundwater, worse things to our groundwater than a mining company has over the years, and over and over again. Since I've been at the city, they've done it over and over again where their contaminants have done some major issues as well. So do you guys just fight mining contaminants of groundwater? Or do you fight groundwater protection? And you go around and, and when the city or the different areas in South Dakota contaminate through stormwater or other ones, do you monitor it? Do you have them have monitoring wells? Do you have them do the same thing as you would a mining company? Just asking.
With all due respect, Commissioner, you're mixing apples and oranges. We're talking about a mining ordinance right now today, so.
Yes.
They have historically, not only in South Dakota, you look at the Gilt Edge mine.
Right.
They have severe, they've spent one hundred and twenty million dollars. They will never be done cleaning up that. So it is a much more acute and chronic problem for us to have that kind of situation, and we want to prevent that from happening.
So that's different than stormwater protection and, and basically septic protection and basically construction and those kinds of things, and destruction from our lakes and streams from reoccurring of people and what they're naturally doing to our lakes and streams compared to mining. So we should stringent mining and not those other areas that are reoccurring and costing us just as much money in the long run as one mine. If I'm correct.
They're all problems, okay?
But we don't make-
We're not talking about that right today. We're talking about mining.
I keep hearing water, why I'm saying this is you keep talking about water protection, and if I'm going to do it to a mining company, which I'm totally into, if we have to do rules and regulations by federal and state law for mining companies and water protection that you all want, I stayed up for two hours reading on water protection. And what I saw is not so much of a mining, if you guys read up on this, it was storm sewer. It was stormwater protections that were causing issues. It was septic areas that have contaminated even in our Hill City area, in our lakes, that cost us for cleanup. That's Brittany. Lot of money. So if we're going to be stringent on water quality, we shouldn't just, if I was fighting, I guess if I was your company and you're protect the water, I wouldn't just talk about the mining companies. If you're going to fight mining and water quality and environmental issues, please bring it forward because I want to fight, make sure that we are doing our septic, I'm into infrastructure. Our septic's and our stormwater, we're putting city development, we just had this. City development, putting the same toxins that you're talking about from mining into our drainage areas. So I guess, let's put it all together. We're not talking about just mining, if we're talking about environmental issues and things that you guys want to push forward on because we have only one mining company at this point, but we have several storm sewers and septic's that are causing us major issues in Pennington County.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Oskar.
If you don't mind, Mr. Bell? And I believe there's another, at least one other person in this room that I think. Were y'all involved with the base water contamination? Have y'all contributed to any of that as well?
Mr. Chair, I have offered to consult with that. I've been on some issues overseeing that. I have some experience with PFASs in other states. And it's another big problem. So, you know, we don't want to have another big environmental problem that exists from that kind of an operation here, so.
I think that's what Commissioner Haddock was alluding to, is are you just against mining and the water pollution from mining, or are there other things that you're involved with? And that's why I pointed that out. I know your name has been on some of the stuff that I've worked with from the base contamination. I know I consulted with Rebecca Turk early on. I don't know how many others are in here that have their names on that, but I know many of the names that I've seen are involved or at least contributing to that particular, not only the Ellsworth Air Force PFOS PFOA, but the previous, I don't remember what the chemical is that originally contaminated the north, the north water wells, but they've been involved from back even then, so. I do believe, I know that some people are involved with, have been involved with a lot of different water issues. Some are just necessarily against, or against the mining, so.
Chair. So it, there are many, many, you know, environmental problems. We are trying to focus on this particular one because we have an opportunity to do something with a significant ordinance that's going to address it. But I'd like to get into a lot of those other issues, Commissioner Haddock, that you're talking about with regard to stormwater. We would like to see all of those problems addressed, but, you know, it takes a lot of time and effort, and so we're attacking things one at a time.
Well, and I appreciate that, Mr. Bell, but we have people from the city personally attacking people on a mining company contaminant when the very landfill that the city, she is involved in is contaminating water quality. So that kind of dumbfounds me, that you're fighting for water quality and water conditions and making sure whatever F3 is. I'm sorry, I didn't look up F3. It's a mining company, as much as everybody thinks of for mining, but then in the next sentence, saying that anybody for that is obviously with them. Well, I don't know who they are, and I'm not for mining, I'm about doing the right thing, but you can't, that's why I'm trying to tell you. You can't talk about water quality and talk about mining in the next sentence. Your own landfill has contaminated water quality through stormwater. So, and D A N R fined them for it, so. That's why I'm bringing them together. Where are we at here? Are we just going to fight mining? Are we into water quality? Because the most people that I had come up today, we're not really saying, I hate mining, I want a mining ordinance, but I want the mining, if they're going to mining, I want that water quality to be good because if they're going to mine in the Black Hills, that water quality, when they're done, better be cleaned because I have to live by them if that's what you guys are doing for this ordinance. That environment better be returned back where it should be. And I agree with them full-heartedly. So I'm with you on that, Mr. Bell.
Thank you. We do have your-
We do have your information.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca Turk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Rebecca Turk, Dark Canyon, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I'm actually, other than to address one small thing, which is that in terms of water quality and water, you know, quarter, water quality monitoring wells, that some counties in South Dakota have required additional groundwater monitoring around animal confinements, particularly in sensitive areas. So, I did want to point that out, that, that that's something that other counties have done for various projects. But actually, I, I want to focus specifically on just a couple of different points, which are, I would like to make sure, since I didn't mention this in my written comments, that we clarify in the ordinance that exploration can only occur in those zoning districts where mining is a conditional use. That's what Lawrence County does in their ordinance, and I think that's a good policy. If, if we don't want mining in a place, we shouldn't be encouraging exploration in that place. So, the other thing is, I wanted to suggest that the county look at haul route agreements very seriously. And even considering with exploration projects, which I know by state law, we cannot have a permitting or bonding process for. But particularly when those exploration projects are hauling water, heavy equipment, potentially, you know, damaging county roads and bridges, that we look at the potential for instituting a haul route agreement for, for exploration as well as for mining. So, thank you, that's all I have. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good point.
That's the last speaker request form that I have. Is there anybody else here that wanted to speak?
Chairman, could I ask Larry a question?
Commissioner Hancock.
Larry, could I ask you a question? I didn't think about this. Is most of the mining operations in Forest Service? Because I remember when we were looking at the exploration areas and stuff, they kept saying we couldn't do anything, if I'm correct, like you've been here long enough. Because they were in Black Hills forest areas. Basically, we didn't have jurisdiction.
National forests.
No, most, most mining that occurs today is on private land. Or land that was at one time a patented claim. The patenting of claims has been suspended since 1996.
Okay.
Which means that you only have unpatented claims now that you can use. So, it, and it's historic. I mean, the old Bald Mountain Mine is, was at Terry Peak. The Giltege Mine was, the Giltege Mine sat there for 80 years before the company came in and tried to recover gold from it. They did a lot of remediation and reclamation along that creek. It's the same thing, the old standby mine, if you, if you remember the picture of Falling Giant, that's the old standby mine.
But the ones that have been in here lately, they've been more in the national forest?
Lately, we haven't, we haven't issued a mining permit in 25 years, except for expansions or amendments to existing permits. There hadn't been a new, there hadn't been a large-scale mining permit issued in 20 years, over 20.
And how many large-scale mining operations for minerals do we have?
What? That, well.
That's the wharf?
Hard rock mineral is, is core wharf.
This wharf?
Yep. Now, there, there were other mines up there that are getting some bond and, and a couple of the other mines that were up there are getting a look at, at whether or not there's any potential up there. But that's all historic stuff. That's been there for 125 years.
So, how many, so?
Home stake was there 126 years.
So, how many, we talk about water quality and contaminants. How many mines, you talked about contaminants, and people keep talking about how it's, the mines have contaminated. In South Dakota, how many mines have contaminated water quality?
That's a really, that's a really good question. And I mean, I, I know that you don't believe that, that the Board of Minerals and Environment has ignored water quality. I mean, it's, it's in the requirements for permit application. It's extensive. Read through the, read through the statute, then read through the administrative rules for what has to be in a permit with regard to water management and water quality. It's not ignored. The other thing that I will absolutely stand by 100%, I'm aware of no mining company that has ever had a negative impact on drinking water.
So, how about, how about uranium mining? You talked about that, but if they, okay, so uranium is already up there, but if they dig it up in higher qualities, when they're talking about uranium mining, we had said something about it's like putting sugar in the water and then, once they mix it up and then it settles down, or something like that, okay? But then after thought, that's how I think, then what if you dig it in bigger quantities and then, then it's going down the stream? Didn't it contaminate the, the river that way?
None of us being dug. There's not a, not a shovel full of dirt that's turned in a incitium mine, uranium mine. I'll give you a Reader's Digest version.
Okay.
What you do is you, you put in injection wells. And those wells are run under pressure, and then there's an extraction well in the middle. So, think of the four corners. You put water in and you pull water out. So, if the pressure is, is at the, the extraction well, the water comes through the well, all right? So, it's not going out anywhere. We're talking about an aquifer that is like concrete. Movement in that aquifer is like seven inches a year. And now, you put it under pressure, you pump it to the surface, and you run it through what is literally a commercial water softener, just like the one you have in your house. It's got beads, U308 and other metals attached to the beads. You salt to remove it from the beads, you reuse the beads, and you recycle. So, they're saying all of this water that gets used, there are two kinds of, two different kinds of water. You know, there's, there's consumptive, the non-consumptive uses of water. Consumptive uses of water is the water that we use to shower and bathe and everything else. Non-consumptive uses can be hydropower, it can be recycled water. Everything at, at, at an incitium uranium mine is recycled. So, if you're talking about the amount of water that runs through the system, it's a lot of water. But if you water, talk about the water that's actually consumed, it's very small. To me, it's just, it's been 17 years, but in my own personal opinion, the Pirate Tech project is one of the most benign mining projects I've ever witnessed. There's been one running down in Nebraska for 25 years. Most people don't even know it's there.
I appreciate you.
You can graze on it, you can raise crops on it. Nobody knows it's there.
Thank you for answering my questions, Larry.
But, but the, but the, the water quality, the water management, the water quality management, all of that stuff has to be pre-approved before a mining application is even accepted. So, the idea that somehow we need to be more stringent than the state is, to me, just impractical.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry. Any comments? Well, I think, I think we came to a determination that further work needs to be done. This information will be passed back to the applying department to continue to work on the hard rock mining ordinance. And I don't know if there was anything new that came out of this today. Brittany, did you pick up on anything new or different from the testimony today?
I took quite a few notes. Just like, some of the biggest ones is, you know, baseline monitoring. So, I think Megan and I need to take a look at whether we can do that, and if we do, what that looks like. Including the socioeconomic study, it being reasonable, maybe exempting small scale, the buffer zones, having waiver processes, the haul road agreements. I mean, let's see, so there's quite a few things, I think, that we can look at, potentially bringing something back to the commission.
Nice, good notes.
So, the comments on the buffer zones, was there anything really different than what's currently written in there?
No, I think the 50 feet, you know, I think that there were some questions. I think Quinn brought up having a waiver process. So, if that's too restrictive, having the ability to come forward and ask to increase or decrease those.
Well, I think it's, you know, on the buffer zone, I think it's, I don't think that you can be firm of saying, "This is what it's going to be." It's got to have conditions that go along with it. Dwelling is different than having nothing there. Some of these mining properties are 600 feet, is that what we talked about earlier? 600 feet wide, maybe?
Yeah, mining claims, I think, are 660. So, if you do 300 feet, you have 60 feet.
So, you can't have.
Yeah. So, I mean, it just makes it impractical as far as, I mean, you're just eliminating the use of some properties when you do that, so.
It's called a taking, is what we do, which is illegal.
Yeah, it really is. Okay?
And I would encourage anyone to email that plz@penco.org and maybe get on a, like a group emails. So, if there are updates and suggestions, that would be a good way to do that and keep everyone in the loop. So, it's plz@penco.org. And then I can get like a group email of everyone that wants to be on it.
And you're going to work with Travis and Roskodick to form your committee?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskodick.
So, I'll reach out to the individuals that emailed me this weekend and see if they'd like to be part of this dialogue. And then I'll, if you can keep me posted on what you get from the web and, and like Deb said, keep it probably smaller than, smaller groups where they can represent others and try to come up with a solution.
Probably three on each side.
Right.
Ron, and then you two, and then Brittany.
Me and Travis, and then.
Yep. That way they have good conversation, but they have enough representation where they feel represented.
Right.
So, my suggestion today would be is that the motion would be that we continue this indefinitely.
Hold on a second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment on that? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
Relative to a lot of the comments and emails I got yesterday, I, you know, you got mining, you got the Black Hills, a million acres, but the concern that a lot of the folks that respond to me is Silver City and the headwaters of Pactola, which eventually feed Rapid City's water source in the airbase. So, just wanted to point that out.
Well, I think that was part of what Deb's question was, is that how much private property do we actually have around that area? Or is that on Forest Service land where exploration is taking place? Quinn or Larry, can you answer that? Is there, is there, is the exploration taking place on Forest Service property?
Both.
Okay?
The F3 plan of operation that is in the period, this period now, where there's a 90-day period to respond to objections, and I think that's going to be extended by another 30 days, so you won't have a decision probably till the end of the year. That's on, on federal land.
Yeah.
And that's why we did the EA, and the Forest Service is the ultimate, makes the ultimate determination as to whether or not they approve of our plan of operation or not.
And what's F3?
F3 is the exploration company with Jenny Goldsch.
What's it stand for? What does F3 sta, does it stand for something?
That's a good question. I didn't know either. F3 is a geological term that has to do with where the geology kind of overlaps each other in different places. And when it overlaps three times, they call it a F3.
Okay, thank you.
And so, it's a geological term.
I kept hearing F3, and I don't know what F3 was, so.
You have more history?
But with regard to, Commissioner Roskodick, you know, F3 isn't taking any, any water out of Rapid Creek, and it won't be discharging any water to Rapid Creek. All of that water's going to be recycled. Anything that's, it, it just goes through a reservoir rather than into a sump, which is typically the way, you know that. So, what happens is that that water, whatever's left over, is taken to a water treatment plant. So, there isn't going to be a discharge of anything to, to the environment. Nothing taken out of the creek, nothing put in the creek.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskodick.
So, Larry, this question's for you. All they're doing is they're doing some exploratory drilling.
Pardon me?
I said F3. All they're doing is they're just doing exploratories.
Exploration, correct.
And in the event, they find something significant, you're 2 million or 2 billion, and that could be 20 years, 30 years now. But if they do, then what? That's where the, that's where the big boys come in.
That's a really good question.
That's what the folks around Silver City are concerned about.
If you look at statistics, 3% to 5% of exploration projects turn up anything. 3% to 5%. You'd be better going to Deadwood, I think, and chucking your money in there. But there is a huge, there is a huge exploration interest across the globe. I mean, if you, you see explorations taking place everywhere. A lot of that has to do with lithium, quite frankly, and especially in Africa and South America. But what happens is that, and I know that people find it hard to believe, but the, the two guys, Brian and Rob, that are the principals of F3 are geologists. They've been coming here for 10 years. They started coming here with one of their professors when they went to school in Minnesota. And they've been looking at how the geology is different here than it is elsewhere. So, even if they drill for, well, this drilling project has to be complete within one year. It only covers five acres, it has to be complete in a year. But even then, the data that they get from that will give them an indication as to whether there's something to further investigate. At that point, frankly, it becomes as much a scholastic effort as it does anything else. It's learning about geology, and where that geology exists, may exist, maybe it exists in Wyoming. But if they hit something, it would take eight to 10 years to delineate what's there. Because understand, we can't see it. The only thing we can is, is pull up the core drills and take a look at that and see if we can figure out what's going on, assay that rock. So, how big is it? How wide is it? How deep is it? What, where's the plunge? How far does that plunge extend? I mean, nobody knew that about Home Stake. It's taken years and years and years to fully define the Home Stake ore body. And drilling at Home Stake underground went on every day, every single day, they were doing core drilling, thousands and thousands and thousands of feet a year to further define, even after 125 years. We were drilling to further define the ore body. So, what's the likelihood? It's pretty slim. If they find something, if they found something and found that there were 2 million ounces of gold, it would be a 2 or 3 billion dollar project that would take at least another 10 years to permit. And so, I can't predict the future as to whether they would ever be approved or not. But the other thing I'll tell you is that everything that F3's looking for, they're looking for at depth. It's not, they're not interested in, in a discovery of surface ore. And I don't think they'd be interested in mining a surface ore body. So, everything they're looking at would be something at depth. And, and so, your guess is as good as mine. But exploration is what it is. And you may be better going up and grabbing a pair of dice than Deadwood, but that's what they do.
Thank you, Larry. Next item is item 26, items from the chair and commission members. I think we roll the items in the committee reports together, start with Commissioner
I was like.
I was going to say Travis, and then I changed it.
From the combining them, you know, I kind of had a pretty busy couple of weeks, so I didn't make the community health center board, so I'll let Lloyd talk about that one. The healthcare trust board, board meeting, I know we talked about, one of the biggest topics that I was there mostly for was the, the benefits we're reviewing, the benefit plan for the next coming year to see what's the most appropriate for the county. And we were just discussing costs, there's going to be more discussion on that one. So, nothing to, to bring back right away, but we had a good presentation and visited on those. And the LEPC. And the LEPC meeting. Ultimately, we just got some updates from individuals of their committees. Nothing was a major update, except that they talked about their emergency plan being approved. And outside of that, nothing else. As far as what I've done during the time prior to that, I was looking through my calendar. I've got a lot of stuff that I was doing, a lot of it was, went out to visit Milt's land with his, his roads. You know, we already talked about that today. And some other stuff within the, you know, individuals in our, in my district. But outside of that, some of it was road issue stuff after the rains and stuff of that nature, but nothing major outside of that.
Very good. Commissioner Lecore.
Well, Community Health Board, that's pretty much usual business. You know, we talked about some of the doctors coming in and advertising and trying to get some more PAs in. Talked about the demo, went over the budgets a little bit, what numbers are people coming in. So it was pretty, pretty general. Building Committee meeting, that was two and a half hours, probably wasn't it? Ron, somewhere's along those. And through that meeting, as I said, Deb, the 20th, they plan on bringing forward the need study, so that it's out there. But we've encouraged notes taken and sent to commissioners of the Building Committee so you see what's going on, plus we encouraged them to reach out because something new came up in our last meeting that we felt you needed to know too. And so they were supposed to reach out for, to you guys for that, so it doesn't just come up as a surprise. But they do on the 20th, I think it's the 20th of the plan, and doing the presentation, so.
Well, hopefully, I didn't mean that you weren't giving us the information on it. Hopefully, I didn't mean to say it like that. I just, I couldn't tell all the information to the public, so.
No.
It wasn't that you weren't giving the information, Lloyd, I apologize, because that wasn't my intent, if that's what it sounded like. Because you have, and Kevin Burton, meeting with him, have gave more than enough information on everything you needed. I just, what I meant was all the pieces coming together with what we're doing today and stuff, it was kind of.
Yeah, the only reason I brought it up with you is because the audience was probably getting confused and I, and that.
I do that.
That needs assessment, that needs assessment deal. It's pretty important, but we've been going through it and it hasn't really been presented to the commission yet. But we've been trying to keep you updated.
But nothing, nothing hidden, or that I feel that you haven't given information on. So, so hopefully you didn't take it that way, it's just.
No.
Just the pieces and parts that were added with the, with the employee stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so now we're good on that. Another one I went to was the immersion in place from the Human Relations Commission, SMOA. That was a tour of REI, which was amazing. REI is the Real American Initiatives out here. The work that he's doing is just unbelievable and how far they're coming in there. He doesn't want to retire yet because now he's planning on making the school into a full circle. It's only like a half a circle now for the daycare for the youth, but his plans are, is when you do these buildings is, is a full circle. So he is looking into that before he retires, Mr. Lawn Fox, so. But they really do some great work out there. It's really amazing how many employees they have. We walked in on their, their training meeting. And they've probably got 90 employees that run that whole thing, because they've got one out on Crazy Horse Street too, as long, as long as South Valley Drive. But we toured that and we toured, we split the group up and one group went to Indian. And we got to hear the presentation from, her maiden name was Lone Hill. But, yes, Mary, so we, Mary gave a presentation on them, Immersion, or I believe it's called Immersion School, they plan on building. Indian has purchased the property, if anybody knows, from the Dollar General on Haynes to Country Road. And the plan is, just like it's Thunder Valley, part of it's supposed to be commercial, first part commercial, and then they wanted to do an immersion school for children, starting from kindergarten up, you know, that they teach Lakota language and, and moving on up, so. They plan on putting a temporary, temporary school in by the end of this year over in that area to start with. Mary Bowman. Yeah, so that's how that's going to start, and then the school, I mean, the design, they showed us the designs of what the school is going to look like and so forth. And I talked to another person while I was out of town who called me that he is going to be an acre business out there to start out with that, that we've talked about. So it's going to be a pretty big deal. You know, I, I think in the next five years, you're going to see some growth on the north side of town going towards Country Road. So from the plans, it looks pretty well planned out. But that was part of that. Another group went up to, I can't remember, Red, or went up to the church on Animalosa, the one with the mural on it from the pastor, and they toured that one. And from there, we went back to REI. We went out to Lakota Homes, toured Lakota Homes, and, and we had a presentation at REI out there on how Lakota Homes became to be. And we're, and the people that we had in our group is, are, we had about 30 people who's community leaders of Rapid City. All wanting to learn what this is, this immersion in place. So the speakers there were me and Amy Sazoo and Jess. I can't remember Jess's last name, no, it's City Attorney. But that was a good discussion, and so it was a pretty good turnout. We have another meeting Thursday with that whole group. It's going to be a debriefing of what they've learned, what they expect, of maybe what we can do better. That's going to be a luncheon on Thursday, so that's one of the things that we're working on. So with that, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. I'll do last, so Commissioner Roskinic.
8/19/22, I attended the Senior Companions Luncheon. I did that last year, and they, their membership was down quite a bit because they're dealing with seniors and people, seniors helping seniors, and COVID really had an impact on the numbers. But I think there was 22 there that were recognized. And some of them had been doing this for 11 years, so. It was, I'm glad that we could have some reputation, representation from the county that, to go to that, to thank those folks for the stuff that they do. Later that day, I went to the Central States Fair ribbon cutting, and I'll let Gary expand on that. 8/26/22, I met with, I was invited to go to Custer. We met in the Custer County Commission Office with Jeff Tomac, the supervisor of Black Hills National Forest and the three district rangers Mystic, Hills Canyon, and Northern Hills. Expressing our concern about the quality of assessments and, and the lack of quality, you might say, and requesting a little more time to, to have input. So I think Jess basically agreed to push it out until around the first of the year. And then those assessments should be pretty much reviewed, public comment and comment from the, from me and Scott representing Pennington County. Scott asked me the day if we could possibly have a follow-up meeting in Hill City. So we're going to be working with Brett in Hill City as their administrator, to get that meeting lined up, and I'll keep you posted after that.
So that was you and Scott that did?
What's that?
You and Scott in Custer, okay.
And then that'll be at Rapid City. Lloyd was at that, and Gary was at that, so I'm going to let Gary expand on that because, but that was the regional core. I'm not really sure what infrastructure study, but I'll let Gary expand on that one. Building Committee, Lloyd pretty much covered that, and we'll probably have more discussion on that later. An executive session. Pennington County Housing Redevelopment, I did not make that due to being under the weather. Last week, Joe and I and Sean met with the Hill City ambulance at the Pennington County Yard. Because Joe, you know, if we do the, when we do the South Rochester Road, we're going to need another piece of equipment. There just isn't enough room in that yard anymore to house what equipment we have. And so I met with Jim Nyman and his daughter and son, Marcus and Sonia. And I told them that we had some interest in some of their property at the former Rushmore Forest Products, and that we're working with the Hill City ambulance, see if we can get them. And we'd have to do something that would be equitable for everybody. But we just started that dialogue. There's an agreement between the county and the state relative to that yard and some conditions in the, in that agreement. So we're waiting to get some response back from Rich, Zach, and Custer. But one way or another, we're going to need, maybe use the same acreage, but we're going to need more building area if we're going to keep our equipment inside. So that's pretty much it for me.
Okay, Commissioner Edgott.
Planning Commission this last time didn't have a lot on, as you saw, I think it was the first meeting I went to in a long time, as you see from all the renaming. County Housing, still looking for a consultant for repositioning. The one guy had retired, could have worked with us for a couple of months, then retired. So that's the guy that we wanted. So we talked about that again, so we're trying to get a different one still. And then we talked about doing not just one chairlift. Chairlift, sorry, Ms. Joan, I do that a lot, don't I? We're getting two chairlifts since it was such a good idea, because we're waiting for a, parts for our elevator, of course. That is a great big deal. You don't think, like I said, you don't really think about it until you're out. And then those elevators are huge, so. Central States Fair, we went to a couple of events, they were huge. I let people use my passes that had never went to the Central States Fair. Joe Gutierrez was one of them, and then a veteran. His wife, he went to one of them too, so pretty crazy. I always thought everybody went to the fair at least once or twice, but you'd be surprised, because every year I find people that haven't been, so I give them my passes to use. And they get pretty excited and then they start going. I think Darren Har and the Har family, they were ones back when I first started, they had passes to mine. And their whole family goes to almost every event. I know Jim Har does, and Darren has been, I think, out of town and stuff a lot of times. But Jim Har, you see him and his family every time, they go, guys go to every event, and they go pretty much. So it's pretty cool what you can get started, and people don't understand how much, how many things there is at the fair for their kids and themselves, so. John and those guys did a great, great job, and unfortunately, the sad part is the shootings and the things that were happening there and Sheriff's Department and the people that work there did a good job at trying to maintain that as best they could, so. Pretty sad, but that was pretty stressful for the employees there, unfortunately, so, anyway.
Okay, a couple of things that I have, Ron alluded to this. We did have a regional core infrastructure study discussion. This was called for by the state, DANR. So Hunter Roberts attended along with a number of other individuals from DANR. And the Ellsworth Authority is the one that put together the RFP to start looking at the infrastructure needs for the area. And this area goes a little bit beyond Pennington County, it goes north into Meade County. And at this meeting, part of the discussion was to actually take it a little further north yet and include Elk Creek Road area into it. So it doesn't go, it goes a ways east, but it doesn't go as far as New Underwood. And then obviously, I mean, Black Clark is obviously included in it because of the water that's taken from that, that particular area. And doesn't go much further west in Pennington County, just because that's not where anybody's anticipating much more development is going to happen. But it was, I, I think they had most of the stakeholders in attendance, which, which includes, I suppose we had 30 people, 35 people maybe, in attendance for those discussions, including our planning department was there also. And so just changing the boundaries a little bit is going to require, respect is the one that's actually at the contract and doing the work. And it's going to take up a little bit of reengineering on the plan at this point in time, since we, the suggestion was made to expand the territory slightly. So not anticipating anything real quick turnaround, probably minimum of 12 months before we really got something going there, maybe a little bit longer than that. But in the meantime, they'll have a number of stakeholder meetings to keep everybody abreast as to, as to what's taking place. Part of this includes the regionalization of, of water systems, et cetera. Infrastructure is a key in the whole thing. So I think it's going to be of, of big value when it's completed. And I think everybody has basically bought into it, you know, that, that needs to at this point in time to be a part of it, and are allocating resources to it. The state has, is the one that's, or they originally suggested Ellsworth Development Authority be the one. They accepted the challenge, they're the ones that are contracting with respect on that. So then Central States Fair, I wasn't here for most of that, I was gone. But when I got back, we did go out there and spend a couple of evenings working along with other board members on it. All the reports were very positive. I was there two nights when it rained, didn't hear anybody complaining about the rain. Heard people complaining about the mud.
That's some deep mud.
So everybody wanted a little bit of rain, so maybe came in sheets instead of a nice rain at times. But yeah, I think everybody was pretty happy with the outcome of that. And then I also briefly attended the Box Elder Transformation Exposition, which I thought was really well done. It was, it was held out in Box Elder at the Watiki Complex. It's the name of the motel that it was held in.
The one on the other side of the Marriott, the one that they're putting the conference center on the side of, the.
Fairfield, is it?
No.
No, I want to call it, I want to say the Marriott, but that's not it, it's a.
Well, it's one of those in that complex, anyway. And it was really a nice setup, because they had basically almost every contractor that's doing something at the present time, they were set up with a display of what they were working on, what they were doing. And you could visit with each and every one of those as to how far their plans went, what they was anticipating and so forth. So whether it was housing or infrastructure or other buildings that was included in it, it was just a very strong informational type meeting. And I would hope they are able to continue that in the future as their growth takes, takes place. It, it was well done, in my opinion. So that's about all I have.
Can I, can I add on that, Gary, with that Box Elder?
Yep.
If you guys haven't yet, take a drive out there and see what, not only the, the complex where they're starting to do the convention, convention center finally, but we did that TIF out there and across the highway, the industrial park was part of that. Take a drive out there, there is a lot of stuff going up already in the, in that area that we, we did the TIF on. So I mean, it's, it's kind of amazing, you, you, there's over five, I think it's 5,000 storage units on a couple acres are going there, and then there's quite a few buildings going up already. So it's taking off a lot stronger than I probably ever thought it was going to happen. I thought that TIF would probably take a while to be back.
Mr. Chair.
I agree. Commissioner Roskinic.
Relative to the meeting that we had in Custer with the Forest Service, and there's representation from the five counties, Fall River, Custer, Pennington County, Meade and Lawrence. Four of those counties have committed to help cover the cost of a consultant. I think Lawrence County's committed 100,000 a year for the next four years, and I don't know the exact pledges from the other counties, but I'm sure that Scott and I are going to be coming for some, something that we can. coming for some, something that we can contribute, contribute to from Pennington County, and that if we go that route, we would let those funds go to Black Hills, Wisconsin, local governments, and they'd be the ones that would disperse it accordingly. It's just, we haven't, there's a number in my head, but you know, maybe we'll talk about this just a bit more.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Going back to, to one other thing relative to the hard rock mining, what I would suggest, since I heard both Travis and Ron step up saying they'd like to be a part of that, instead of having a majority of commissioners on that, I would suggest that those two move forward to that with our planning department. I would even suggest you go as far as potentially considering having a evening meeting to receive input. It doesn't have to be before the entire board. We'll notify Holly if we plan on attending, so if there's gonna be a majority of us, which there probably will be, but I think that can be a, a meeting of that, of the group, you know, and whoever you choose that's gonna moderate that type of meeting. But I think we just need to keep plowing forward on this, and bringing it back before us doesn't seem to move it very far forward each time. I mean, we're hearing from the same people, we're hearing the same issues, they just need to get together, and I realize, it's not, it's not just two sides, it's, it's a number of different feelings and ideas of what they wanna do. So I think it can be best resolved with that group setting around and coming to some conclusion that works for us.
So I have a meeting with an agenda, and you know, like you said, moderator, and I'm just thinking of maybe Charlie Johnson to be willing to do that.
I think that'd be great.
But I've kinda listened to him on the vacation home rental, and he keeps everything moving forward and disciplined.
Okay. Approval of vouchers, need a motion to approve the voucher for the Rose Inn LLC in the amount of $3,600. Commissioner Edgott will need to abstain from this, so I've got a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Motion two is to approve the remaining vouchers in the amount of $809,574.45. I got La Croix and Roskinak, motion and second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Move to go to executive session.
Take a motion and a second. All those in favor going into executive session pursuant to SCL 125-21 for personnel issues, and SCL 125-2, subsection three for contractual pending litigation.
What time do we meet tomorrow?
Nine, I believe.
I think we gotta vote, though.
All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Yes, nine o'clock. Is there a motion?
Move to go to executive session.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
Move to law, an exception to the pay policy to place Casey Kaylee Sparks at DINGE 23, step six, $23.33 an hour, effective September 4th, 2022.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I make a motion to request place Jason Dyson, Assistant Director, at a grade 43, step five, at $35.77 per hour, as full-time benefit exempt status effective September 18, 2022.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
It might be a minute.
Okay.
We've got a minute. Polly, is this what we need for tomorrow?
I got my slivers, yes, all your stuff.
Mr. Oliver.
Commissioner's long day.
Yes.
It has been.
Well, thank you, I just have one motion for you to consider, and that would be a motion to approve buyer's agency agreements as needed with local brokers for the purpose of exploring potential real estate purchases to meet county space needs.
Some will.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, further discussion. All those affected with the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Got a motion to adjourn?
Second.
In a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.